We will reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, September 10, 2019. Do we have anything to report out, Mr. City Attorney?
No final action, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then we will adjourn the special meeting and convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, September 10, 2019. If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Council members Sheldon.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Gaylord.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
And Howe.
Here. And if you will all join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any agenda update?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there are two agenda updates for Item 8A. There is a revision to the analysis section of the staff report and an update containing all correspondences received regarding this item after the agenda had been published. One of the correspondences is a letter from Attorney Ashley Titus, received yesterday afternoon. The letter from Ms. Titus alleges that Mayor Howe has a conflict of interest and must be recused from hearing this item. After careful review, I find no conflict that would preclude Mayor Howe from participating in this matter. A copy of my reply to Ms. Titus is also included in the agenda update. The agenda updates have been provided to you and a copy are also available on the table in the back.
Thank you. And with that, we will move to business from the floor. And that is for items that anybody would like to speak to that are not on the agenda. I have three requests right now. If anybody else would like to speak to anything that's not on the agenda, the leave the blue cards are in the back, right, my right corner. So if you could get that up to us, that would be helpful. Otherwise, the first speaker will be John Shaw, then Josh Pino, then Michael Harris. And you have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. City Council and staff. My name is John Shaw, and I stand before you tonight as president of the reorganized, re-energized, and refocused Historic Folsom Residents Association, or Hefra. As most of you know, Hefra has been around for many years. Unfortunately, the old Hefra had its last board meeting in 2008 and has largely been a function of people's memory banks since that time. All of that changed in February of this year when a group of concerned historic district citizens got together at the Baptist Church on Figueroa and determined to do things differently. They were and are focused on providing a cohesive, coherent, and cogent voice for the residents of the historic district, much like these people are trying to do tonight for the Hinkle Creek area. I'm proud to note that after months of grassroots organizing efforts, hard work, and citizen involvement, Hefra is now a dues-paying organization with more than 70 members. Our goal is to be at more than 100 members by the end of the year. We are a legitimate 501(c)(4) organization, which, as you know, means we can advocate politically for the things we believe in without running the risk of losing our nonprofit status. We are a focused, organized, and determined organization that is governed by a seven-member Board of Directors with bylaws, a simple mission statement, and a goal that can be summed up in four words: preserve, protect, and advocate. A citizen-led coalition that has begun collaborative efforts with other like-minded individuals, groups, and organizations. Our goal is to work with anyone who will work with us. As one example of our determination to inform and educate our members, at least one Hefra member will attend each city council meeting, every planning commission meeting, and all historic district commission meetings. Will take notes of those proceedings and pass that information along to our members so they will also be aware of what's going on at City Hall. There are many other things I'd like to tell you about Hefra, but I realize I'm limited to three minutes. So before I go, I'd like to introduce our board. If they're here, I'd like them to stand up. Paul Keast, Vice President of Government Liaison; Mike Brinkwitz, Vice President for Commercial Districts; Laura Fisher, who couldn't be here; Mike Reynolds, Secretary; Adina Blair, Director of Communications; and Justin Galulie, Director of Membership and Administration. If you'd like to learn more about the new Hefra, you can visit our website at T-H-E-H-F-R-A.com. I'd like to note I've given Lydia a packet of business cards for all of our board members. She'll pass out a packet to each one of the council members, and she'll give our city manager the other five to pass out to whoever she thinks is appropriate. Thank you very much for your time and your attention.
Thanks, John. Our next speaker is... We're going to get to this in a little while, but I'm going to ask that, in the interest of time, we've got quite a few people that are going to speak tonight. We've got the Hinkle Creek issue, we've got a couple of presentations, and we've also got a utility rate study. So I'm going to ask that, if everybody, anybody that wants to clap, clap now; any of the that wants to boo, boo now. But please don't do that when people are speaking because all it does is eat up additional time. So next speaker is Josh Pino, and then Michael Harris.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm here on a little different tone today. As you may remember, a couple of times my neighbors and I came and complained about a drainage issue on Bayline Circle. And I'm here to thank you for listening to us, especially Mrs. Aquino, who came out and met with us and, I want to say, lobbied for our cause, and Madam City Manager and Mr. Nugent for finding the funds and doing the design, as well as C.R. National Construction, who actually affected the work. We are greatly, we're just very, very grateful for the work that was done. We appreciate it. I've spent a lot of time in government, 30-some years. Everybody always complains, nobody ever says thank you, so I just wanted to make sure I came and said thanks for doing it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And Michael Harris. Welcome back, we haven't seen you in a while.
Yeah, I was thinking of something smart to say, but I won't say it. Thank you, Mayor Howe, for, let's just say, last century, we started this journey, the turn of the century.
I've been around for a while, but not quite that long.
Okay, I'm leaving it alone. So I'm here tonight to talk about the 170th anniversary of Negro Bar and the profound contributions people of African descent have made in the entire American parkway, and it's going to be cleaned up. How you doing, Ernie? I remember when you first sat out. So yes...
I was a young man, didn't you?
I mean, on the dais, you know what I'm talking about. It's good to see you. So before the African-American contribution came here, there were significant Native Americans here before there was any visitors. I'll say it like that. And so when you sit in a sweat lodge with our native family, you know, we say all our relations, and then if you have any sense, you'll get real low because it's going to get hot in the sweat lodge. And the markings and documentation of their presence is all around this area, you have to look for it, but it's in the names, but it's in the soil, it's in the trees. The bald eagles are back, they could call their names if you ask them. So most of the people of Africa descent were military men, but one man in particular, William Alexander Leidersdorf, owned like 35,000 acres with the land that we stand right now, was Afro-Cuban Danish Jewish. And so just the fact that he owned 35,000 acres should be enough. But there were many people that were here mining gold and buying their family out of bondage throughout the South. And then once, you know, just, yeah, it was yesterday, the birthday of California, admissions day, unfortunately, I don't know why they took it out of school, we used to celebrate it when I was in school, but that's how long ago it was. We had to figure that part out. Because it would be much easier if we teach California history to be able to have an appreciation for history if you learn about it when you're young. But the fact that we don't teach that, people say, "Well, why are we calling black people negroes?" Well, you know, some of us remember when it was a little bit worse than that. And it took 15 years of my life just to take it, that name off of graves and the history. So it's a beautiful day coming up on the 21st, I mean, the entire region from Discovery Park to Negro Bar will be cleaned in and out of the river, will be out there in kayaks, will be out there with bags too. And then when we get to Negro Bar State Park, some of y'all know about the groundbreaking and making it ADA compliant and some of the things that's in the general plan that we've been working on. But the first speaker, I liked the way he did the, I call it the mouth-mouth, my Kenyon brothers, just lay it out, this is what we're going to do, we're going to have every meeting, we're going to have our board here, we're going to do it like that. I don't want to scare folks. So at Negro Bar, we'll have our team there, one of the professors...
Is that being coordinated through Community Service Day?
It is being coordinated with the, yes, Community Service Day.
Okay.
It's another name.
The Parkway Foundation.
Okay, thank you.
And there's another name, and, yes, all of that. We've been seamlessly working with them, and the general plan has things in place that it's time that we work together to fulfill, that's been on the books for about 25 years. There's buildings there, you know, I got a call in the middle of the night talking about, there was a break-in and some of the things were missing, and I was like, I had to call to find out what possibly could have been in there because I don't know, you know, it's been there for so long. So the idea that we can go back 170 years and we're going to put some things in place for 170 years from now, so we won't be talking about changing the name of the city of Folsom or changing this and changing that, we don't, we need to preserve everything we can preserve. And finally, I'll say this...
The next email I'll get on that subject, I'll forward to you.
Okay. I'm like on the other side of halftime.
Okay.
I don't like cutting anything down that's 50 years old. So if y'all got some trees that's over 50, don't cut them down.
No, I'm talking about an email about a specific subject, we can talk later.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks for being here and for bringing that subject up, and again, another opportunity for Community Service Day. So those are all the requests I have to speak in business from the floor, so we will move to scheduled presentation, and our first is Item 6A, proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming September 2019 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. And I've asked Councilmember Gaylord to do that one. You got the name. And that will be Dick Montgomery, if you could meet Councilmember Gaylord down front.
And this is a proclamation from the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming the month of September 2019 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Folsom. Whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men and the second-leading cause of death in men, cancer deaths in men, and whereas the American Cancer Society estimates there will be 174,650 new cases of prostate cancer in the U.S. in 2019, resulting in an estimated 31,620 deaths. And whereas it is estimated that 24,550 men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year, and is estimated 4,470 California men will die from this disease. And whereas early prostate cancer usually has no symptoms and studies suggest, I'm sorry, and studies suggest strong predisposition may be responsible for 5% to 10% of the disease cases. And whereas the five-year survival rate approaches 100% when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, but drops to 30% when it spreads to other parts of the body. And whereas prostate cancer treatments, decision, I'm sorry, decisions should be based on clinical recommendations and patient values and preferences. And whereas the city of Folsom joins communities across our nation to increase the awareness about the importance for men to make an informed decision with their health care provider about early detection and testing for prostate cancer. Now, therefore, I, Roger Gaylord, on behalf of Kerry Howe, mayor of the city of Folsom, and behalf of the Folsom City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Folsom, joining communities across the nation to increase the awareness about the importance of early detection and treatment of this disease proclaimed this 10th day of September 2019. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You're welcome. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay. Mayor Howe, members of the city council, thank you very much for this proclamation. I believe if my math is correct, Lydia and I have done this for like six years. So it goes a while. Just a couple of comments. The "whereas" is a little intimidating, but about one in every six men ends up with prostate cancer. It's generally thought of as an older person's disease, not necessarily true. I'm a prostate cancer survivor for over 20 years, and I've been involved in this process for a long time with UCD. We call ourselves peer navigators. All that means is when somebody gets diagnosed, we try to talk them down from the C-word and can we do something about what's going on with your diagnosis? My recommendation is men get tested at about 45, and in particular, if they have somebody in the family that's had cancer. And that first test will establish a benchmark. The PSA test is the best we've got, and it's not great, but it's the only indicator we have that talks about prostate cancer. So beyond that, when I was treated, you didn't have a lot of choices. These days, you have a number of choices of the type of treatment, whether it's surgery, radiation, different types of radiation, active surveillance, it's a long list. So bottom line, get tested, stay with it, watch it. It's generally speaking, a very slow developing disease, thank God. But it also has no symptoms, therefore, test. Thank you very much in my story.
And our next presentation is a presentation by Caltrans for Excellence in Transportation Award, and I will meet John Holder up front.
Thank you. Trying to do the document count. Do I speak to you?
Sure.
Sure. Let me do it this way. Very good. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. Caltrans 2019 Excellence in Transportation Awards Program is in its 33rd year. This program honors the best of California's transportation projects from across the state. The Excellence in Transportation Award Program is open to Caltrans districts and programs, local and public transportation agencies, and private engineering and consulting firms. A panel of judges consisting of various professionals, including civil engineers, environmental specialists, transportation planners, reviewed the candidate projects, and through a thorough, comprehensive review, winners have been chosen. There were 11 categories. The California Department of Transportation congratulates the city of Folsom on your 2019 Caltrans Excellence in Transportation Award-winning project, Johnny Cash Trail, in the transportation-related facilities category.
Congratulations. This is a really big honor for the city. As far as we know, we're pretty sure this is the only bike trail that was ever built on a state prison anywhere in the United States. Our staff did an amazing job in getting the families' permission to do this. We had the family that was actually involved, both Roseanne Cash has been here and Cindy Cash as well. The Parks and Rec staff is continuing to move on, hopefully we can get the rest of that artwork installed, but we really, really appreciate the honor, and I do personally because I started my career at Caltrans. So nice to meet the district director.
Very good. Well, I'm not the district director, but... So I have some awards to hand out, I'm going to reach behind you and take them out of We have four plaques tonight, and we have a fifth one on order for a very special person. At first, I would like to have Westcon Construction, in particular, I need Eric Campbell and Mike Latham. Are you here tonight?
Yes.
Very good.
Eric? Yes, Eric Campbell.
Eric Campbell.
Mike.
Mike, good to meet you.
I couldn't have done it without him.
Here you go.
Thank you.
Our second award, let me come over here.
Oh, sorry.
We have a little bag to help with. Don't want to stack it on the way home. Well, you don't have a project without it being designed, and we need, from Dockin Engineering, we need Tony Powers and Joe Ostier. Tony Powers?
Yeah.
Tony? Joe here now?
Joe's right here.
Oh, here he comes. Very good. Here we go, we're going to look that way. Stick around, we're going to do a photo. City of Folsom. Lorraine.
And Brett Bolinger.
And Brett. Bolinger?
Bolinger.
Bolinger. Congratulations. Lorraine? Clap him. Very good. Here you go. Have one more for you. We have a very special person here tonight, I am told. His name is Jim Knopka. Is Jim here tonight?
And I'll just add that Jim Knopka is like, I think it was at retirement, like our $15 Million Man, forgetting about $15 Million in grant funding, and most of the trails in Folsom are here because of all of the hard work over Jim's career. We're just sorry that somebody let the retirement paperwork go through. And Jim is also married to our lovely Assistant City Clerk.
Let's see one big group.
You get to keep that, huh?
A little closer. There you go.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much. I just wanted to make a few concluding remarks. Mayor Howe, members of the city council, Lorraine Pajoni, your Parks and Rec Director, it is a great pleasure to receive this distinguished award from Caltrans tonight. We couldn't have done it without the support of the city council, our Parks and Rec Commission, the Folsom prison officials, many of our city staff, including our city manager's office, our legal department, city clerk's office, and the strong will and commitment from our former Parks and Rec Director, Robert Goss, who could not be here tonight but was invited, and we'll be following up with him with a little something special as well. Suzanne Stockton, Cindy Abraham, Jim Simpson, Tim O'Shea, Jim Knopka, of course, and many others in our Parks and Rec department, as well as many of our fellow department employees. Thank you for all of them, and thank you to Dockin and to Westcon Engineering for navigating the twists and turns we had out there to deliver a world-class trail that is once again a feather in our cap for being Folsom's distinctive by nature. Thank you, too, to our current Parks and Rec Commission and most who are here this evening, our Chair, Paul Romero, and our other commissioners for their continued support and vision to design, build, and deliver unique, meaningful parks, trails, and amenities in the city of Folsom. Thank you so much.
And our next scheduled presentation is the presentation of 2019 Community Service Day. Christine Brainard, our Public Information Officer and queen of Community Service Day and all of her trusty assistants.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and city council members. I'm Christine Brainard, Communications Director for the city of Folsom. I'm pleased to join my fellow steering committee members here tonight as we talk about our plans for the 2019 Sixth Annual Community Service Day. The Sixth Annual Community Service Day will be held on Saturday, September 21st. More than 3,000 volunteers are expected to participate and tackle more than 70 projects citywide. Within the first 24 hours of the volunteer window opening, we had more than 700 volunteers sign up in that short amount of time, so this event continues to gain momentum in the community. This is Folsom's largest day of volunteerism. There are more than 70 different projects for every age, ability, and interest. Some of the projects include a citywide food drive, military care packages, beautification of Folsom schools, landscaping projects, Folsom Lake, Negro Bar, and Lake Natoma cleanup projects, water hyacinth removal, Natoma Ground sluice mining cleanup, Pioneer Village beautification, Powerhouse Ministries painting, bike trail stenciling, and so many more. A citywide food drive is the largest project for Community Service Day. This week, teams of volunteers will canvas the city of Folsom and distribute an empty grocery bag on every doorstep in Folsom. That's more than 29,000 households that will receive a grocery bag. Residents are asked to fill the grocery bag with non-perishable food and place their bag on their porch on Community Service Day by 8:00 a.m., and volunteers will canvas the city and pick up the food. If every Folsom resident donates one bag of food, it will feed the Folsoms hungry for one year. So we're promoting the food drive through social media and through video. So we're going to show you three different videos that we're using on social media to show how we're promoting the food drive. So the Twin Lakes Food Bank has helped a lot of residents get back on their feet after they've faced times of hardships. The first two videos promote and showcase two of the recipients who have benefited from the food bank, and the other one's our general marketing video.
I am a single mom to a 14-year-old teenager, and I'm a part-time college student at Folsom Lake College. There's certain days where it's very rewarding, and other days it's a struggle because I'm doing it all by myself. Being able to have the Twin Lakes Food Banks be on the campus, let alone be here at this establishment, has been actually very helpful. I'm able to provide food sustenance to my child and everything because then I have like one less thing to stress about as I'm trying to take care of us and go to school.
I've had good-paying jobs here in Folsom before, but I went through a bad case at West Nile digging a fish pond. I wasn't working for quite a while, and I really needed the extra income. When I first came to the Twin Lakes Food Bank, I thought that this would be a very degrading experience in my life, and it's turned out to be anything but. Everybody needs help every once in a while, and the whole idea of this place is helping people get back to work and not have to worry about the small things in life that so many of us take for granted.
From your doors to the food bank doors.
If every Folsom household donates one bag of groceries.
We can help feed Folsoms hungry for one year.
This week, while you are grocery shopping for your family, consider filling this bag for another family experiencing hunger in your own community. Our goal is to inspire 20,000 Folsom households to fill up one bag of non-perishable groceries to donate to Twin Lakes Food Bank.
Go to the grocery store and fill up one bag.
So last year, more than 57,000 pounds of food was collected on
I've had good-paying jobs here in Folsom before, but I went through a bad case at West Nile digging a fish pond. I wasn't working for quite a while, and I really needed the extra income. When I first came to the Twin Lakes Food Bank, I thought that this would be a very degrading experience in my life, and it's turned out to be anything but. Everybody needs help every once in a while, and the whole idea of this place is helping people get back to work and not have to worry about the small things in life that so many of us take for granted.
From your doors to the food bank doors.
If every Folsom household donates one bag of groceries.
We can help feed Folsoms hungry for one year.
This week, while you are grocery shopping for your family, consider filling this bag for another family experiencing hunger in your own community. Our goal is to inspire 20,000 Folsom households to fill up one bag of non-perishable groceries to donate to Twin Lakes Food Bank.
Go to the grocery store and fill up one bag.
So last year, more than 57,000 pounds of food was collected on Community Service Day, and that lasted the food bank more than nine months. So our goal is to take a little bit further this year and see if we can feed the hungry for an entire year through donations on Community Service Day. And we're asking community members to please help share the message about the food drive and share the video through their social media networks. You may notice this year the Community Service Day has a fresh new look with a new logo, a brand-new website, a new streamlined registration system, and new raspberry t-shirts, colored t-shirts, as you'll see us wearing tonight. Volunteers will be wearing an emerald green, and you'll see community leaders out wearing our berry shirts. There will also be a donation drive on Community Service Day from 7:00 a.m. until noon, and local organizations are going to be collecting bicycles, glasses, yarn and fabric, socks, purses, and Legos on Community Service Day. We've expanded the Neighbors Helping Seniors projects this year, and these are projects where volunteers go out and help Folsoms elderly with projects if they need a helping hand around their home. Many of the seniors have limited ability or on fixed incomes, and we're expanding that program this year. And Justin Rathel is going to tell you a little bit more about that.
Good evening. I won't take up too much of your time, I know you have a very busy agenda this evening, but we've managed to double the projects for Neighbors Helping Seniors, so we'll be doing over 30 Neighbors Helping Seniors projects, otherwise referred to as the Lemonade and Cookies projects. A lot of these seniors are just so appreciative for us to come out with, you know, eight to 10 volunteers and pitch in and help them clean up outside mainly, getting ready for the wet season. You know, here in Folsom, a lot of these folks can't get up on ladders, can't get the gutters cleaned or the trees trimmed, or the debris removed. So that's mainly what we're out there doing. And one of the best things I've seen over the years is the connections that get formed between the volunteers and the seniors. Oftentimes, I'll see numbers getting exchanged, and I'll hear stories after the fact of the volunteers going back out to help with just little things around the house that these folks may not be able to get to. So it's more than just on the service day that we're able to impact our seniors, and we just love getting out there and doing it. So thanks for your time this evening.
Thanks, Justin. Okay, the event would not be possible without the generous in-kind and monetary support from our sponsors, and this year we've received over $100,000 in cash and in-kind sponsorships. A huge thanks to our presenting sponsors, Intel and Dignity Health. They've been part of Community Service Day since day one in 2014, and they are contributing $15,000 each towards Community Service Day. So Stephanie Smith with Intel would like to say a few words about her participation.
Stephanie, I just noticed that you don't have your berry shirt on, but you do have your pink sunglasses, so it looks awesome.
That's what I was gonna say, you got the memo. Okay, I don't need to go over that. Now, Intel is very proud to sponsor Community Service Day again this year, like in previous years, and someone decided that Intel folks have very not-broken backs yet, so we're doing the water hyacinth project again this year. We've been assigned that task. So we'll be removing a huge green lace from Willow Creek, and we're really excited to do that. We'll be stenciling trails, we'll be packing backpacks, as well as helping out with Pioneer Village, so we're really excited to participate this year. We're also very grateful for our platinum sponsors at $10,000, our gold sponsors at $5,000, silver at $2,500, our bronze sponsors at $1,000, and together they've allowed us to be able to fund every single project that was requested for Community Service Day this year. So the event also wouldn't be possible without our Steering Committee members. So I'd like to quickly introduce my fellow Steering Committee members and friends. Rachel Zarin with the Folsom Telegraph, Y.K. Chalamchela with the Arts and Cultural Commission, Justin Rathel with Revolutions Natuopathic, Brad Franklin with Lakeside Church, Raina Bossa, Communications Intern for the City of Folsom, Sarah Minahan with Aerojet Rocketdyne, Stephanie Smith with Intel, Lori Easterwood, Library Director, Kristi Ross with the Rotary, Chris Shepherd with the City of Folsom Communications Office, Brian Wallace with the Parks and Recreation Commission, Greg Kiefer with Kiefer Consulting, and Dr. Rototo with Kaiser Permanente. In closing, volunteer opportunities are still open, and there are a lot of ways to get involved through the donation drive, so we encourage community members to learn more and sign up at folsomcommunitieservice.org. Thank you.
Special thanks to all the people that have served on that committee. I know you guys have had lots and lots and lots of meetings based on all of the emails that I've gotten, so I look forward to seeing everybody on Saturday morning at Lakeside Church on September 21st. And with that, we will move to the City Manager's Financial Report for Fourth Quarter of 2018-2019.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. I'm Stacy Tumani, Finance Director. Tonight, I'll be presenting the financial results for the Fourth Quarter of Fiscal Year 1819. So starting off with a summary of how the General Fund is projected to end the year in comparison to your adopted budget, and just to note that we have it labeled as projected for Fiscal Year 1819 because we're still in the process of our final audit, but we expect these numbers to be pretty much exactly what they come in at. In total, for the General Fund, the Fiscal Year 19 projection for revenues has them ending the year at $91.3 million, about $600,000 less than budgeted. Expenditures are projected to be at $90 million, about 1% less than budgeted. This results in $1.2 million addition to the General Fund balance, bringing the unassigned fund balance to just about $17 million, or 18.8% of annual expenditures, so keeping above your minimum reserve policy. Taking a look now at our major revenue sources in the General Fund. Property taxes are up from Fiscal Year 1718 by about $2.1 million, and over Fiscal Year 1819 appropriated amount by about $700,000. This is an 8.7% increase over the prior year, and this is due to a combination of new home sales and increases in the assessed value of homes as they sell. Sales taxes came in right at budget at about $25 million. Charges for services also ended the fiscal year above the appropriated amount. They came in at about $16.2 million, and that's $400,000 above the prior year. And I'll go into a little more detail about what made that up in the next slide. And transfers in are a bit lower than the appropriated amount of $11.2 million, and that's just due to projects that will continue into the next year and be transferred then. So a little more detail on our larger fee categories. Vehicle license fees were up from the prior year by about $400,000. Parks and Rec fees are up about $200,000 from the prior year. We saw a slight increase in ambulance fees, about $140,000 over the prior year, and that's due to another ambulance coming online. Development fees are fairly consistent with the prior year, down just a little bit, about $130,000, ending the year at $3.9 million. And building permits saw an increase of about $260,000, which represents a 15% increase. And this is due to significant building activity in the Folsom plan area, but also a few large multi-unit projects north of 50, so we don't expect that it would continue at that higher rate. We expect it will be down around our average of $1.6, $1.7 million going forward. So just a quick glance at the plan area impact fee revenues that have been collected so far in fiscal year, well, actually just in fiscal year 1819. About $4.8 million this year across all categories, and so this revenue will be used for future capital projects and improvements to serve the plan area in the future. Moving on to the major expenditure categories for the General Fund, this slide shows a comparison of the past three years, Fiscal Year 17, 18, and 19. So salaries are up about 7% from the prior year due to step increases and a few positions that were added in the 1819 budget. Benefits were up about 8% from the new positions and also increases in the purse liabilities. Operating and maintenance costs were pretty flat compared to the prior year. Capital outlay is up due to some big projects that were completed this year, such as the pool renovation at the Steve Miklos Aquatic Center, and also the purchase of police vehicles. And you see a decrease in debt service due to the City Hall being paid off, and the remainder of that lease will mature in Fiscal Year 2027. I wanted to give you an economic outlook. There's been a lot of talk in the news about upcoming recession or economic slowdown. So the chart on this slide, I know it's a little blurry, but it comes from Standard and Poor's, and it's showing that based on the indicators that they look at that are presenting themselves in the economy right now, the probability of a recession has increased over the past year from about a 10% to 15% chance, which on the left side, up to about a 25% to 30% chance, based on the factors that they look at. So although the probability is still low, 25% to 30%, you can just see that it's increasing as the data keeps coming in. A few of the indicators that are predictive of an economic slowdown. The first one is an inverted yield curve, and I won't go into the details of what that is, but historically, when that happens in the economy, over the past 50 years, every time that's happened except for once, we've seen a recession within 12 to 24 months of that occurring, and that just happened earlier this year. Another possible warning sign we're hearing in the news is a decrease in manufacturing output. Unemployment is low, and you'd usually think that that's good, but it can provide a shortage of qualified labor in some industries, so restricting expansion. And as an overall note, the expansion period that we've been in for the last 10 years has been slow and steady. On average, for the U.S., it's been about 2% growth per year, and so even if the warning signs don't amount to a slowdown, we still aren't having tremendous growth. And the issue for us with that is that our expenditures tend to be growing at a rate a little bit more than 2% a year. So it's just something we need to keep our eye on. Some positive indicators for our region, as I mentioned before, unemployment is low. We're at 3.1% as of June 2019, lower than the county and the state unemployment rate. Interest rates are also low right now, so borrowing costs for consumers are low, which helps them to be able to spend. And consumers are spending. U.S. household spending is up about 4.7% in the Fourth Quarter of Fiscal Year 19, but although they're spending, they're not necessarily purchasing big items. And this is where we can quickly see some decreases in our sales tax revenue, that's where we're the most vulnerable. Sales taxes make up about 25% of our General Fund revenue. So just wanted to give you a quick look at our sales tax vulnerability. We're estimating about a 6% increase year-over-year, so the top blue line is showing projected revenue coming in if it continues at the rate that we see it coming in at. The orange line is showing a decrease in my projection from 6% to 4%. And I just wanted to show that because over two years, that's a $1.6 million loss to the General Fund, and that's still growth, it's still at 4% growth, just a slowdown. The gray line below that is going from 6% to 2% growth, and that's a $3.2 million loss over two years. So it can just quickly be a lot of money that is reduced while we're still in an expansionary period, and so that's not even taken into consideration if it were an actual slowdown or recession. Moving on now to the enterprise funds. The Water Fund ended the fiscal year with charges for services slightly lower than the previous year, and this was due to wet weather conditions and customers just not using as much water. Operating expenses were pretty much in line with the prior year, just a slight increase, $9.6 million is where we ended. Transfers out were right at budget, and so was debt service. Capital expenses are quite a bit lower than budget due to the timing of completing some projects, so we'd usually see around $2 to $3 million, but the timing of them, we've come in at $900,000 as of the end of the year. And working capital is looking good at this point, at $17.7 million, but you can see, if you look at the projected charges for services versus the total expenditures of $12.8 million, it doesn't leave us a lot of working capital each year to be able to complete capital reinvestment without severely cutting into our working capital. And so it's significant in this fund particularly because we have bonds in this fund, that we have to make sure that we have our coverage ratios just for our creditworthiness. Waste water is similar story. Charges for services coming in just above budget at $6.6 million. Operating expenses are below budget by about $1.4 million, and that's just due to some contractual services that were in the budget that didn't happen this year. Minimal capital expenditures this year, so working capital is actually in good shape at $11.8 million. Solid waste ended the year with charges for services just above budget at $10.7 million, which is down slightly from last year. And operating expenses were just under budget due to some vacancies during the year. So you can see $9.4 million was budgeted, and we came in at $9.1. If we had been fully staffed and came in at budget, operating expenses in total would have exceeded operating revenue. And so, like I was talking about with the Water Fund, that leaves no cash flow for capital reinvestment, which in this fund is primarily vehicles. Capital expenses are right at budget. We have $1 million encumbered for some vehicles that are on order for solid waste vehicles. And so working capital down at the bottom is at $5.8 million. For next year, there's a budgeted use of fund balance in the 1920 budget of about $1.7 million to meet operating requirements. So with that, we expect that working capital is going to drop below appropriate levels by the 2021 fiscal year. We want to make sure that we're maintaining our working capital in that fund, and the best practice that we use is about 90 days of expenditures plus capital expenditures for the next period. So right now, with our expenditure levels, that's about $4.2 million required in reserves. This is your risk management fund used for accounting for the city's insurance programs. This year, we had a planned decrease in revenue from $17.5 in the prior year to $17.3 this year, and this allowed us to keep insurance expenses in different departments stable and partially offset increases in purse expenses this year. This fund has a strong net position at $8.5 million, and so this allows you to minimize swings in the budget when healthcare costs fluctuate. Looking down towards the bottom half, we were able to keep employee health costs relatively stable due to adding more plans, which created competition, and we had very good rates, and we also added the high deductible option, so that saved us money there. Retiree healthcare remained stable, we didn't add a significant amount of retirees this year. And it was a fairly good year for workers' comp, so not much of an increase over the prior fiscal year there. And also liability insurance stayed right around where it was last year. So this fund's working just as it is intended. This is the Trail Grant Fund, is a special revenue fund, and it's just one that you've seen on our watch list. It accounts for our trail projects, so revenue came in at about $2 million, we had expenses at about $2.6. And the reason you see that is just the timing of it. We have to go ahead and expend in this fund before we can go and claim it on our grant reimbursement claims. So there's about $1 million in negative fund balance, and so we just continue to watch this, and it will come in with future claims. A few CIP highlights for the year for Parks and Rec. Lake Natoma Class 1 Trail Phase 2, Oak Parkway Trail Undercrossing and Economy Park Project. For Public Works, the Greenback-Madison paving, traffic signal improvements, and the Iron Point Railroad Crossing Modification Project. And in water wastewater, the ARC Sewer Access R&amp;R, Greenback Sewer and Lift Station improvements, and the GSWC Intertie Booster Pump Station Project. So these were some of the big ones that had happened this year. And that's all I have for you tonight, unless you have any questions.
Any questions?
Just to clarify, with your sales tax revenue, you're estimating averaging 6% per year, but you're forecasting typically like a four?
I was just showing you that, we've been actually forecasting about a six. So I just wanted to show you that if the economy starts to go down and we're now looking at a four, that's how much of an impact it would have on the General Fund fairly quickly.
That's just a subtle reminder, please shop in brick-and-mortar stores in Folsom. Any other questions of staff? Thank you. With that, we will move on to the consent calendar. Do you have anybody that would like to pull anything from consent?
I'll move consent.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Sheldon?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kuzlowski?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes.
With that, we will move to Old Business, Item 8A, which is update to City Council on Design Improvements Associated with the Henkel Creek Sewer System Improvement Project and City Council Direction on Design Alternatives. So what we're going to do here is Marcus is going to discuss this first, then we are going to have the ability for the 16 or 17 folks that requested to speak on that item, and we're expecting we get... And we're expecting we get, I think, 16 requests to speak, and Mr. Combs will be speaking for longer than that. So that's a little bit over an hour. So I'm going to request that, well, basically, I'll just repeat what I said earlier. I know this is a very sensitive issue for a lot of people. We appreciate all of the hard work that everybody, the residents and our staff, have put in on this project over the course of the last year. And I'm going to ask that everybody be respectful regardless of the speaker, whether you agree or disagree. So Marcus, if you could get started.
All right. Thanks, Mayor Howell, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, environmental and water resources director. Wanted to just give you a quick update, just an outline of what we'll be talking about tonight. So a little bit of the background, because I know not everybody here may have heard or was here in June of 2017, so I wanted to give a quick background, not only for City Council, but for our audience. The need for the project, some of the alternatives that were discussed, why we eliminated some of the alternatives from the staff perspective and working with our consultant. Prior City Council direction, so we had a very lengthy meeting in June of 2017, so we had a lot of feedback, not only from the public and the audience, but directly from the five City Council members at that time. And then feedback from ongoing discussions, whether it be emails, meetings, or direct direct conversations with John Combs, Roger Butcher, and others of the Hinkle Creek Working Group. So it's probably not going to be everything that they've provided to me, but I believe it captures a majority of the highlights and maybe some of the main speaking points that they may speak to later this evening. So just to give you a quick background, we did have some sewer spill occurrences in October and November of 2015. One was in a manhole located at 140 Canyon Rim Drive. And in your packet, this is manhole number two on the map. This is the manhole actually in person, but not spilling, which is good. We did identify that the cause of the spill was grease or fats, oils, and grease buildup in the sewer main. We approximated the spill at about 3,000 gallons. Spill did occur during the rain. And one of the things I do want to point out in this particular instance is we understand from the homeowner at the time that the spill occurred on a Saturday, but we did not get informed until Monday. So that was when our response occurred. And that's why we had to identify the spill as an approximate 3,000 gallons, because we calculated, basically based on how much we anticipated the homes contributing to that sewer line would actually contribute, but also knowing that it had rained, you know, you didn't have necessarily dry conditions, and we had to give a best estimate in our report to the state water board, and this is the number that staff worked on and calculated. Another one in November of 2015, this is manhole number seven on the map. This one we did capture with a camera, spilling. And this is the result, or this is the cause of the spill. So pipe section nine on the map, there were two rocks that were in the pipeline that caused the backup. I don't know how these got in there. Really, in my opinion, only one way those can get in there, and that's from a manhole. It's not as though a section of pipe collapsed, and that's what the result of the aftermath was, because we did not find any actual damage to any pipe upstream of that location. So based on that, we can only kind of deduce that that was somehow placed in the pipeline. Project need, so this just outlines the reasons that we have for the repair and a replacement of the existing sewer line. There are existing sags in the pipe. There are offsets, which means that where the pipe is physically supposed to be connected, it's disconnected, and one pipe is sitting lower than the other. So you don't have a clean flow-through of the pipeline. There are sewer mains in people's backyards, so our proposal was to, at the time, move those out of the backyard and get them into an area, which is the Hinkle Creek area. And there was a certain section of pipeline that we could not physically inspect, nor could a hired contractor physically inspect, based on the pipe type, which is, you know, our plan, our Rasabeth Plan showed it as a cast iron pipe, so there's a lot of buildup of rust and nodules inside that the camera physically could not get into that section of pipe by our staff, nor by a private contracting company that was inspecting the pipeline as well. In addition to this, based on the slopes that we have out there and some of the existing conditions, we also wanted to provide, you know, operations and maintenance staff safe and reliable access to the sewer line and to the manholes, not only from an O and M perspective, but also from an emergency response or a spill perspective. So those typically don't happen in your normal operation, so in order to be able to access some of these locations, we were also looking for safe and reliable access. The high priority segments we identified, four, five, eight, nine, and 10, and the reason why it skips to eight is because when we initially did the evaluations, this section here was six and seven, so we just kept the numbering the same for our consistency in all of our documents. Alternatives analysis report, so we did hire a consultant to identify potential different alternatives in order to repair those sections that are listed here, the four, five, eight, nine, and 10. What their evaluation included was looking at different construction types of methods, so pipe lining, which is you physically put a liner inside the pipe. Pipe bursting, you take another pipe and you burst the, oh, sorry. You burst the pipe and feed another pipe or pull another pipe through. Replace and place, so you physically dig the pipe up and put a brand-new pipe in where the existing pipe used to be. Or replace and realign. So that was the portion of the area that would be moved out of the backyards and into the Hinkle Creek Nature Area. So we're physically relocating that section of pipe. And typically, then, what we do with the pipe that's left in the backyard, we'll abandon it in place, we'll take the manhole covers off, and the top section of the sewer manhole, fill those in, backfill them, and then bring it back to grade. If, for some reason, the resident wanted to keep the manhole in their backyard, we could do that as well. We had a resident on another project want to do that, because he had it as a decorative spot that he can place a table in his backyard, so we left it there. And it was on a raw water pipeline, so it wasn't wastewater, so that probably was a reason. Obviously, evaluate the community impacts, whether you're digging in somebody's backyard or looking at what the Hinkle Creek impacts could potentially be. Evaluate potential construction cost, and then the constructability of each one of these options for the entire length of that sewer pipeline. So the recommendations that came out of the alternatives analysis that were presented to City Council in June of 2017 are seen here, and that's essentially replace and realign sections four and five. So moving that portion of the pipe out of backyards, and then there's a realignment of section five, just to get a better hydraulic flow coming through the manholes and getting our angles of pipeline correct. Replace and realign section eight. There was an alternative that we looked at to pipe burst the existing six-inch cast iron pipe that's under the creek, but during our analysis, from a sequoia perspective, the requirement to pipe burst, that was going to have the same requirement if we open cut that section of pipe. And in the past, we have had challenges with pipe bursting, specifically in Blue Ravine, where the pipe head got stuck. And so our thought was if we were going to have to do the same permitting requirements for pipe bursting versus open cut, we were looking at an open cut construction method in order to ensure that, okay, we can maintain our line and grade for, you know, conventional construction.
Marcus, is that section that would ideally cross the creek, would that be cased?
We were not proposing to case it, but we could, or increase the diameter, because what we could do is if we increase the diameter, say, to above eight, even to a 10, and we've considered that as well. The next time, if something were to happen to this pipeline and there was a crack, we can actually line it then at that point in time. If we, if you try to line, and I'll get into this in a couple of slides, but lining a six-inch diameter pipe when the city's current standard is an eight-inch diameter sewer pipe, you actually then start to decrease your pipe diameter. And when you're trying to do this on a pipe that has corrosion and rust buildup inside, you may not get a clean section of pipe to actually adhere the liner to. So there's a lot of challenges to lining cast iron pipe just for that reason. And then that doesn't even get into how you actually clean it, because cleaning it with our conventional methods with a vector truck under high pressure, water under high pressure, not only that the city completed, but our contractor completed, it doesn't remove the rust and everything in all spots to give you a nice, clean pipe to actually line and adhere the liner to. And so you run the risk of that then failing and collapsing inside on itself, and then the only way to get that out is to dig it up. And now we're in the creek in an emergency dig, possibly digging that up. So that's one of the reasons why we just wanted to replace the pipe itself with a brand-new section.
I have no problem with replacing it. I was only asking about the casing.
Yep.
In the event of high flows, just to protect the pipe itself.
I don't imagine we'd get significant flows in this location, just because of the amount of homes that are being fed.
No, I'm talking about the creek.
The creek, oh. Sorry. I thought, my mistake. Yeah, we could definitely entertain putting a carrier pipe.
Or a rock shield or something on it.
Or a hose pipe in there, or even maybe doing a slurry backfill.
Yeah, that'd work.
You know, we can definitely look into those alternatives during. And one thing that we did include, it wasn't necessarily in the alternatives analysis, but was including monitoring systems inside each of the manholes. So these systems have the ability to alert if they identify either high flow or water level in, or wastewater level in a manhole, or no flow coming through. And that would then alarm our city staff, and we'd have to go out there and evaluate what the condition is. And so we do plan to install those as part of this project. And we do have these installed in other areas within the city. So it's not new to us, and it wouldn't necessarily be new to this project.
So that's pretty reliable?
I'd have to ask our staff, but I have not heard of any issues that we have had. I don't know, Greg, yes, they are.
So, and that gives you how much advance notice?
That's a great question and a tough one to answer, but I would imagine that we'd at least have half an hour before you had a spill. Now, what that doesn't necessarily count for is the time of day when this alarm would occur. And as we probably all know, you have peak usage in the mornings and then peak usage in the evenings from a water use perspective, and that may be from showering, washing dishes, washing clothes, et cetera. So if all that's occurring at the same time, you may be, you know, on the half-hour side. If it's in the middle of the day, nobody's home, or there's a couple of people home, you may have more time to respond. So it does give you at least some early detection, and it does help us avoid the, it occurred on a Saturday, we found out on a Monday. That would be one advantage to using those.
Thanks.
So the map here just shows the gray color is the existing alignment, and the red is the alignment that was part of the proposed recommendation in this slide. So it just identifies really us moving this section of the pipe out, realigning a portion of five, so we don't have necessarily this steep 35 percent grade here. And plus, this is another portion of cast iron pipe that we were unable to inspect, so getting rid of that obviously is a benefit. And realigning, and then from this point down, we would replace the pipeline where it currently exists. So some of the alternatives that were eliminated, and these were mainly for cost or feasibility purposes, in the top half of the slide is installing a deep gravity sewer line in Canyon Rim Drive, and then taking that all the way out to American River Canyon Drive, American River Canyon Drive, all the way down to Greenback. You're looking at upwards of three and a half to four million dollars to be able to do that, and we haven't even, that doesn't even include design. We don't even know all the utilities that potentially could be in the way, so we eliminated that one pretty quickly. Individual residential pump stations, we did kick this one around a little bit, but one challenge that we have is in this court here, there's another court here, and then this court here, is they all, from Canyon Rim Drive here, this goes downhill, from Canyon Rim Drive here, this goes downhill down to there. So if you were to use and try to get, you know, the homes that feed into this system here and the homes that feed into this here to pump this way, you're now putting individual force mains in the streets, which we don't, I don't know anywhere that we've done individual two-inch force mains in public right-of-way to, out then to the main here in Canyon Rim Drive. In other locations, we'd have to install some pipe, some gravity sewer pipes, so we eliminated that, because the other alternative to get individual sewer force mains to work is if we pumped into the street, and then this gravity flowed down, and for some reason, we had a vacant parcel to put in a city pump station, which none of these areas have a vacant parcel to install a city pump station. So we eliminated that, figuring that we weren't going to go acquire or buy a parcel to put in a pump station here, here, and then possibly over there. Noncompliance with the city's SSMP that we identified is, you know, just an alternative that just cleans and flushes the sewer line on a more, just more often. And it's also one thing and direction we got at the last City Council meeting was, okay, that's not what we're going to do, and to move forward with the recommendations that were proposed. So another reason that we weren't doing that was because we had discussed and got direction, at least at the staff level, was to move the pipeline, fix it, and then try to minimize, obviously, anything else that we do in that location. Plus, that's just not, in my opinion and staff's opinion, just not the right way to approach infrastructure that is failing. And although it's not, some may think that it's not a significant impact when 3,000 gallons may make it, there is not a fine associated to the city with that. There's a potential for a fine if, you know, the occurrence happens again. But in my opinion, leaving a failing system where it is is not the proper direction to go. Yes, Councilmember Gaylord?
On your prior screen, I think it was the map, so sections four, five, and sections four and five, I know back in June, I don't think it was discussed at the council meeting of replacing and repairing and replacing in place, and I know that the working group went to each resident and see if that was a valid option. Is that, and your assessment, valid for this instead of pushing it over? Would it still do justice?
You are correct. We did not discuss this at the City Council meeting, because at the time, in our discussions, not necessarily with everybody in the working group, but it was to move it out of the backyards into the nature area. So we didn't bring that just because that wasn't part of the bigger discussion at the time. Then, since then, yes, the working group has reached out to the homeowners, and they, at least I know four to my face, said, yes, you could replace it in the backyard. And then I got confirmation following from the working group that the other four had agreed, yes, you can, if the city so chooses to, you could do the work and replace the pipeline in my backyard. Now, yes, you can physically do that. It would be very similar to what we're doing here. You dig it up where it is, replace it, fix the manholes, reconnect their service, and then restore the condition. Yes, and we'd still add the monitoring system and then just do the site restoration, which is a little different in a residential area than the nature area, but that would all be accounted for.
Okay.
So just to highlight, you know, City Council direction, and this is what staff and myself and our consultants have been working under from the June 2017 meeting, is to repair those priority segments that we discussed, shown on the map, relocate segment four from the backyards into the Hinkle Creek Nature Area, obviously provide those flow monitoring systems in the manholes, provide nonmechanical access for city staff to respond, whether it was using wheelbarrows, bringing in pumps by hand, you know, just hand tools, et cetera. Seek an exemption, and this was important from the meeting as well, was to seek an exemption from the state water board or the regional water quality control board for having to need vector access to respond to a sewer spill. So we did get clarification, and basically, the state water board, regional water quality control board, said, hey, you, the city develops and implements a sanitary sewer management plan and emergency response plan. If you feel what you are proposing can meet the requirements to contain and clean and mitigate the spill, you decide your means and methods and how to do that. So from that, we claimed, okay, we don't have to use a vector truck, but we have to provide for some other method of not only O and M, but emergency response. And so that's part of why we would be looking for the nonmechanical access. We've updated the sewer response based on this exemption, and that was adopted in the SSMP a month ago. We're working on project delivery alternatives to minimize tree impacts, so you may hear later about a spider tractor versus conventional construction. So we are taking this project forward in a parallel path, but offering two different alternatives for a contractor to bid. One is really to have the opportunity in what we would consider conventional construction methods, which would likely be having a temporary construction access road to bring in equipment. which would likely be having a temporary construction access road to bring in equipment and materials. The other is basically stating, you as a contractor do not have, you cannot build an access road, a temporary construction access road, sorry, to deliver this project, which pretty much identifies, in our opinions, two options, either hand digging or using this spider tractor method. Yes, Councilmember Gaylord.
So on that aspect, when you, if you looked at the idea of repairing in place, do you need to have that access road to do that piece of it if you just did four and five?
Up at the top? Sorry, yes, four and five, no. If you're using, if we're letting a contractor know that, hey, you could, they may come back on the conventional and say, yes, we need to flatten out. Because some of those backyards still have a slope to them. So under a conventional method, you may still need to get in there to flatten it out in order to be able to do the work. Under the spider tractor method, it's been told to me that, no, you would not need temporary construction access road to get that piece of equipment in. Now, I don't know, because I haven't ever seen it, how they bring in all their other materials, how they bring in shoring, how they do all that kind of stuff. But from digging the trench, installing the manholes, and installing the sewer pipe, they would not likely need a construction access road.
With regard to, and this is kind of coming out of left field, but, because I don't believe that the, the direction at the last time this was discussed was to replace the sections of the line there in the backyard and leave them in the backyard. There's a long list of reasons that they shouldn't be in the backyard in the first place. But what about, what do you think the cost would be if we were to consider replacing it in the backyards for placing landscaping, replacing people's fences, all of the difficulties that you would have in going across however many number of lots you have to go through in somebody's backyard?
Another tough one. Because I guess a lot of it would depend, because it's, is it cost relative to what doing it in the Hinkle Creek Nature Area is relative to what we'd be doing in the backyard? I would imagine we would save costs on, obviously, the mitigation of replacing trees. I know we would save costs there because the backyards don't have the same tree impacts from, or at least the mitigation requirements of the portion that would be in the Hinkle Creek Nature Area. We would have more, obviously, restoration in the backyards, but from kind of staff's preliminary field visits, there aren't any significant hardscape structures, pools, things of that nature.
Well, there can't be, because the pipe's there.
Well, you, there are some areas in the city where we have pools installed near or right near the edge of easements. So we obviously have to survey that. I wish, I wish I could give you a really good answer, but right now I just can't. I would anticipate some cost would be less on, obviously, moving it into the, moving it out of Hinkle Creek, but we would incur some cost on doing the restoration on the homeowner's side. The pipeline cost probably be a little less, just because it's not going to be as deep in the backyards as where it would be in the Hinkle Creek Nature Area. But at the end of the day, it could be, you know, within a couple hundred thousand dollars possibly.
And it doesn't solve the problem that we don't have access to the manholes.
Not directly. We'd still have to try to work through the homeowners to get to that access.
We, you know, we know we've had, we've had spills in manholes in people's backyards that went unreported for a couple of days, and that's part of, one of the reasons for, in addition to the bad condition of the pipeline, it's so that the city's got access on its own property to get to the pipe, to do whatever might need to be done to it.
And so.
But at that time, it didn't have the monitoring system in place either, so that would have mitigated that issue.
Roger, all that gives you is 30 minutes as, as.
Yeah, but we spent three days without knowing. I'm just saying, that would help that, but there's really no value. You can't put a, place a value on some of these trees. And so like, when you, when you talk about some of the mitigations, moving from the idea of removing 80 or 90 trees versus a couple hundred thousand of fixing plants and whatever the heck is in the backyards, and there's no hardscape, that to me is a, it's just apples and oranges.
Yeah, and, and the mitigation that I'm specifically speaking to in this case is just from that portion of Segments four and five. So your 80 trees, yes, they wouldn't be 80, but it's not a $200,000 save to save 80 trees. And so I, I think, just on some rough numbers, we're probably talking about 16 to 20 trees possibly, moving it from the nature center, sorry, nature center to Hinkle Creek Nature Area, and leaving it in the backyards.
But, so let me make sure I got that, because that was one of the things I was going to ask you, and I'll just ask you now. I didn't see like a à la carte, I guess, line item that shows, you know, this option mitigates this much trees, and so on and so forth, in great detail. But to your point, if we did that repair in, in place, repair for four and five, is that still, that, and that wouldn't be moving forward with the eight A, eight B, nine and 10? You would leave those as is, or repair, because those aren't there, so it goes the other way. So I guess what I'm saying is if you remove that whole piece of this project, that's the other mitigation on the trees, correct?
So if we removed Section four and kept it here?
So you leave four and five in place, and you repair them? And then the way the pipe goes now, let me see if this thing works. It's, it's going down this way, right?
No, it actually comes down this way and then goes out to Oak Avenue here.
Okay, there you go. I'm sorry about that. So this would still have to be just replaced in general, and that would be the other part of the tree?
Yes.
Removal, okay.
Yes.
But the other thing that, that we haven't brought back up again is that's, existing Section five is a 30, 30-plus percent slope.
Yes, here. That is correct here, and
That's a problem.
Believe in there. But yeah, so what, the, the trees in here, and like I said, this isn't, because we haven't completed a survey in this area to go and do the tree counts in people's backyards, but just visually and looking at what has been surveyed relative to what is visually out there, I think we're in the 16 to 20 tree range of not having to take out here, doing this alignment, now, and leaving that here. This, I mean, depending on what we did here, if we kept that alignment there, again, you're replacing a cast iron pipe at 35% grade. And what we tried to do here was just capture that and smooth that out a little bit, and not have such a steep incline with the sewer pipeline in Section five.
So are you able to, and I guess you might get into this later, so I'll just stop asking questions until you're done. But the last one I have is, are you able to make this happen right here by leaving everything up to here and then keeping this angle right there?
Well.
Like removing this orange top?
Yep.
Or can you do a horizontal bore between three and five?
Could you? Physically, yes, but you would likely need a minimum of a 24-inch diameter pipe to hold your sewer pipe. You couldn't directionally drill it just based on the soils analysis out there. You're not likely to make your line and grade from this manhole here to this location there. So you're likely
I was talking about cutting the corner off and going directly from three to five. Is that the same problem?
Manhole.
From manhole three to manhole five?
Uh, yes, that would be the same issue.
Elevation issue?
Not necessarily an elevation issue so much, but more, and I'd have to check, but I think there's a spot out here where there's a little valley that we may not, that if you did that, your pipe might be hanging out in the air. I'd have to double check. I don't know for certain. But horizontal directionally drilling from here to there, if there wasn't a valley, and I'd have to confirm, you're likely to run into the same issues from a drilling perspective, just based on the soil type and the cobbles and the cemented cobbles that are out there, drilling, say, an eight, just an eight-inch diameter pipe, that, the drilling head is likely to hit something and either deflect up or deflect down, left or right. And so you would have to go in there with a 24, 30-inch larger steel pipe, and then you slide in your other pipe. Not evaluated, more costly, and the potential for diversion is, or being off-center and offline is significantly higher than the open cut method. So the last bullet here is what we've continued to done, continue to do, is communicate with the Hinkle Creek Working Group. And like I mentioned before, that may be through email and several face-to-face meetings throughout the entire process. So this just shows what the current design looks like. The area in green is the realignment of the sewer pipeline out of the backyards. The gray area is what would be not only construction, temporary construction access road, but when we finished, providing a maintenance path for city staff as well. The proposed access that we're talking about is about four to six feet wide. It's not paved, it's not concrete. There's no concrete pavers associated with this. Finished look would be natural dirt, grass, and vegetation, so for the most part, what exists, exists there today. And then one thing we did realize during our discussion is it could accommodate what we call is an easement machine. It's about 30 inches wide, and it's got either tires or tracks. Ours, I think, has the tires on them. But what this allows you to do, it's almost like a stand behind lawnmower that you physically connect your sewer vector truck. It's got the high-pressure water hose at the end that does the cleaning and jetting. Well, when you're putting that through backyards, over fences, or dragging it across the ground, when you go to reel that back in from the truck that's now on American River, or, sorry, Canyon Rim Drive, you're probably 100 feet or so of hose that you're, it's supposed to be pulled in this direction, and now it's getting pulled here and then in this direction. So it makes it very difficult to get high enough pressures that you need to clean the lines, but also to pull that line in place. So what this easement machine allows you to do is it, it hooks up, and it's like an intermediate machine or an extension cord or an extension hose. You hook up to that, that has a reel and a hose on it, and you can then transfer the pressure and then pull through with that easement machine. And that would allow for that type of access based on a four to six-foot wide path. This is just a cross-section, so temporary access just shows, you know, being about, you know, 12 feet wide, 12 feet wide here in terms of the access, we would have temporary slopes that you have to cut into the hillside to make sure that the upslope is not falling and the downslope isn't falling out. And then it also shows what the finished look could, not the look, but what the width of, for the maintenance access path, which is this, you know, three or six feet wide. And we show six feet, because you can always narrow it down to four if you needed to. The bidding alternatives, as I mentioned before, this is what a similar piece of equipment looks like. This isn't actually a digging tool, but this is the type of equipment that could be, you can attach the necessary equipment to do the excavation. Typical construction methods, obviously, the two that we've talked about is bidding with construction access as part of the project, and then no construction road access or road allowed. That would be the second bid alternative.
I just want to clarify, you're using the term bid alternative, but you and I talked about this, and we're actually going to have two. This is not going to be an ad alternate in the bid.
Correct.
It's going to be two completely separate bid documents.
Yes, sorry, my mistake. That is correct. We would have two separate bid packages. One will be deliver the project as you see you can deliver this project. The second bid package would specifically state, no construction road, no construction access road allowed to deliver this project, which in turn pretty much gets you to this spider tractor alternative.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Why, I don't recall from the last discussion, maybe you answered this, but why, why do we not have just, if this is what's needed and we have to do this, why is it, why wouldn't it just be, that's the, the scope of the RFQ or RFP?
It's, it's not an RFP, it's, it's a bid document.
Whatever, yeah, thank you.
Which one, sorry?
Just the spider tractor, because the road is the rub, right? The road is where the trees come out.
That is correct.
So why not have this thing just bid out that way?
Well, several discussions have occurred since the council meeting, but also at the council meeting, I believe it was then former Mayor Andy Moran identified, hey, if there is another alternative way to deliver this project that has some sort of price escalation factor to it, right? If there were some other method to deliver this, essentially, that happened to be a little more expensive than what we thought the conventional construction alternative would provide, city council may be willing to entertain that. That kind of sums up what he was asking, or basically one of his statements. And so the only way that I can provide city council with any idea of what one cost means versus the other is to bid it two different ways. Because if one comes in, let's just say at $2 million for 80 trees, and another comes in at 1.6 million for 40 trees, obviously, that one would be the one that I would bring to city council, because not only is it less costly, but it also saves a certain amount of trees. If one comes in at 80 trees and $2 million, and the other one comes in at 40 trees and $3 million, I would not feel comfortable writing, saying, hey, go with the $3 million proposal. And so we could bring back the two very different but unique bid alternative, bid bids to city council, and then I can then ask, okay, which, is there a preference, which one? And then through the public bidding process, we would pick the low bid out of that particular bid and reject the other bid. And so in order for me to provide city council with two distinct propo, sorry, not proposals, but bids, and the cost associated with those bids, and the tree impacts associated with those bids, that's the only way that I can deliver that to city council for further discussion. Thanks.
Is what you're talking about. That's what you're saying, the way you would provide it, you'd bid it twice.
Uh, we bid it once at the same time with two different bids.
Right.
Yes. That is correct.
So we'll get pricing back for both?
Right, but you're going to achieve the same thing, but you're doing it two ways, and you want to know the cost from doing it either way, in the terms of money and in terms of trees.
That is correct.
And we'll take the best, and what Andy did say, if you can save a little trees, we'll maybe find some money to do it.
Yes. And that's just the way that I can actually give you what the tree savings could be and what the financial impact could be. So feedback from the working group, obviously, you've probably all received emails and/or had discussions, but the preferred option is more frequent flushing, cleaning, and inspection. No physical repairs, just perform just more routine operations and maintenance. Repair the pipelines in the backyards if the option above doesn't work or is not moved forward. Obviously, using the spider tractor construction bid proposal, which is what we plan to do, provide the monitoring systems or the level alarm systems in the manholes, which is what we plan to do. If there are ways in areas to make the access path narrower, do so. And some feedback that I got, and it wasn't from everybody, but it was from some of the members of the working group, is if there is an option in certain sections along the maintenance path to install a three-foot or so retaining wall to make that path narrower, they have at least told me that they would consider doing that if it meant saving some additional trees with the maintenance path. And so that's something that we would likely entertain once we had the bid proposals back, because if it's the spider tractor alternative, we'd have to figure out, okay, they're not using the same access that the other bid method would use. And so we'd have to evaluate, okay, from there, based on their installation and their trench and everything else, where would we find those areas? So that would likely come back to city council. It's probably a change order to the contract. We just don't have a way to evaluate that yet, because we don't know how the contractor is going to deliver that project. And then I think we've all heard and understand this last one, is to minimize the tree impact to the extent possible. And so with that, I will take any comments, questions, because I don't have any more to add specifically with these slides. If you want to move on to the speakers, we can do that, and I can address any comments slash questions after that.
I got a question. Do we run the risk of terminology when we talk about a road and then a maintenance path? Are we talking about one of the same thing, really? We're just calling it a different name?
Well, there's two different, there's a Well, there's two different, there's a temporary construction access road, which is likely to be 10 to 12 feet wide if a contractor chooses to use typical construction techniques. The city, for our staff, we are calling it a maintenance access path. It is not a maintenance access road for city staff.
And earlier in the presentation, Marcus said, it's not going to be paved, it's not going to have concrete pavers, it's not going to be concrete, it's not going to be asphalt. So it's just going to be dirt.
Yeah, but it still takes up room. And if there's a tree in the room, it takes up, the tree's gone, right?
Yes, there are certain impacts, tree-related, for certain portions of the access path, and then there also are tree impacts associated directly with the installation of the sewer line itself, which we are trying to use. If there is an impact along the sewer line trench where the pipeline's going to go, what we are proposing to do is to follow that alignment as much as we can for the maintenance access path, because the disturbance was already made to install the sewer line. We are going to try to avoid anywhere getting outside of that and further disturb any trees where we can. Now, we know in some of those areas, going around certain portions of the Hinkle Creek nature area, it's unavoidable if we have the maintenance access path, because it deviates from the pipeline path.
Could you back up to your slide that shows that path? We kind of didn't linger on it very long.
Yes. And so you can see here, this is where it gets away.
Yeah, no, I got that. I actually am just curious, where roughly is the back fence line for the houses along Canyon Rim?
Oh, I want to say right in here. So this is the existing sewer line, so right, probably there, going out this way, coming that way, and then there.
So the realignment is pretty far outside of that fence line?
That is correct.
Okay.
So I wonder if, yeah, sorry, that doesn't have a better...
None of the aerials are clear enough to see the fence?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
What was the estimated...
Didn't you bring your drone?
I don't recall. What was the estimated cost prior in the budget analysis for this project as it sat with the recommendations?
So once, so the original budget, if we're just looking at, at the time, was about $400,000 to do the repair work. But obviously, when we got into detailed analysis, and actually from 2017 till now, we're looking at from a construction cost, probably about 1.6 million.
And what fund does that come out of?
Fund 530, the wastewater fund.
And that's already been allocated, right? And accounted for the last budget cycle?
It's, yes, currently in the last budget, yes.
So if this didn't go or didn't move forward, that would just return back to that fund for improvement projects?
Yes, that's correct. We would just use another project, or use those funds to deliver a different project in a different location.
Would I be out of line making a motion on this prior to comment?
We haven't had the public or anything?
Yeah, no.
I think they'd like my motion, though.
No.
No, we haven't opened the public hearing.
Okay.
We haven't let the applicant speak, or the homeowners. Any other questions?
Yeah, I do. Councilmember Kostasowski and I are coming late to the party, so I just want to make sure that I'm clear. What you're asking us to do tonight is to either reaffirm the direction that the council gave you in June of 2017, or decide to go in another direction. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And when you talked about the direction from the prior council, you did hear back from the state that vector truck access is not necessary, which meant a permanent road was not necessary, correct?
Yes, but not in that specific language.
Okay.
Yes, that is...
But because of the response you got from the state, the direction from the council was then, repair, replace, realign the sewer line, but don't build a permanent road.
Correct.
Okay. And how far along are we in the design process for the project that was given to you by council?
We are probably 90% along on the design side, and 70 to 75% on the environmental sequel side.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks. And guessing we'll have more questions for you before the night's over, so.
All righty.
So our first speaker is going to be John Combs, and John is going to have 15 minutes allocated, and then I'll go through the list of the people that have three minutes.
You know how to advance all this stuff?
Yeah, got it. Thank you for bringing me up.
Got it. There you go. Laura's there? So council, good evening, John Combs, Hinkle Creek Working Group. This is our very pristine Hinkle Creek Park. It's a rare park in the city of Folsom in that most parks are like the Lou Howard Park, which is on the other side of the hill from here. It has, the Lou Howard Park has tennis courts, basketball courts, picnics areas, jungle gyms, et cetera. This is one of the few, if not the only, parks in the city of Folsom that is a pristine nature park. So what we have in Hinkle Creek is there's a nature area. You walk across the street, you walk into the park, there's a walking path that's about a foot wide, dirt carries you across the new walking bridge, brings you into Hinkle Creek. Left-hand side, you're walking along, you see this beautiful view, springtime view. On the right-hand side, you see Hinkle Creek, it's about a mile around. You have markers in there with guide posts or put in by Ken Menzer, the prior arborist for the city of Folsom, great guy, by the way. And so we have a very pristine and beautiful area that is enjoyed by the community, and our plan, our recommendation, our request is don't destroy it. So we started off here, and this is 2015, we have a beautiful park, and all of a sudden we see that the city wants to build a road and tear the park up. This, in here, you can see, the yellow is the road, the green is the fill, the turning stations are here, and so obviously the community got up in arms, we didn't want to do this. The tree impact was between 179 and 199 trees torn out. As you can see, there's a lot of tree foliage in here that was going to be destroyed. And we worked with Everett and with Marcus to bring in a contractor, as Marcus mentioned, to clean the line. Good news here is that we were able to clean every inch of the Hinkle Creek line, beginning to end, by accessing the line from the road, moving the waste down to this bottom area here, and down here to the same Oak Avenue location, pulling a vector truck up, kept it in Oak Avenue. Not a single tire from a vector truck got in here, we cleaned line end to end. From the camera inspection, and Marcus already reviewed, that this section here has some sags, and this area here has steel line in it, and needs to be replaced. These are Marcus's priorities, one, two, and three. We think that the...
Just one second, I just want to clarify that that section of pipe that Marcus referred to earlier was not televised.
Oh, no. Oh, that one, that everything was cleaned, Mayor?
No, you said, you said that it was all televised. I'm just reminding you that there's a section of pipe that could not be televised.
Eighty feet, eighty feet of the 3,400 feet, which is right in here, that one line did not get camera inspected. You are correct. It got cleaned, but not got camera inspected. It was flushed. Clear?
You said it was camera inspected, I was just pointing out that it wasn't. That's all.
Okay. So we think the big question we need to answer today in this meeting is why would we spend $3.2 million to repair a sewer line if there's an alternative that ensures the line is functioning properly, that saves trees, and that costs less? So we're going to drill down in this area, we'll first focus on ensuring the line is functioning properly. And that's important, right? There's nobody in the working group that thinks that having a defective line that allows sewers to fall into Hinkle Creek is appropriate. We know that the city of Folsom is keenly aware to minimize the sewer overflows, particularly because of what happened in 2000, when we had a major line break. 700,000 gallons of waste went into the American River, and the city got fined $700,000. Shortly after that, you appointed Marcus as your head of the sewer operations. He has done a magnificent job with his team to reduce the overflows, and today we're about the, one of the best cities in the state, okay? That having been said, we need to stay calm and be sure to understand that the Hinkle Creek little teeny sewer line is not the same as a major line that broke in the year 2000. So here's the facts, here's what we know. Folsom has 250 miles of sewer line, Hinkle Creek is 3,400 feet of that. It represents 0.25%, a quarter of 1% of the total sewer line in the city. The length that has issues is 1,000 feet, it's about a third of 3,400 feet. It is a six-inch diameter line. Sewer lines are normally six inches to 36 inches, this is the small, small end, and I liken it to a vein in your finger. If you cut a finger with paper, it bleeds, it hurts, that's the Hinkle Creek sewer line. If you slit your throat and you have an artery, that was overflowed, it happens in 2000, completely different, okay? This sewer line serves 27 homes. Six-inch line has ample capacity for that level of homes, and no other homes are going to be added in. Since 2002, we went back and got the maintenance records, the line has been visited 2.3 times per year, 365 days, two to three times a year it's visited. And since 2002, there's been two overflows. Marcus mentioned one of them, there's two. We believe that one, the one in 2015, was a blockage in one area that was cleaned and pushed down to another area, and it overflowed again. Now, the line itself does not have any root erosion, doesn't have any breaks in it. I was in the vector truck for a day and a half with the folks who are cleaning the line. The experts that do this told me that line's in great condition compared to what we work with. So we have a good foundation. We do have some areas that need to be fixed. The blue lines have sags, there's steel lines in the orange, let's address those independently. So 550 feet, 10% of that line has sags in it, no sags over 50% of the diameter of the pipe. I looked at the videos myself, we've got five minor sags in the line, or less than 25% of the diameter of the line, that are less than 10 feet long. We have one moderate sag right before a manhole that has about 30% of the diameter, four feet long, and we have grease deposits that were remaining after the cleaning. Marcus's plan is to dig up the line and replace it. We went to visit the president of a major sewer contractor in Northern California. He reviewed the video of the line. His team has half a dozen vector trucks. Last year, they cleaned 1,000 miles of sewer line, that's four times the total system capacity of the city of Folsom. These guys know what they're doing. We were talking about using backhoes versus spider tractors, and he basically mocked us and said, you guys are overthinking this. What you do when you have a line that's beginning to have, show where, you clean the line more frequently, you don't have to dig it up and replace it. So we went out and searched for what the standards are for sewer lines. We perused Marcus's 1,250-page sewer system management plan, and we looked at other cities, and particularly standing, Marcus has got a good plan, I'm not making light of it, but it doesn't have what the sewer standards are, should be for sags. So we found the city of Seattle, and in Seattle, they define a minor sag as less than 25% of the diameter. What you do with a minor sag is normal routine inspection. You camera inspect it, and you clean it once every four, five or six years. A moderate sag is 25% to 50%, and the action there is to inspect every two to five years. And a severe sag, 50% over the diameter, needs to be repaired, okay? If we apply these standards against the blue line in Hinkle Creek, we've got minor sags, six short sags and grease issue, we have no sags over 50%, recommendation is to inspect every two to five years. The orange segment has a completely different issue. It's 50% iron, 50% clay, all the blue is, and all the rest of the pipe in the line is clay. And we have the iron segments that have issues with them, okay? Once again, Marcus wants to dig up the entire line and replace it, we don't think that that's necessary. We think we should do the iron segments, there's three of them there, all three should be replaced, particularly the one underneath Hinkle Creek. And trenchless construction access should be used, it's a lot less expensive, and you can repair the pipe in place. Trenchless is used in every metropolitan area. Think about if we're going to run a sewer line across Auburn-Folsom Road, we wouldn't want to have traffic issues, et cetera. Trenchless technology enables you to repair the line in place. And the early warning manhole covers, one thing here that's critical is, these manholes are buried in the forest, okay? They're not where anybody's going to see them. Early warning is important, and appreciate the fact that Marcus is supporting, putting these smart meters in. So our plan to ensure that the line is, functions properly, is one, camera clean and inspect on a higher frequency, two is to replace the iron pipe segments, and three is to put the early warning system in. Okay, so let's look at the second item. Why would we spend $3.2 million to repair a sewer line if there's an alternative that ensures the line functions properly and saves trees, and costs less? So here's the tree impact. The alternative that Marcus presented is our alternative number four, it ends up costing us 88 trees. If we use a spider tractor and to foreget the maintenance path and put the line in, it's 43 trees. If we put the line, leave the line in the neighbors' backyards, if you use a spider tractor, it goes from 43 to 16. If you use a backhoe, it goes 88 to 46. So significant savings there, but certainly a real inconvenience to the community. Our recommendation is to clean, camera inspect, repair and monitor, and to do the iron pipes with a trenchless technology, it's going to cost us about five trees. 88 to five, saving 83 trees from being destroyed in our nature area. If we compare that to Marcus's chart that was submitted to the council for approval, basically we line up here, the 88 is the construction using the temporary road, the 43 is the sewer trench, and the other, number three, is the trench with a maintenance path. So you use a backhoe to dig, they do a great job, as Marcus mentioned, you've got to have a flat spot for them. Key point here is that this is a Quincy engineering slide, you can't see the LED very well, but we end up here, to get a 12-foot road, you've got to carve out 42 feet out of the face of the pristine park. Trees, bushes, everything has to be cleaned off of there. And when you do that, you end up with the line that Marcus showed basically here, same orientation, 88 trees get taken out. So the spider tractor doesn't require a road, should be able to have a lot less damage in the tree area. We said it costs 43 trees. We met with Marcus, and we reviewed the analysis that he put together, and we were kind of dumbfounded, because using the spider tractor with a trench and a path, the team estimated 87 trees were going to be impacted. So if you don't have to build a construction road, why would you have so many trees taken out? So we took the exact drawing, we laid out, right here, the green line you see is an eight-foot wide swath through the park, okay? The eight-foot wide swath is what's required by a spider tractor to dig the trench, okay? 43 trees were impacted. Then what we did, we laid on top of that, where you're going to dig the trench, why don't you put the maintenance path there, okay? That is in the red line that's drawn on there, and the area over here to the right is the access for a road, walking path to get up. You shouldn't have to build, take out any trees if you're going to build a two-foot wide, four-foot wide walking path. You simply make your road go around the trees. I bring this up because, it's not a reflection, I don't think there's any foul play or anything like that, but I bring this up because rather than 87 trees, which is double this amount, okay? The real number's closer to 43, and it's just not the orientation from the city of Folsom to really focus on how to deal with a, with a nature area, either in the sewer management plan, which is based on how do you fix stuff in asphalt, or in the activities we've had with Hinkle Creek, we simply don't orient ourselves to protecting our natural property. Okay, last... Okay, last item.
John, can you back up just one second? I'm looking at the number 4732 over halfway across the page. That is showing the pipeline to be out of the backyards into the nature area, correct?
I use Marcus's, yes. I used, we put the alignment exactly where it is. Where Marcus had it.
And did you guys have an engineer look at this?
A who?
An engineer.
Yes, engineer did it.
What engineer did it?
We contracted an engineer to do, to take the drawing that we got from Quincy and put this eight-foot path in. We know that's eight foot required for a spider tractor. Draw a line at eight foot, four feet on either side and then put a four-foot, a road in.
Okay, can you tell us who the engineer was?
Nope.
Was it a licensed engineer in California?
Yes. Do you think this is wrong?
No, I'm just asking the question. I'm asking the qualifications of the engineer. That's all.
All right. So why would you spend 3.2 million dollars to repair a sewer line if there's an alternative that ensures the line functions properly, saves trees and costs less? Okay, from the, our operating budget for the city of Folsom for the years 2019 to 20, right out of the budget to fix the 1,000 feet of sewer line in Hinkle Creek, we've spent to date 776,000 dollars where cost to complete is 2.4 million dollars for a total cost of 3.2 million. Substantial investment. The lady that came up before about your sales tax changes, this 3.2 million could fill that gap you had in there. This represents 180,000 dollars per home served. So what does our alternative cost? You camera clean and inspect, not just the blue section, but the entire line. You contract it out to a contractor, 20,000 dollars a year, you do it every year. Orange segment line, three times 15,000 dollars, 45,000 in capital cost replaces three iron pipes. Early warning system, 5,000 dollars per manhole. We said we equipped four manholes, 20,000 bucks, okay? This represents our turn-on investment, okay? Well, I added another 10,000 dollars just for miscellaneous jazz every year, but the ROI, it takes 104 years of service and support, 104 years of service and support, okay, to reach the 2-point million, 3.2 million dollar line. So I mean, it just, it is mind-numbing to me that we can't get this approved to be managed within a little teeny sewer line in a beautiful, pristine nature area. Why wouldn't, why would we spend 3.2 million dollars to repair a sewer line that we can ensure it functions properly, that saves 83 trees and costs us millions of dollars less? And the answer to the question is, you wouldn't. Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, our next speaker is Crystal Tobias.
Can we ask questions of John?
Oh, yep, sorry about that. Go right ahead.
Does anybody have questions of John?
I would like to say thank you for all the hard work you and your team, if you will, have done for this. It's been a long road to bring all of these and you did a great job on that, so thanks.
Thank you.
John, if you don't mind, I have a few questions.
Oh, please.
How does what you're proposing today compare with what you proposed to the council in June of 2017?
In 2017, we proposed the spider tractor, what we call option three, which was using that to do 43, taking out 43 trees. Subsequent to that, we came up with, we met with a person who gave us a better recommendation in our judgment, which is to clean and repair more frequently. But 2000, in the June 2017 meeting, we were recommending the spider tractor.
So you are recommending to repair, replace and realign the sewer line?
Yep.
Okay. So at that June 2017 meeting, it's my understanding that the city staff also recommended to repair, replace, realign and construct a permanent road. And the alternative that you all presented was repair, replace, realign and no permanent road. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay. And so I was at that meeting in the audience that night and I have watched the webcast. I know it was a very long meeting, lots of testimony, lots of deliberation. What was your understanding as far as what the council's direction was to staff at the end of that meeting?
Basically, one, it was the thing, to go back to the water board, that we understand, we came back with a favorable ruling there. It was to look for ways to take care of the sewer line and minimize the tree impact in the park. And it was in general to look for ways to take care of the sewer line and to build a walk, an access road, or not an access road, an access path for the sewer workers.
Okay. And you've obviously spoken to a lot of experts, you've done your homework, which I do appreciate. If, when you're talking to experts, if they said to you, "John, the city really ought to replace these lines because it would result in, you know, fewer sewer spills, it would prolong the life of the line, it would hopefully prevent the city from having to, you know, pay a fine in the future," would you accept that recommendation?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Without hesitation. I'm a former CEO, I'm not a tree hugger. I'm here because I believe that it really is not necessary for us to tear up the park and there's other alternatives. But our entire team, I can speak for my entire team, not just myself, but we understand that we cannot allow sewer waste to flow into Hinkle Creek. Small line, but even at that, it's got to, it cannot happen, right? So.
Okay. So the expert that you brought to the June 2017 council meeting
Right.
agreed with the city's recommendation and the working group's recommendation to repair, replace and realign the sewer line.
Now, he presented about the PhD from Sacramento State University. He teaches fluid engineering and sewer management and he was talking more about the ability to ensure that the line continued to flow properly in the face of sags.
This right here, this is a slide from his presentation.
Okay.
It says, "We agree," the "agree" is in capital letters, "with the city's proposal to repair the sewer line, upsize and realign the sewer line."
Okay.
That was your expert.
Right. And since then, we found a way to take the tree and the destruction and the cost, reduce the tree impact from 43 to five, to reduce the cost by millions of dollars and still ensure that the sewer line operates properly. Yes, we have, we've got more information, we know a lot more now than we did before and what we did in 2017, we've been working at this now almost five years. And so the last two years, we've made more progress and understand how we might be able to manage the sewer line in a beautiful park without impacting the park and costing less money.
Okay, but here's, here's my problem. The expert that you brought to the June 2017 meeting agreed with repair, replace, realign, no permanent road. The council actually accepted your alternative plan, which was repair, replace, realign and no permanent road. And the council and the city staff has gone in that direction. The city staff presented Plan A, you presented Plan B, the council said, "You know what? They're right. Let's go with Plan B." Now here we are, two and a half years later, this project should have been finished a year ago and you're saying, "Wait a second, we don't want to do Plan B anymore, we want you to do Plan C." How can we do that? How can we run a city that way? How would you run a business that way?
If you're working for a city and your motto is distinctive by nature and you figured out a way to save a lot of trees and a lot of money, okay, I think you should make that decision. That's what the city council's about. In two and a half years, you should learn something, right? And we've learned something. There's a better way to do it than what was discussed in the September, June, 17 meeting. And I would expect that, and encourage, that the council members are to take a look and weigh the pluses and minuses of these alternatives and if it is, in fact, the least expensive and it is the least tree impact, if we've learned something in two and a half years, why wouldn't we bring it forward? Especially if we can find out that we didn't have to do this, the sewer, complete sewer line replacement at all, right? We could have saved 700,000 dollars in investment that's been put in this thing if we went forward and thought about other alternatives back in 2015, rather than using our mindset that the way we fix things here is we dig up the asphalt and we dig and put in the sewer line. If we had thought about how could we get this done without that kind of negative impact on our environment, we probably would have come up with that solution back in 2015.
So John, the goal is to maintain the sewer line and prevent any additional spills?
What, no sewer line, no sewer line's going to be, no, no, it's not to do that. It's not to, and a sewer line is a line that can get clogged, clogged up, it can overflow, you can't say it can never do it. But what you can say is, is that industry standards in terms of how the sewer line is properly maintained can be set up to where the probability of an overflow getting to Hinkle Creek is de minimis and that's what we're proposing.
Okay, well, according to your expert that you brought to the June 2017 meeting, he said, "If you want to reduce the potential for spills, prolong the life of the line, preserve the environment, present, prevent the city from being fined again, you ought to repair, replace and realign the sewer line." That's what your group agreed with, that's the direction that the city took. And, you know, you're in business, I'm in business, there is no perfect solution here, right?
Right.
But we made a decision and now you're asking us to go 180 degrees. And I just want to remind you of something that you said at that meeting, because I thought council member Gaylord at that meeting did an excellent job of just cutting to the chase. And he said, "Is it correct in saying that you're not opposed to the temporary road and the improvements needed for the pipe?" And you said, "Correct. We understand, we're not so fanatical about trees that we don't realize that we can't afford to have overflows into Hinkle Creek. There are going to be some trees that need to be taken out. We're trusting Everett, Marcus and the team to minimize that to the extent they can. I believe with construction materials designed to work in off-road areas like this, we can have the minimal width of the roads, but we understand they have to be built and there are going to be some trees impacted."
All that's accurate, Sarah, but what I'd say is, is if in two and a half years, we realize that you don't have to replace the entire sewer line, why wouldn't you do that?
Well...
This should have been finished a year ago.
If you're saving millions of dollars and a whole bunch of trees, why wouldn't you make the decision to do it now?
John, this project should have been finished a year ago.
Who cares? It's not, we're here today.
No, Sarah's talking right now, you wait your turn. Go ahead.
Here's the thing, thank God John and his team have done what they've done since that meeting and I'll tell you why. Having sat up here and obviously you've watched the cast, we had only a few options. We didn't have the vectoring that John sat in with. His professional engineer, whoever you brought to the table, didn't have that information. They didn't have all of the man-hours they put into finding out other alternatives to do what they're setting out to do and that is protect this area. This wouldn't be standard operating procedure. So had I made a decision as a council member to pull the trigger on that project and have it done today, I would be remiss to hear the information John and his team have brought forward for this. So I, with all due respect, I have to disagree with that. It's, we are only as good as what we can, you don't need to, it's, I appreciate the homework and everything Vice Maracino does as well because I look at her as a, you know, she's new on the council, but she definitely is a mentor to me because she does her homework. So with that said, I appreciate the information. I've learned those for the two years now on this topic and I'm 100% grateful sitting here discussing it again because I think the impact for this community that it does, removing and tearing it out when you don't need to, especially finding out all these other, the condition and options, it's, to me, case in point, the next topic we're talking about is raising rates for utilities and this is 3.2 million, it's probably less than, I think you were talking 2 million, but the plus the 700 already spent back in the budget here. So for me, thank you. I appreciate you coming out and doing this and putting this back on the dais for us to talk about.
Marcus, can I ask you a question now? I don't know how easy it is for you to get your slides up, but I believe that this conversation's getting a little bit circular because in fact, one of the options that was eliminated in your alternatives was in fact this one. If you could put that slide up from your presentation. I want to say it was one of the earlier ones, Marcus.
So it's the, yes, part of our second bullet here.
So that would be the bottom part of the slide. Clean flush of sewer lines on a routine basis, do not fix the damaged sewer line and maintain existing conditions, so.
Correct.
Because I think at the end of the day, I think maybe there's a, not really even a distinction, but the only subtle change is that Mr. Combs is claiming that lining of the, lining of the pipe is appropriate and you've already explained that lining of the pipe is not appropriate.
In my opinion, that is correct and in the opinion of a couple engineers I've spoken to, they hold the same opinion.
Okay. Thanks, Marcus.
The last thing I was going to say was also, back in the last meeting, the option of replacing and repairing in place wasn't on the table either. So that was another big piece to this that's come to the council from before, correct?
That is correct as well.
I just wanted to make sure I put that out there as well from the last time.
Yeah, and if we did go back, I believe this item here where the discussion about eliminated do not on compliance was also discussed at the June meeting. It wasn't discussed in as much detail as the other alternatives, just because we had, for the most part, come to an agreement on the, one, moving the pipeline out of the backyards and two, replacing those sections of pipe throughout that, not the entire alignment, but four, five, eight, nine and 10. And so that's a majority of the information that was presented at the June meeting.
Okay, and just one more question while you're still up there. Marcus, you said that the cost estimate was 1.6 million dollars. I take the 1.6 million dollars and add to that the 700,000 and change that's already been spent, that is what gets us to 2.4 million dollars. So there's some, there's some wrong math. The 3.2 number is not correct.
No, that is absolutely wrong. The 3.2 number is in...
Actually, I'm sorry, John, if you could wait one, just one second, I'd like Marcus to answer the question and then you can comment.
So the 3.2 million in our current budget, it identifies the prior cost of roughly, what, 760,000 dollars. Then we do have a total estimate to deliver the project with construction, environmental, mitigation, permitting, inspection, materials testing, that gets us to the 2.4 million dollars that's in the current budget. So if you add the two and if our projections are right on, in total, to deliver this portion of the project, plus to have some prior work on two other areas or two, you know, prior investigative work, studies and analysis on two other areas of the city that was included originally in 2015, that would total about the 3.1 million dollars.
So you can't recoup the seven and change, you can not spend the other 2.4 though?
No, there's cost associated with any, any one of these options.
No, 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 I'm saying in general, right as we sit today, if nothing was to happen, that's...
From a construct, from a project delivery method, that is correct. If, if the direction was go with alternative one, just clean and inspect more routinely and more often, then yes, we would save on this project the 2.4 million dollars in construction, but we would then go apply that to some other project that is in our capital improvement plan.
I've got a question I'm going to ask.
Does anybody have any more questions of John, so they're not both standing up there?
Yeah, I was going to say, we should do the remainder of the public comments.
I want to ask one more question.
Is your question of Marcus or John?
Marcus.
Okay, John, you can sit down, thanks.
Okay, Marcus, my question is 700,000 dollars, which you said is about 90-some percent ready to go to bid on both options, tractor and the conventional and the spider, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. What's the, so we're not going to spend any more money on that 700,000 to get that completed, right? right?
That, to get the design completed?
Right.
To get the design completed, likely not, but just for your information, and I believe it's listed in the staff report under the environmental section, since this project was initiated with Quincy Engineering at the time, there have been some updates to SEQA. And those updates would require some additional SEQA analysis for two categories that were not included in the 2018 documents, because those SEQA requirements did not come into effect until January of 2019. So, it is likely if we are to proceed down the path that was directed at the June meeting, there would be some additional SEQA analysis required.
Okay, but, okay, that's nothing we can do, when we get mandates that come after the fact, and, and we get caught in them, we have to deal with it. But the $700,000 plus, that should take us to where we can go to bid, assuming we spend the other money to figure the SEQA.
Yes.
Okay. What is, is preventing us from even thinking to keep this option in abeyance? Go out to bid and see what the cost estimate, estimate is for the other two, and we can compare all three. Otherwise, we're just throwing $700,000 right down the tube. It's in the black hole, we get nothing out of it. If we, if we finish it, and finish the contract, add a few thousand to the SEQA, and then go out and see what the cost is between the tractor and the conventional. And then we have a three-way, uh, 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 valuation at that time, and then we can be financially smart. I think if we just kill this project and then say we're going to press ahead, that's not right. We should wait until we make a determination on this, until we see the bid comes back from the other two, and look at all three of them.
And that's, if that's the direction after this evening, we will be able to do so.
See what John thinks about that, too.
If we do, to, to ask Marcus, ask Marcus.
I need to ask you to speak in the microphone so that the cameras can hear.
Sure, okay, thank you. So, i- i- if, for Marcus to go do an evaluation of alternative one, three, and four, which is clean, camera inspect, refurbish the line, repair the line, and monitor, option one, and, and the, replace the sewer line completely, option, has two options to it. One is with a backhoe, which takes out a lot of trees, or with a spider tractor. Those are the three options. Yes, we would agree to that very much. Thank you.
Because then we're not just leaving something hanging in the wind, and $700,000 went to nothing.
Right.
Let's finish it. Let them finish it, and let's go out and then come back with three options that we can put a cost to.
And, and I think too, that, that, I, I would encourage us to go back out and to actually do what we did before, which is clean the sewer line again. It's been three years since we did it. Let's go out, clean the sewer line, get a contractor to do it, or Marcus's team to go do it, do the camera inspection, right? And then let's do some due diligence at the end. Let's take it and take it outside of this community, for those of us who are involved, and get some experts outside to take a look at this, and find out if cleaning the line more frequently is gonna do the job or not. Let's give them the videos to look at of the current line. Let's compare what we did three years ago with what the line is today, and make a decision if we want to take this option on. If, if the, the risk for the option one we have presented is slightly less or equal to what we're doing to the line, that I think we should take it, because it saves trees and costs. But we can do that, clean the line right now, and compare it, and look at it, and give it to somebody independent to decide if in fact that we're right, or if Marcus is right.
Well, I have no problem personally going that route, but at the same time, I'm gonna finish and go to bid to get the other two estimates back. I don't want to waste $700,000.
Okay, can I start bringing the other speakers up?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
So, come on up, you're gonna have three minutes. Crystal Tobias, if you could move toward the front, that would be helpful. Roger, and I, I apologize if I'm pronouncing this wrong, is it Buttigieg?
Butcher.
Butcher, okay. And then Matt Pastoni.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Crystal Tobias, I'm a longtime Folsom resident, and I'm the co-founder of Friends of Lakes Folsom and Natoma. I don't have my yellow scarf on, because yellow is just not my color, so. I am here this evening with my colleagues to urge the City of Folsom to adopt the least costly and least invasive method to address the sewer line stability in Hinkle Creek. There are many reasons to do so, and I hope the city will consider them when making their decision. The option to use cameras and early warning flow monitors is the least costly and least invasive of the four options being considered. The State Water Board supports this effort, as they have stated that using a more costly vector truck to clean the line is not required. There are many other issues in Folsom that need financial support, if the funds could be redirected, such as investing in other infrastructure, cleaning up graffiti and other trashed areas of the waterway, working on a comprehensive effort to address the homeless situation, hiring a volunteer coordinator for the city, developing programs to keep kids engaged in positive efforts to help them grow into contributing members of society, like the nature programs at the Hinkle Creek Nature Center, and other such options. It protects 83 oak trees that help clean the air and provide homes to many birds and other critters in the parkway. As some of you know, I am a tree hugger. It protects a beautiful nature area that has recently been slated for a makeover by the City of Folsom Parks and Recreation, including reworking the 50 Points of Interest brochure that Ken Menzler put together, both online and in hard copy, trimming back invasive species to highlight cultural artifacts like the Indian grinding stones, and making an effort to clean up ladder fuel to keep the fire danger down in that beautiful area. This area is highlighted in the Fall Parks and Recreation brochure with a family-oriented nature hike, and in the September issue of Style Magazine on their hikes page. This nature area provides the greater Folsom community with a place for quiet enjoyment of nature. Putting a road into the area will not only destroy much of the beauty, it will open the area to transients and other nefarious individuals, Larry. The same area provides a home to a variety of native flora and fauna, including important species such as the elderberry bush, California pipe vine, birds of prey, bobcats, gray squirrels, raccoons, coyotes, mountain lions, and a variety of reptiles and amphibians. Removing trees and allowing greater access of vehicles and individuals who do not have the area's best interest at heart will significantly damage the beauty and quiet enjoyment of the area. I join my colleagues in urging the city to use the least invasive, least costly option to improve the sewer line situation in Hinkle Creek, an area that serves less than 30 homes. Using the funds saved by choosing this option to address other serious issues in the city would be appreciated by many and would make a lasting positive difference in our community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roger Butcher, then Matt Pastoni, then Peggy Bruce.
Thank you very much for this opportunity, and hearing the views of the Hinkle Creek Work Group, I appreciate it. Elaine, thank you very much for turning the air conditioning down, I think you probably saved two or three lives in here tonight.
Actually, I was asked by one of the council members to turn it up, so I apologize, I think it's getting colder.
Okay.
Okay.
This is a picture of Hinkle Creek that looks so good with no roads through it. It is 42 acres of pristine land that was donated to the city located south of Oak Avenue Parkway, east of Canyon Rim, and goes down to the Canyon Greenback Lane, excuse me. And then also, the Hinkle Creek Group has been working, as John said, on this project, and working with Marcus and the city here the last five years. And this sewer line that we're talking about is about six inches. And if you have 12 or 24-inch line, we'd be talking about a lot different, more serious situation, I do believe, but only 27 homes are serving that, are being served by this line, which is, uh, does not, I feel, does not warrant building the road or doing anything like that. Folsom has several parks, bike trails, but only one nature area, only one. And to see that defaced or destroyed in any way, I think would be really not the thing to do. Hinkle Creek Nature Area, we all want a sewer line that works, but don't have, don't we have the responsibility to preserve the nature area as best as we can? And I've been thinking that maybe after this tonight, we get back together and have some more collaboration about what we're going to actually do in this situation with the nature, uh, nature, nature area. Our objective should be to have a sewer system that does work, does not have spills or overflows, but mainly with a minimum minimal intrusion or damage to the nature, nature area. And I think that needs to be forefront of the whole project. When you have a hammer, and that's the only tool you use, everything looks like a nail. So, why don't we get more innovative? Let's save some trees, save all the trees we can. Some of the manholes are covered, are in areas where there's trees and vegetation. Doing a road back into some of those would be absolutely difficult to do. I do see that Marcus is wanting to use the electronic manhole monitoring, which is a very good system to use. I'll let you know a little bit more about it. The green sensor here at the top is, and then, it has an antenna, it's completely traffic rated, the antenna are, is glued down with very powerful glue, so it would take some time to chisel it off. And with a monitoring system, the city would be notified automatically if the system loses communication by somebody removing the sewer lid, the, the manhole cover. How is the city notified of a possible overflow? The system can send a text, email, page directly to the consumer with features, this feature is limited, unlimited, in terms of amount of non-functions, notifications, and amount of customers who are signed up. So, however many people, people with the sewer department wants to be notified can be. The, the alarm can let, let them know there's high water in, or an opening, somebody's opened a lid. Alert of maintenance concern, like a low battery, advisory change in the water level can indicate the blockage starting to occur before it even hits the alarm. So, I think that's a great advantage there. It's used by the Uridium Satellite System, 68, 66 active satellites in a polar orbit, 185 miles above the earth, global redundant coverage, mission-critical reliability. This is also used by the Department of Defense for our troops. It needs very small amount of horizon to be, to be able to function properly.
Roger, I need to ask you to kind of wrap it up.
Pardon?
I need you to wrap it up, you're a minute and a half over.
We'll close once I get through this one, okay? Very small, there's no issue with weather, using technology is vital, I believe. Talking about the 12-foot, building a 12-foot road would require a 21-foot path, because when you take the sides down, it would, you'd need to take all the vegetation out of those areas. The spider tractor, John and I both walked with the engineer that owns a company with this, his statement was, he could do this project, and a year later, you wouldn't even know that he was there. So, I'm, we're really hoping that that's the route that we go. Let's save Hinkle Creek, this is our nature area, this is our only nature area. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, our next speaker is Matt Pastoni, then Peggy Bruce, then Beth Kelly.
Thank you. I am Matt Pastoni, I had some prepared remarks, but after John with the questions with the council, and going back and forth with Marcus, I don't need to add to the circularness, we'll come back next. But I would like to point out that Hinkle Creek is kind of long in its shape, and the trail kind of comes in sort of in the midpoint and works its way up like on, on one end of it. And then the other end is kind of closed off between, between the creek and the homes and the trees, there's not a trail, there's, it's sort of wild, actual nature area, and there aren't other nature areas, like a few people pointed out, there aren't other nature areas, other parks in Folsom or anywhere nearby where you can walk around and not be on a road, and just actually be in a wild and nature, natural area. And I think there's some value to that, not to have an access, you know, like a trail or access, so you, you can actually feel the nature. So, anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Peggy Bruce, then Beth Kelly, then Larry Strickler.
Mayor Howell and council members, I'm Peggy Bruce, homeowner of one of the seven homes that will be affected by the outcome of this meeting this evening. I am the daughter of one of the very first families to move into American River Canyon. I'd like to share my passion for saving our oak trees that glorify Hinkle Creek directly behind my property at 132 Canyon Rim Drive. My parents moved here in 1981, 38 years ago, when our neighborhood was brand new. My husband and I purchased their home 14 years ago, when they had to move to assisted living. One of the manholes on tonight's agenda is placed in my backyard. Our three sons, now in their 40s, wanted to keep this home in our family, not only due to the beautiful oak trees that we see right behind our property, but for their many memories of playing when they were little boys back in the 80s, when visiting my parents. They picked blackberries, they pretended they were Indians, and spent a lot of time exploring the cave they found on the side of one of the hills. They remember walking up the path where Lew Howard Memorial Park is, and having many adventures in the undisturbed terrain that is Hinkle Creek. Children everywhere should have a place to explore that isn't void of trees and natural surroundings. Like my parents, we support the Audubon Society that gives birds a fighting chance when their habitat is under attack. The manhole in our backyard has been serviced by the city on very rare occasions in these past 38 years. Whenever the city has felt the need to check them, they've come and knocked on our front door, and we, like my parents, have always given them access to our backyard. They are there maybe five to 10 minutes, and all has been fine. No roads for trucks, no elimination of trees, no needless spending of millions of dollars, no disruption to Hinkle Creek has ever been necessary. As recently as two weeks ago, two men from the city came to our door asking to take pictures of the manhole in our yard, and as always, we gave them entrance, entrance. They asked me to flush a toilet, to check the water flow, and they were on their way in a matter of minutes. We will always continue to support the city by accessing our manhole through our backyard, which also has a gate for them to go through directly into the nature area if they need to. Council members, as you make your decision tonight, we strongly urge you to consider this information in making a sound decision to keep our nature area intact and save the city and our neighborhood from unnecessary disruption, expense, and disturbance to the habitat of our valued and innocent wildlife. And in closing, I want to thank you for siding with us two years ago. We were able to provide you with data and research to show you that radical measures did not, were not necessary, and to maintain our sewers. In these past two years, I have not seen nor heard of any evidence that your decision to vote back then in our favor was not the right one. I sincerely hope that you once again vote in our favor with minimal impact as outlined in our first alternative, using early warning flow monitors, and save our trees and home to the many animals and birds that thrive, thrive in Hinkle Creek. Thank you for your time.
Beth Kelly.
Hello, Beth Kelly. I have a different approach here. The city is sidestepping around the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, by deciding now on the preferred, preferred project, which apparently also includes a road of some sort, when there are environmental impacts, and by avoiding analyzing the alternatives through preparing a mitigated negative declaration on only their preferred alternative. This can be broken down into three issues. Feasible alternatives are available, an EIR should be prepared to evaluate all alternatives, and three, the proposed tree mitigation is inadequate. Number one, issue one, feasible alternatives are available. Under SEQA, a public agency should not approve projects as proposed if feasible alternatives or feasible mitigation measures are available that would substantially lessen the significant environmental effects of the project. Each public agency shall mitigate or avoid the significant effects on the environment of projects that it carries out whenever it is feasible to do so. Issue two, an EIR is needed. Under California Code of Regulations, if there is substantial evidence in light of the whole record, before- the whole record before a lead agency that a project may have a significant effect on the environment, the agency shall prepare a draft EIR. SEQA states that the purpose of an EIR is to identify the significant effects on the environment of a project, identify alternatives, and indicate the manner in which those effects can be mitigated or avoided. In contrast, a mitigated negative declaration is prepared for a project that has significant effects on the environment, but project plans would avoid those effects or mitigate for them to a point where clearly no significant effect on the environment would occur. Issue number three, tree mitigation is inadequate. The proposed tree mitigation detailed in the 2016 Arborist Report is inadequate and does not mitigate the effects to no significant effect. The mitigation fees are not high enough to discourage removal of trees or actually perform reasonable oak mitigation work. Sarah Wiley, restoration ecologist with 15 years' experience for the Sacramento Tree Foundation, provided an analysis using the 2016 Arborist Report and SAC County mitigation fees and a tree benefit calculator. The mitigation fee for these proposed tree impacts would be $195,000, not $78,000. And in addition, the benefit to the community for these trees is $11,709 per year. This is based on pollution capture, stormwater interception, carbon sequestration, and other factors. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Betsy. Beth, rather. Larry Strickler, then Joyce Blonsky, and then Kevin, I think it's Pharoah or Favreau.
I got to follow that. That was pretty good.
You guys lined up the cards. You'll have to complain to John.
I know. I'm just teasing. I'm going to keep mine short and sweet, because a couple of people have already talked about some of the things I was going to bring up. Crystal brought up some homeless issues. One of the things that I would talk about when it comes to the homeless, last year I had to make three phone calls for homeless people going down there and camping, trying to make little tent cities down there by the bridge down there. My wife and I had to go down there multiple times, grabbed trash bags, and probably hauled out six bags of trash. So that, to me, means that if we put a road in there, a path, a road, hopefully not a road, we might have more homeless issues coming in with that. That's why I'm more favorable to the spider tractor proposal. The other thing, another gentleman just brought up, this gentleman here, he said something that was very interesting about the satellites, that they could have a program where you could have texts being sent to this gentleman or anybody. Well, me, I'm retired, so you put me on that list. The other lady that was just here, that was one of the first 14 homes that were bought here, I'm sure she's allowing people into her backyard for access. She probably would want to be on that list. You have obviously a lot of support out here. We'd be happy to go out there and call this gentleman. Yeah, there's stuff coming out, or no, there isn't. That's another issue. The other thing I'd like to touch on is when you talk about coming into the backyards, I'm assuming, hopefully safely, I can assume this, that we have fences, we particularly have a wall. When you guys come into our backyard, you'll leave it the same way as you found it, I hope that's correct. And lastly, maybe I missed this, but has anybody talked about, if you're going to have to take trees out, are we replacing the trees? Are we planting more trees? Yes. Is that correct? Okay.
If it goes into the nature area, is that the question?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So we'll be putting more trees. Is it two to one, three to one, one to one? Do we know?
The calculation gets complicated depending on the type of tree.
Okay. Well, they're mostly oaks back there, but okay. Those are my concerns. Again, the road could bring in more homeless people, the property, leaving it as you found it, and putting trees back into the system. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Joyce Blonsky, then Kevin "Pharoah" Favreau, and I apologize if I'm pronouncing that wrong, then Tony, whose last name starts with a P.
Hi, Joyce Blonsky. I sent you all an email and shared that my view is option one. First, I want to thank John and his team for his hard work. I have a couple of points that hasn't been discussed, but I want to say ditto. My neighbor was talking about the homeless. I'm the first home in Valley Pines, 19, oh God, '78. So I've seen a lot. I've listened to everybody's house get built. And I also can tell you that this particular area, the Hinkle Creek area, used to be the fire station, then it turned into this nature thing, and now it's absolutely beautiful. We can actually walk down there. But I walk with my dogs every morning, well, most every morning. I want to be transparent. And there are people that park there, where the dead ends, where the trail starts, at least twice a week. And sometimes it breaks my heart, because it's a homeless gal in a truck, and you just know that's where she's living. You put a road in there, and you will have some homeless, but because I'm on the other side of Lew Howard Park Road that goes up, I can tell you how thankful I am that I don't back up to Lew Howard Park, because every one of those people have been broken into. You put a road that wraps around there, and now you just have, you have people get their homes broken into. So that's an area that I wanted to share as well. Marcus mentioned that there was a 35% grade or incline to put this pipe in. Well, they had a 35% grade when they put it in the first time, so what's the difference if you have a 35% grade the second time? So I thought that was a non-issue. And then last but not least, the gal who did your fiscal report, so I'm a financial advisor, been doing it since 1985. I've got some experience doing analysis and was the treasurer for so many nonprofits. God give me strength. Would not want your job. But one of the things that she talked about was the ten- and two-year inversion of the bonds. And I can tell you that June 20th, I sent out a memo to all my clients, basically with, it was called a red flag warning, and it was pages of things that were concerning me before the inversion hit. I have analysis that goes back to 1887 that shows we're at the peak, 2019. So if you're worried about your sales tax dropping to $3 million, and I think your surplus was, you have to have an 18% surplus, or you're at 18%, I don't know what your minimum is for your surplus, but you spend another $2.4 million, you find that you have a recession, and people are not shopping at the Palladio or the car dealers, and you're going to be in a fiscal restraint that you have never imagined.
The only, thank you very much for your comment. The only thing I want to add is that for all of the comments that relate to, we can spend this money on something else, we can't legally. Money, the sewer rates go into that sewer fund, that's the only thing that they can be used for. We can't take the money and use it for homeless or build a park. We can't do anything else with it except sewer lines.
Well, and just be very fiscally responsible, because it's coming.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin. And then Tony, I apologize, I can't.
That's fine. It's a possibility.
And then Betsy Wyland. How's Kevin left? Does anybody know if Kevin's here? Nope. Well, then Tony, you're up. Then Betsy, then Rebecca Bornmesser.
And my name is Tony Passioko. Thank you, Mayor Howell, and Aquino Sheldon Konopka, Mr. Gaylord, and Kozlowski. I don't have this thing all rehearsed. I decided to come at the last minute and mostly took notes. I did hear something, I'm kind of a sarcastic guy, and I apologize for that, but there was a reference that we would actually have to hand dig, and I don't know when that killed anybody. You know? If we have to hand dig to make everybody happy.
Are you volunteering?
What's that?
Are you volunteering? Sarcasm.
I live on the Folsom Potato Hill. It's taken three hours to put holes in for trees. I've done all my landscaping. It's hard. Yeah. But, you know, it's not going to kill anybody. Mr. Aquino, you made a point to John about some previous plan that they painstakingly came up with, and now there's a better plan. And what would have happened had we done the first plan? Well, my question to you is, what would have happened if we tore out 199 trees and built a road for a Vactor truck with the city's original plan? And why now can this young man come up with a much better, more economical plan? Why wasn't that thought of in the beginning? From 199 trees, now we're down to 70-some-odd trees. And we don't need to bring in a Sherman tank to work on the project. And frankly, this is really, it's just driving me crazy. There's a personal issue here. Our personal issue is, we live along there. My home values. And yes, last time I was here, I said, "Security, security, security." Check it out. If you have a ringed doorbell, you're getting a notice. Everybody, they're coming right up to our front doors now and stealing and smiling. You're going to give them a, I call it, window shopping road to walk along, go be back here tonight, back here tonight. I remember they showed me some fence, this gate, that was a joke in the first meeting. Well, that's gone, thank God. But come on. I'm one of the homes that would be affected. I'll go out there and help dig if that's what is required. But there is a lot more to this that's really bothering me. And, you know, there's all these alternatives that these folks have worked very hard on. How do we not agree? How in the heck is this happening? Why is this happening? Am I ticked out yet?
Yep, you are.
Okay. Go Yankees.
Now you're really kicked out, bud. Betsy Wyland, Rebecca Bornmesser, and Catherine Demoro.
Can I ask a question real fast? From the last speaker?
Sure.
Not to the speaker, but to Marcus. The question with regards to the 30% grade for the original pipe versus the new pipe, what was your take on that?
Basically, what I was just trying to state is that the existing pipeline is just at a 35% grade. Not that we're saying that replacing a pipeline at a 35% grade would be difficult. It's just not a typical method, not a typical way you would want a sewer grade to be. It's not your typical grade you would want. So that's why in some of the alternatives we look at is flattening it out a little bit to get it more in line with, you know, if you're installing a new pipeline, getting the pipeline to a grade that is more manageable for one, but not because it's less difficult to install. It was just, we have an existing pipeline at 35%, and when we're going to replace that section outside of the backyards, it just happened to be. It also flattened out based on where the alignment was going to be. It wasn't making anything easier or more difficult for us. It was just a reference that it exists at 35%, and we're trying to, and when you move it, it actually modifies the 35 to some other number.
Okay. Thank you. Betsy.
Good evening, council, and thank you for your time this evening. My name is Betsy Wyland, and I represented Habitat 2020 on the working group, the Hinkle Creek Working Group. And Habitat 2020 is a coalition of major environmental organizations, the Sierra Club, the Audubon Society, the California Native Plant Society, Save the American River Association, Friends of the Swains and Hawk, and so on, all of which have, I'm pleased to say, we have members that live here in Folsom. So as this discussion has progressed through the night, and as part of the working group, you know, there's been some thought and some conversation in the back here. And so I'd like to suggest, maybe on the recommendation of the working group, is that the council tonight consider asking Marcus to roll our alternative into the alternatives he's studying, to go and get a new, flush the line with a camera inspection, send the results out to independent experts for review and confirmation of either what we think will be the results from our perspective, or, you know, disprove what we think will be the results. And so we would like to request that of the city council, and I hope I've reflected that correctly. So, and then with just the little bit of time I have, I did have a story to tell you, and I wanted to roll that into our discussion, is that in 1984, the Parks, your Folsom Parks Commission, as well as the neighborhood, determined that this area, this Hinkle Creek nature area, was really unique and precious for its oak woodlands in particular, besides its cultural and other kinds of resources. So it was protected and preserved. In 2006, a proposal was brought forward through the Parks Commission planning process to repurpose a decommissioned firehouse. And the repurposing would be for the Hinkle Creek Nature Center. Now, very quickly, so Parks, and you mentioned Jim Konopka and how resourceful Parks is at getting, pulling money together, went out and got federal, state, and local money, $740,000, to realize this repurposing. So as the building was being designed, et cetera, and Carrie, I know I'm going to really hurry here, just indulge me just a moment here.
Beth, and there's a lot of people in this room that already know that story, so.
Okay. This is a piece, though, I think you won't know or won't remember. So the process demanded an environmental review, and the city contributed $176,000 to this effort. So as part of the environmental review, and it was done under a mitigated negative declaration, it was determined that there would be between an acre and a half to five acres of land impacted by this project. And so there would have to be mitigation for the loss of the resources, the trees. So the mitigated negative declaration determined that we could reduce the impacts, the significant impacts of the project by leaving the nature area intact. In other words, because all of that other area, those 55 acres, would be preserved and protected, the trees would not be touched, it would be left as open space with some trails and some interpretive signage, we could reduce those impacts to less than significant. So here we are, turning around today. It's an issue of public trust. At that time, through the environmental document, the public was promised a nature area left intact to mitigate for what was destroyed for a project. And now here we are today, talking about taking out these trees in this area that was supposed to remain protected as open space, as mitigation. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Betsy.
Thank you, Carrie, for your indulgence.
Rebecca, then Catherine Demoro, then Dupont. I don't know that there's a first name here.
Oh, she said you first, and then Catherine. I didn't, I'm down.
Rebecca, first.
Hello, Madam Mayor and council members. I live on Canyon Rim Drive. I moved in in 2015, and I have heard from my neighbors their concerns about what's happening in Hinkle Creek, and I feel like I'm an outsider looking into the situation. I want to thank the Hinkle Creek Working Group for all of their thoughtful consideration on options. I want to say that I, like John Combs, Combs is not a tree hugger, but I do see the value in what they are putting forward to you in terms of an alternative. My two short points are this, if Seattle, if City of Seattle is doing something like camera, clean camera, I think it's something that a smaller city like City of Folsom should definitely take a look at. And the second thing is, I was a little concerned when I heard Marcus talk about the detectors for the manholes, that he thinks it's 30 minutes.
It depends on how quickly or what the type of blockages there is.
But as a citizen, I'd like to know when or at what point would they be told? I mean, would it be eight hours? Would it be five hours? At what point would the alarm- At what point would the alarm sound before it gets to the point that it's overflowed?
About 30 minutes is what he was saying.
Right. But what I heard is that he thinks it's 30 minutes, not that he was sure it was 30 minutes.
If it happens, basically if it happens at, somebody opens a manhole cover in one of these backyards and drops a big boulder in there at 5:30 at night, when you're cooking dinner, or somebody else is running their dishwasher, or somebody else is taking a shower, those are high-flow periods, that overflow would happen very quickly. If it's the middle of the day, when nobody's at home, nobody's flushing toilets, nobody's taking showers, no one's washing dishes, it would take longer.
Those are my two comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Then DuPont, then Kelly Cohen.
Good evening, council, and thank you for giving us the forum, as you did last year. We appreciate being heard. I am almost 40 years a Folsom resident, and I'm also a life member of the Sierra Club, so another tree hugger, and I'm also a life member of Wildlife Care. And tonight I want to speak about the animals. We've had a lot of people talk about the trees. I want to talk about the animals, because they're sentient beings like us. They suffer. I don't know if trees suffer or not. We suffer when we lose them. But the animals suffer. And whenever we mess with the environment, we damage them parabolically. When I first moved into American River Canyon, the area that's now occupied by the very expensive homes in a group encircled by Waterview, that didn't exist. There was a hill there, a very steep hill. I would have called it a mountain, except it's a little too small. And at that time, there were coyotes that would go up to the top of that and sing every night. There were also great horned owls and a much greater variety of animals than I see now. When they tore down, they leveled that entire mountain to make that space to build those homes on. And the area behind that and below that is the nature area. And so whatever animals could move down into there and are there today. In 1995, I moved from one part of American River Canyon to where I live now, which is right on the rim. In fact, I have one of the manholes in my backyard. And for almost 20 years, I have had no back fence. And I just share, the deer, everything, they all come into my yard. So I have a greater awareness of what's out there and what's around and what's surviving. After we did the experiment with the goats last year, there was tremendous lessening of animal populations. I saw it in a way that you might see as beneficial. For the first time in many years, I had buckets of plums and nectarines, because the animals that used to come steal them are dead. They had no place to go. When the blackberries were gone, they had no shelter from neighborhood dogs or anything else that might be coming in after them. I see the road as something very like that. You put in a road, it seems to be getting narrower and smaller, and it's gonna be covered with dirt and grass, and that's gonna be visually much more attractive, but it will still be an access point. And after the goats went through, 700 goats just took all the vegetation down to below the land level. And it's just now coming back, a few blackberries, but there used to be huge blackberry tangles there for the animals to hide in. And I forget where I was going for that, I'm sorry.
You're about out of time.
Okay. Anyway, if you do put a road in, after the goats went through, there were a lot more people walking back there. It was easier to walk without the blackberries. And they brought their dogs. And the good people brought their dogs on leashes. There were quite a few who brought dogs that were not leashed. The dogs would see a flock of turkeys and just go right for them. And people would say, "Oh, my dog is so gentle, he would never hurt those turkeys." And I'm saying, "Did you see the feathers flying? Didn't kill any of them, but what if your kid was in a playground and a dog rushed in and pushed the kid down and jumped on him, but didn't hurt the kid? Kid wasn't killed, the kid wasn't hurt. Would you be happy about that?" I mean, let's think about animals as if they were humans. So I'm saying if we do put in some kind of road there, make it as minimal and as small as possible, and maybe post it very well. No unleashed dogs.
Thanks.
Thank you.
DuPont, Kelly Cohen. Jennifer Lane, is the DuPont person still here?
Good evening, council. I have a question for Marcus. If you put in a six-foot road, which was something you're proposing, thinking about, you said perhaps we can get it down to six feet, how much of a road do you have to put in to build that six-foot road?
Well, the six-foot width is for the maintenance access path, and that would be the upper limit. So we wouldn't be going down to a six-foot maintenance access path. We would consider a four- to six-foot wide maintenance access path. And if all we were doing was installing that four- to six-foot wide maintenance access path, there's a potential that on either side, because you have to stabilize the upslope so it doesn't fall over, and then you have to stabilize the downslope so that it doesn't slough away, that could range in the total of 12 feet. But it's not necessarily cutting into the hillside, if, as we discussed with John and others, that at certain areas, we would have the opportunity to install a retaining wall, small retaining walls, you know, roughly three feet tall, that you would see in your backyard. If that were the case, you can save on that potential 12- to 14-foot overall width. And then on the downslope side, there are areas that if you can save on the upslope, you may have the opportunity to save on the downslope, because you might be able to shift your maintenance access path over to realize more savings on the downslope from installing the retaining wall. So a lot of that, we would have to work out actually in the field, once the particular contractor was there, to say, "Okay, here is what we're trying to do. In these sections from A to B, or five, eight, nine, and 10, how would you go about doing that to minimize that width of disturbance?"
Okay. But in your total destruction of building that 12-foot to possibly four-foot, depending on what area it is, how much land are you destroying in that process?
That would be the four to 12 feet. So up to, so maybe 14 feet, if.
14 feet of land and tree destruction to get that six-foot to four-foot road.
In some cases, in some areas, yes. In other areas, it may not be.
Well, I mean, you've got to get the vehicles there. So how much are you destroying to get the vehicles to a four-foot section?
Well, again, if it's the typical construction access methodology, where you come in and you have to put a flat road down, to use conventional methods, that could be, as was pointed out in one of the slides, you know, maybe 20 feet wide. But that's to install the sewer pipeline. Now, if all we were doing was just putting...
Install the tire?
That's correct, to install the pipeline. Now, if all we were doing is looking at installing just a maintenance access road, or path, sorry, a maintenance access path, that would be a different discussion, because right now, we wouldn't recommend just installing a maintenance access path if we didn't have anything to physically get to.
Right.
And so...
Well, that's why we would like you to look at some alternatives that we've come up with, and open your mind up to that, because a 20-foot path of destruction in a nature area that big is huge. It really is. It's much more than they're presenting it to be, when they're destroying 20 feet to get into, to put in these things. It's ridiculous. I urge all of you to walk this. I walk it 300 times a year. I go, I live in that neighborhood, I love it, it's peaceful, I pay taxes here. Please represent our neighborhood. I've paid taxes here for 25 years. I'm part of that 24 million you're getting. Please, look at that and think what 20 feet of destruction's gonna do to that beautiful nature trail. Thank you.
Thanks. Kelly Cohen. Kelly Cohen, Jennifer Lane, Glenn Holstein, and Stephen Nix. Is Kelly Cohen still here?
Good evening. In the 35 years that Hinkle Creek Nature Area has existed, and while the Folsom and Eastern County area has seen increased development and loss of open space, the habitat of Hinkle Creek Nature Area has enjoyed the opportunity to further mature undisturbed and provide habitat and food essential to wildlife and reproduction for healthy numbers of a greater diversity of wildlife and vegetation. The multi-layered vegetative cover provides hiding and resting spaces for wildlife, both from predators and from human disturbance. The city's preferred alternative would remove and/or damageingly impact the roots of many mature oak trees to clear the path for a road. 12 feet is not a path, it's pretty much a road, so that's why I'm calling it a road, and with it, the biological and functional value they provide. This includes the exchange of carbon dioxide for oxygen, which humankind cannot afford to destroy. Looking at a satellite image of the larger area surrounding the nature area, one can see, relative to the greater area, a large contiguous swath of habitat extending from the river inland through Hinkle Creek. It appears that thoughtful planning has resulted in this highly functional contiguous habitat that functions both as a peaceful place where residents can relax, de-stress, and enjoy, and I just lost my place for a moment, a leisurely walk through the nature area, and where children can explore and learn about the natural world right in their city, and where the natural habitat, wildlife, and foliage can flourish. A road, a road would change the character of this nature area and the public's experience. Tree and vegetative loss mitigation would take many years to approach today's ecological value. Disturbed open spaces invite weeds, introduced plant species, that disrupt the ecosystem by displacing native plants that particular birds and insects may depend on, such as the, just blanked, the pipe vine swallowtail and the pipe vine, swallowtail butterfly. They're very dependent upon each other, and you can't have one without the other. Extremely important, too, is its function as a wildlife corridor, critical for wildlife dispersal and genetic exchange. Animals help some plants disperse and exchange their genes as well. This is not an overstatement. Without genetic diversity, diseases proliferate and populations ultimately crash, and this is why humans don't inbreed. It is important not to undo this excellent example of retaining quality habitat for wildlife while the city grows. I would like to ask the city council where they are in the CEQA process. I don't understand how CEQA is 70 to 75% completed. As you know, CEQA requires an environmental study be conducted and directs that the least environmentally damaging alternative be selected. Alternative one, the camera inspection, clean, and camera monitoring, is the lead po, at least damaging, for this project. Why extract my teeth if just better cleaning will do? A mitigated net deck in my assessment, based on the project impacts, would not be sufficient. I request the council consider preparing an EIR, because protecting Hinkle Creek Nature Area has value that warrants extra cost to be the least damaging as possible. Thank you.
Thanks. Jennifer Lane, Glenn Holstein, and Stephen Nix.
Good evening, council. Long night. So I want to bring something up, the speaker before this last speaker that was talking to Marcus. I was told back there that the width of this nature area is 300 feet, and if a road is gonna take up 16, 20, it's kind of a lot. And I want to add to the last speaker, because I don't have much to say here, but to wrap it up, is that the swallowtail butterfly and the vine is missing from the enhancement project in Lake Natama. When they made that trail and put pavement on it, they lost the vines. So just want heads up on that. As a city government, we need to always respect the effort and energy our citizens put into projects that make this city better, whether or not we all agree with the city government standard. Just think about how many residents give up their time to serve this community, such as on Community Service Day. This Hinkle Creek neighborhood has invested nearly five years of their lives to maintain Folsom's motto, "Distinctive by nature." After all, this nature area has been challenged before, and a past council and senator chose to save the trees and this area for the preservation of nature for friends and families. Every neighborhood has special needs, just as children do. But this neighborhood holds the key to a nature preserve. Without the trees and with a road, that nature is compromised. Thanks again for your time tonight.
Good evening, council. I'm a plant ecologist, not an engineer, but we have a term for responding to new and better information. It's called adaptive management. I'm out here tonight in Folsom from Davis, because I was fortunate enough that local people showed me this hidden gem that you have here at the Hinkle Creek Nature Area. When I saw it, I was amazed. There is virtually every kind of habitat in the Central Valley and in the Sierra Nevada foothills in one tiny little area, which is truly amazing. I mean, if you wanted to advertise this as a regional destination for folks, you could do that, and they'd come. Or you can keep it here as a hidden gem for the local people that love it so much.
Please don't tell anybody.
What's that?
Please don't tell anybody.
But you know, what a wonderful place to teach the children of Folsom about nature. It's just awesome, because it's full of masterpieces. They're masterpieces of natural history, just like the Haagen Museum down in Stockton is full of masterpieces of human history. And I really hope that the City of Folsom will take the same kind of care and stewardship with the masterpieces in your charge that Stockton does down at the Haagen Museum. Thank you very much.
I want to say I respect you, and I'm appreciative of what you do for our city. So my name is Stephen Nix. I live about two minutes' walk from the Hinkle Creek Trailhead. I have lived here for, I don't know, 15 years, something like that. I am an authority on native plants of Sacramento Valley. Basically what that means is, if you point at a plant, I can tell you what it is, hundreds of plants, and I can tell you if you can eat it, or if you can use it for tools or whatever. I have a long history with the Coast Mewak people and with the Pomo tribe. I am also an authority on all sorts of different primitive living skills, they're called, and the preservation of those skills. Because of the knowledge that I have, I've been sought out by many groups, including Folsom, the City of Folsom. I've done, I've been on your Parks and Rec calendar before doing walks. I was also the one who, with Ken Menzer, the late Ken Menzer, great guy. He and I wrote the walking path information for the Hinkle Creek Trail. I was the author, or one of the authors. I have done hundreds of walks that represent probably thousands of, probably a couple thousand or so people that have walked that trail, and I've taught them all about the plants and the animals, the nature, what the natives did there, et cetera. Coincidentally, it was kind of funny, the second man who spoke tonight, he was a... Coincidentally, it was kind of funny, the second man who spoke tonight, he was a -- he mentioned Sierra National Construction. I used to work for them. I actually have a background in underground construction. I might have been, actually, if I stayed on my career path, I might have been Marcus right now. So I have empathy, and I get the need for good infrastructure. At the same time, from a plant guy's perspective, in the last minute I have here, I just want to share three things with you. One, I want you to take into consideration the detriment that removing trees would have to the overall magic of the place. Because it rests in this ravine, and the trees are outlining, you know, the whole area, the groups that I've taken through there, I've heard them say countless times that they feel like, "I feel like I'm not in this city. I feel like I'm in, you know, out in the middle of nowhere," because it's very contained. Second thing is the grinding mortars, the history of the native peoples there. I think about the movie Up, how he has this house, and then the city all comes into it, right? Whittling away at that area will decrease the value of that wonderful spot. And finally, you know, this whole distinctive by nature thing, I just feel like we, as the city of Folsom, has something special here, and we should fight to not drive the woodpeckers away and keep the -- keep it wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of Mr. Combs or of staff? Because that is the end of our public speakers.
I have one question for Marcus. Marcus, the design work that's being done right now is based on the direction that came from the council in June of 2017. So if, for example, Councilmember Sheldon, you know, was talking about continuing to get bids, and if you were to ask for -- if you were to consider the idea of keeping something in someone's backyard but replacing the pipe, does the design work that you've had done now cover that? Or does that mean you have to go back to the design firm and ask them to then do that?
It would not cover moving the pipeline into the backyard, so that would require two changes. One, to the design itself, and environmental review design, because that portion in that area was not included in biological assessments or anything of that nature. So that would then require additional work to be done outside of the current scope, and I would venture to guess, or in the $230,000, $250,000 range, to do the redesign, do the reevaluation, because it comes with additional surveys, additional biological assessments for environmental purposes. It covers surveying, you know, you name it, in terms of design work and environmental work, that is what would be required. So a lot of the permitting and documentation, we haven't asked for any permits or submitted anything for permits, but we'd have to change all the documentation that we have to date to include certain areas, and then you also have to exclude the area that you've already done work on as well. So it's not just as simple, it's just we just add this, but you got to add that portion and then exclude the other areas.
Marcus, let me ask you a question, then. Are you telling me that the plan and the finished design is the manholes are outside the backyard, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Why would we want to put them back in there? I'm saying, finish the contract that we got and pay them no more money, and then have the ability to go for bid and find out what the cost is.
Yeah, the only reason -- sorry. The only reason I bring it up is just because that's additional alternatives that were discussed and brought forward by the working group as an alternative and something for city council to consider.
So, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I don't -- I didn't watch the webcast from the last meeting. I thought the direction was proceed with the planning stages of your recommendation, but work with the Hinkle Creek group to figure out alternatives, which is what this whole thing was about, right? Which is why it's here today. Two questions to that. Is it, you're suggesting it's about another quarter million dollars to go back to the drawing board with even the replace in -- repair in place option?
In the backyards, yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then I just want to make sure I understood that correctly. What's the cost of the monitoring system you're recommending for the manholes estimate?
Let's see, Greg? Can you come up to the podium, please? So this is Greg Beletti, our wastewater collection supervisor. They have purchased these before, so he'll know, because there's, you know, just the cost of the actual device itself, and then there's a monthly monitoring cost. So I'll let Greg answer this one.
Okay. They roughly cost about $5,000. That's for the actual unit, the antenna that someone built up, talked about earlier. And then there's a monthly fee that's broken now, and you can buy a monthly, I think it's $30 roughly, it's kind of like a SIM card for a phone, even though it's a satellite, or it's a yearly fee that they work out. I think it's around $1,500. So that's kind of the, about $60, $6,500 total per manhole.
Okay. So times, so we're looking at about $100,000-ish with service for the install and the first year of service, about? Is it 11 manholes?
Yeah, it's 11 manholes, or?
How many manholes?
11.
There's 11, yeah, so roughly.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, thanks, Greg.
Well, yeah, I hate to keep harping on this, Marcus, I'm not picking on you, but why would we go $770,000 and stop?
Councilmember Sheldon, I am not recommending that we stop where we are. I, my approach to, until this date, was to proceed as, you know, the direction that was provided at the June meeting, as also discussed during that meeting, was, okay, work with the working group, right? And, you know, if there was something potentially different, and you've heard their options as being potentially different, tonight, before we finalize all of our information, I wanted to get, you know, if there was a change in direction, I wanted to know now, and if there's not a change in direction, we will proceed. I am, my, I am not recommending that we change direction, but it is why I'm here tonight to find out from city council exactly what staff needs to do from where we are tonight to some completion of something. And so those are the various--
I'm just not in favor of throwing $77,000 into the trash can and starting over doing anything. Let's finish what we were programmed. If nothing says the alternate that the group has come up with, I don't see it requires any more money, other than a bid process.
It requires a quarter million dollars to go back to the board and give them something to bid on, right?
Well, that's only if we're asked to change from the June 2017 location that were proposed at that time. So if tonight it's, okay, continue along a path, but now evaluate putting the sewer pipeline, keeping it in the backyards and replacing it there, that is an additional cost. That is correct.
Why would we do that now? If the plan, and then see what the cost is.
I don't, I only speak for myself. I don't want to waste any more money on it. I feel like this is not the same area, and when I look at that distinctive by nature slogan that we pitch daily, this is something to me. I'd rather see the alternative one cleaned, monitored, and appropriately checked and maintained, and keep its status quo as is. I don't want to see--
Come on, people, we're not going to do that.
That would be the motion I would put forward, because I don't want to spend another couple hundred grand. I don't want to spend another two years. I don't want to spend their time on this thing further.
But you're willing to throw $77,000 right in the -- $700,000.
That $700,000 was down the drain two years ago, because the first plan that was provided never incorporated having it in the neighbor's backyard, which would have mitigated half the trees right on the spot. That was the big issue. So I agree with you. I don't want to just throw it away, but in my own opinion, at this point, that was never an option to me as a council member at that point. That's why we directed staff to work with the Hinkle Creek group to find other methods to save the trees. I mean, that's just it.
So I was just going to say that this conversation has been kind of entertaining and crazy, and it's strange and unique in that kind of everybody's right. And in this particular instance, Councilmember Sheldon, you're 100% right. Putting $770,000 behind us is a tough decision to make, very tough. Pressing ahead with a project that we don't all necessarily believe in, also very hard decision to make. The, you know, as far as the comments that have been made tonight, you know, to the extent that, you know, it's been recommended a couple of times that we find an impartial outsider, there's a hilarious anecdote that I always forget how to tell exactly, but it's effectively, how do you know that somebody's an expert? They're from out of town? We have experts on our staff. We have experts that we have hired to do this. They don't, they can be right and also not be the thing that you agree with, okay? You can be right, and they may not agree with you. So that's why we have these debates. So that's why I say it's an insane conversation, because everybody's right in one way or another. For my money, and to the extent that it sways anybody's opinion, I, and I'm saying this thinking to myself that I would never want to use the city of Seattle as a model for our operations in a million years, because the thing that you've suggested, John particularly, about, you know, ongoing monitoring, cleaning, all that stuff, and using Seattle as the example, their model is something that people commonly just refer to as run to fail, right? They go until it's so bad that they can't, can't not fix it, right? And I would never suggest to Marcus that that be the plan that we put into our SSM P and use as a standard model, but we also have this one really infuriating 1,000-foot piece of pipe that's in people's backyards, on a weird slope, in a really pristine-ish nature area that is unique even within the context of Folsom. So I would be okay with using the sort of Marcus's plan as the backup. If we have an overflow in the future, we don't discuss this anymore. Get some, get the, get the path in there, get the pipes replaced. In the meantime, though, run this thing out for a while longer, the way that it is, taking good care of it.
Is that a motion?
That would be my motion.
I'd second it. Anybody else have any other questions? So basically, what you're suggesting is that we abandon the existing design and clean and inspect the pipe?
I'm saying that we--
Please, we agreed, we weren't going to do that.
Let me restate for clarity. We take the existing design, which is a good one, and a good resolution to a poorly designed existing system, okay, that has problems. We have it, we paid for it, we put that binder on the shelf, we keep it for the day when we have no choice but to do this work.
And the day that we have no choice but to do this work means it's, we're paying a fine because we got a spill, and we're doing it as an emergency project?
It's being monitored, so if there's, if, you know, in Marcus's assessment, and sorry, I didn't mean to jump in, but if something comes up where it's like, hey, this is, this is becoming a habitual issue, or it's, you know, we can see that it needs to be done at that point, then you go back to what Councilmember Kozlowski is suggesting. You have this plan in place, and that's, that's, this isn't the same area as every other area. And I think even just looking at the initial, the initial assessments prior, when we look at what your team did, and there's nothing at fault, it's just it wasn't done to what we've learned now on what could be, could be done to mitigate the tree loss. So that's why I fully support that idea as well. I'm not, I'm not suggesting we lower our standards or do things that, you know, jeopardize the integrity of our infrastructure. I am suggesting that this is a gem that needs to be treated like a gem, and that's the difference here. And it's not throwing away money. It's an investment. We've done the work, it's there. We lean on it when we need it.
Well, I want to, the only thing I say, I want it finished. You can put it on the shelf. I have no problem with that.
Option one's done.
But I don't want to, I don't pay out anybody $700,000 and say, okay, we changed our mind. Uh-uh, I'm not that easy. I assume that $700,000, we're already, that says, you got to finish your contract. Here 92%, finish at 8%, and then put it on the shelf and do what--
That option's done, except for the changes in CEQA, right?
So there's--
Your first option?
Yes, there's, for the first option.
Correct.
Then, you mean the first option, as in presented by--
Your recommendations prior that you've paid for with the $700,000, the only difference is at this point would be, A, going back to redo the pipe, as replace and repair where it lies, and there's some changes in CEQA, correct?
Yes, there are changes in CEQA.
Right, so, so if and when we need to implement that plan, we could make the CEQA changes at that point, so that we know what CEQA is at that point, so we don't make a series of changes to it.
That is correct, and I would just point out, though, that if, if and when that time came, under this alternative, you know, with CEQA, you're not going to just pull the plans off the shelf, go through CEQA and build it the week after you have the issue. It will take whatever course of time it's going to take to go through the appropriate CEQA process, and then touching up the design and the specs because of dates and possible changes to, you know, specs in the industry. But yes, it, it, it would be possible to physically have something on the shelf. Now, you wouldn't be able to just take it off, dust it off, and then say, okay, we want to advertise this project next week.
Yeah, and I, my eyes are completely open. The, the reality is, is that if we do it now, and your assessment is accurate, and it costs $2.4 million to finish this work to the end of the road, if we put it on the shelf for five years, it's a $3 million project, and if we wait 10, it's a $5 million project. So we're going to pay a lot to fix that pipe at some point. I'm just suggesting that now's not the time when we absolutely have to. That's it.
Is there a motion?
He already motioned, and I've seconded the motion.
Yeah.
And Madam Mayor, allow me to just make sure I understand the council's direction, since that's what's being asked on the agenda. So we will proceed to finish from the 90% completion to 100% completion of the design that staff has been undertaking since 2017. And we will also proceed with CEQA, so that the council can actually bliss it off, the selected project, since we wouldn't necessarily know which one until the CEQA process is done, and then put that on the shelf.
No.
I, my motion, unless there is something that would be destructive to the work that's been done so far, or a contractual obligation that we can't get out of, is to take the project, put it on the shelf, as is.
Right now, 90% completion.
Add monitoring to the manholes, and then clean and inspect those pipes on a regular basis.
That's what I would second. Any more questions?
I'm going to, I'm going to try. We accept amendment that we finished, that they finished the contract.
Here's the issue with that.
That was incorporated into what I said. If we have a contractual obligation that we need to complete, let's do that. But at the point that we can put this thing on the shelf, put it on the shelf. Don't go any further than that.
Sorry, and the city attorney probably can correct me if I'm incorrect, but we are under no obligation to finish the design and pay the consultant for any remaining balance of work not completed to date. So I just want to make that clear, just in case anybody wondered if we are under any obligation, and we are currently not under any obligation to pay for anything potentially after tonight's meeting.
And if we, if we decided to shelf this, it wouldn't make any, it would make no sense to finish that project or process instead of just pick it up where we left when we decide to do this at some point.
You don't simply just pick up where you left off when--
There's, I mean, that's really, it's layman's terms, obviously, but I'm just saying--
Well, I'm talking about from engineer's terms. You don't just pick up where you left off.
So if, if you're asking me what I think, Councilmember Gaylord, if that's the direction that this ends up going, which is just to stop, I would not want to put any more effort on either staff's time nor a consultant's time to finish a design, which in four years, eight years, 10 years, whenever this comes up, one, the engineer who stamped them may not even be working for that particular company or working anymore. So there'd be some expended effort, in my opinion, that would not be needed to finish the design. If you're asking to just cut it now, then I would not pursue working on the design anymore with the engineer, with the consultant, or on the CEQA analysis, or any of the documentation that's associated with the remainder of this project.
That's what I meant.
I don't think it would be a worthy investment of that money that we have not spent, have spent, spent to date.
Sorry, but for the third time, can you please restate your motion?
Please suspend any work going forward on design of a sewer replacement in this area. Please add to the manholes monitoring equipment so that we know if there's a spill and we have early warning. And please maintain, in the best way possible, the system as it exists.
And I second that motion. Bernie, do you have any more, do you have any more questions?
And this is not something I'm going to be, going to be able to support, and I'm going to say why. We know this pipeline is in bad shape. This pipeline should have been replaced two years ago. It's already, we've already had spills in this line. We know that our access is limited because it never should have been put in backyards in the first place. It's a stubs, a substandard diameter, needs to be at least eight inches, it's only six. This is a, an accident waiting to happen, and we know with changes in the State Water Quality Control Board that minimum fine is going to be $10,000 a day. We have discussed this to death in televised meetings and all over social media. We are going to get absolutely no sympathy from the State Water Quality or the Regional Water Quality Control Board when this line fails, and I believe it will, so I cannot support this.
Minimally and less intrusive.
I'm, I'm sorry, we're not gonna, we're not going to be yelling from the audience. I don't know where this is going. It's my opinion, I'm a licensed engineer, I'm entitled to have it, so, you know, we'll see, we'll see where it goes. Any other comments?
No.
Okay, call the question.
Council, Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Aquino?
No.
Gaylord?
Hundred percent, yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Hal?
No. Okay. We're going to take five minutes before we start our utility, can somebody make a motion to waive the 10/30 rule?
I'll move to waive the 10/30 rule.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes, 10/30 rule.
Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Hal?
Yes.
[inaudible]
And our next item is Item 8B, Resolution 10337, Resolution authorizing issuance of Prop. 218 Notice for, excuse me, Proposed Five-Year Rate Adjustments for Solid Wastewater and Wastewater Utilities. Welcome back, Marcus.
I'm just going to lead off with a few remarks if I could before our staff step up. As you know, the City Council hosted a workshop on this item, Utility Rate Studies, at its last meeting. That meeting was devoted to the council and anyone else interested, learning about the proposed rate increases and getting questions answered. The council took no action as we wanted to be educational for all of you and for the community. Today, we return to you with an action item requesting direction as to whether or not to move forward with the process required by Proposition 218 to raise water, wastewater, and solid waste rates in Folsom. Proposition 218, passed in 1996, requires certain procedures to be followed when a government agency proposes to increase water, wastewater, and solid waste collection fees. These procedures include mailing information regarding the proposed fee to every property owner in Folsom, holding a hearing at least 45 days after that mailing, and rejecting the proposed increases if written protests are presented by a majority of the property owners. And by written protests, I'm meaning old-fashioned snail mail, you actually write something down and, and mail it in or, or hand-deliver it during, during the meeting.
Lynn, can I just clarify one thing? I think you said that we had to hold another hearing 45 days after the notice goes out.
There will be, yeah, there'll be a hearing at the conclusion of the 45-day period. This is not a public hearing, and 45 days after that, it will be a public hearing, so we will be returning at that point. We will do each of those things, if that is the direction of the council, of the commission, at the conclusion of this item. As you likely know, we have been pushing out lots of information to our residents on this issue through our website, our electronic newsletters, social media, including a Facebook Live session featuring me that I'm sure you all tuned in on, it was fascinating. Many utility commission discussions going back over two years, and other presentations. We also plan to host a community open house on November 6th from 5:30 to 7:00, right next door in the community center, for, in case ratepayers have questions once they receive that mailer. As far as specific items that came up at this council's workshop, what I've heard from some of you since then, and what I've seen on social media, I thought I'd briefly touch on a few points of clarification that will then be provided in more depth by our staff experts. The first question I kind of keep consistently hearing is, are we proposing to raise fees due to the development south of 50? The answer is no. The two are actually not related at all. Residents and property owners south of 50 pay rates just as those north of 50 do, with south of 50 residents and property owners paying a special, special surcharge of approximately $9 a month. Measure W required that the Folsom Plan area has its own source of water that is not paid for by north of 50 residents, and it does. We are in full compliance of Measure W. Are we raising rates to pay for other things? No, we are not, and we actually cannot. Again, due to Proposition 218, the rates must not exceed the cost to provide the service. What you're going to talk about today are the revenues required to provide the cost of service per Proposition 218. The rates are the costs, and the costs are the rates, they're one in the same. Are we raising residential rates to benefit or subsidize commercial customers? Absolutely not. The revenue streams are kept very separate on the residential and commercial sides, and they must be, again, due to Proposition 218. So why are we proposing to raise rates? Due to many, many circumstances beyond our control, quite frankly, including a series of hard-hitting, unfunded state mandates, and also the international marketplace. We are currently working to provide a long list of services, and we're working with rates that were frankly approved many, many years ago, and it just doesn't pencil out any longer. As I said to you at the last meeting, we haven't raised commercial solid waste rates since 2003, residential solid waste rates since 2004, when we actually decreased them, wastewater rates since 2008, and water rates since 2013. Our rates are currently among the very lowest region-wide. We actually haven't even remotely kept up, kept up with the Consumer Price Index, and even the proposed rates would still be fairly low comparatively, and you'll see charts to that effect. What happens if we do nothing? Because there's always the do-nothing approach, and I'm sure a lot of people would be delighted to have a do-nothing approach. Well, we can't keep up with costs any longer without burning through our reserves for these functions. Once we burn through the reserves, which will be in the very near term, then we will have to start digging into our general fund to pay for these mandated services. That is something we certainly can do, but something else we'll have to give, obviously. So that means we now be impacting things the general fund pays for, like police and fire services, and parks, and recreation programs, and street maintenance. I heard that we're going to have to start recycling organic waste soon in the next few years, and that you're going to have to come back to us and increase the rates then. Why don't you just wait and do that at the same time instead of jumping in and doing the rates now? It is true that there is legislation, again, another state mandate, that is going to mandate that organics recycling in Folsom and statewide. That's going to require an incredible amount of public education, changes in our infrastructure, and a significant change in our operation. That all costs money, and yes, we're going to have to come back to you, and we'll probably have another rate increase because I don't know how we pay for it otherwise. We could definitely wait to raise rates until then, but the short answer is that if we did that, we drain our reserves and have to turn to the general fund to provide the mandated services in the meantime. Another question's come up very consistently is, why didn't we raise rates all along instead of playing catch-up now? I think people are feeling like you're dumping this amount in our lap, why did you wait all these years? Well, we didn't raise rates for many years because much of that time period was either pre-recession, right in the middle of the Great Recession, or recovering from the Great Recession, and it was the clear direction from the council and the community that it wasn't the right thing to do when so many people were losing their jobs and even their homes. On the water side of things, there was the added element of drought. During the drought, it didn't feel appropriate to raise water rates or implement a drought surcharge, which a lot of jurisdictions in the regions did, just when we were trying to get people to conserve. I'm also commonly hearing, you know, from some of the council members and also out in the community, I don't use all of the utility services Folsom provides. Why should I have to subsidize others in doing so? Well, the short answer is that you're generally not subsidizing others. You might use less of one thing than your neighbor but more of another thing. You might not use services one year, but the next year or over time, you might use more. Government needs to make sure that key mandated services are available to all people at the cost it takes to provide to everyone. And because we provide to all, there are some pretty significant economies of scale that occur when those citywide numbers that help all of us cost-wise, from those citywide numbers that help us all cost-wise. I've heard people say, I'm on a fixed income, this is very hard on me, and, and I don't approve. We know this is very hard for some in our community, we wish it could be avoided. I don't want to be the city manager, I'm sure the city council doesn't want to be the city council that raises rates. Please know that we have some rates for low-income individuals and those in mobile home communities, and those rates will still be available, but they will also rise, unfortunately. On the solid waste side of things, we provide solid waste services as a bundle, and the question came up at the council workshop that at least one of you wanted a cost-benefit analysis of the various solid waste services we provide versus not providing them. For those of you who maybe aren't familiar with Folsom solid waste services, we provide them as a bundle, and it includes garbage recycling and green waste pickup, one extra recycling cart if requested, one extra green waste cart if requested, up to three curbside bulky waste pickups per year, and unlimited hazardous material and electronic pickups, electronic waste pickups. The city's utility commission, which has already vetted all of these rates that you're going to talk about tonight, recommended on the water, the wastewater and the solid waste side, that in considering rate increases, we keep service levels the same. To date, we received no direction from the commission or the city council to do otherwise. That said, if the council wanted to unbundle these solid waste services and, for example, no longer provide one or several of them as part of the bundle, it is unfortunately very challenging to try to split up those service costs and tell you what costs what. Our challenge is that our employees and trucks are shared across all solid waste services, so it's not like positions or vehicles disappear and cost savings emerge if we pull those services out. Also, if we start charging customers outside the bundle for those services, we don't know how many of them will pay that extra fee for those services, it will be less than those participating now, that much is certain. We also don't know how many people will comply with proper bulky waste or hazmat disposal, for example, if it is no longer provided to them in the bundle. This leads to more blight and more costs, both of which are borne by the whole community. In the end, that probably isn't a savings dollar-wise or otherwise. But I really do want to answer and respect this question as best we can. Our staff is going to share participation levels and our best guesses at cost for these services in this presentation. I will say that we've determined that if we stopped bulky waste pickups and hazmat pickups- We know this is very hard for some in our community. We wish it could be avoided. I don't want to be the city manager. I'm sure the city council doesn't want to be the city council that raises rates. Please know that we have some rates for low-income individuals and those in mobile home communities, and those rates will still be available, but they will also rise, unfortunately. On the solid waste side of things, we provide solid waste services as a bundle, and the question came up at the council workshop that at least one of you wanted a cost-benefit analysis of the various solid waste services we provide versus not providing them. For those of you who maybe aren't familiar with Folsom Solid Waste Services, we provide them as a bundle, and it includes garbage recycling and green waste pickup, one extra recycling cart if requested, one extra green waste cart if requested, up to three curbside bulky waste pickups per year, and unlimited hazardous material and electronic pickups, electronic waste pickups. The city's utility commission, which has already vetted all of these rates that you're going to talk about tonight, recommended on the water, the wastewater and the solid waste side that in considering rate increases, we keep service levels the same. To date, we received no direction from the commission or the city council to do otherwise. That said, if the council wanted to unbundle these solid waste services and, for example, no longer provide one or several of them as part of the bundle, it is unfortunately very challenging to try to split up those service costs and tell you what costs what. Our challenge is that our employees and trucks are shared across all solid waste services, so it's not like positions or vehicles disappear and cost savings emerge if we pull those services out. Also, if we start charging customers outside the bundle for those services, we don't know how many of them will pay that extra fee for those services. It will be less than those participating now, that much is certain. We also don't know how many people will comply with proper bulky waste or hazmat disposal, for example, if it is no longer provided to them in the bundle. This leads to more blight and more costs, both of which are borne by the whole community. In the end, that probably isn't a savings dollar-wise or otherwise. But I really do want to answer and respect this question as best we can. Our staff is going to share participation levels and our best guesses at cost for these services in this presentation. I will say that we've determined that if we stopped bulky waste pickups and hazmat pickups, we could probably bring the proposed rates down by about eighty cents or so per household per month if separating out those services and achieving that eighty cents of savings is desired by the council. Finally, I know that at least one of you has expressed that maybe we don't need to pull off the Band-Aids so quickly in the first few years. Maybe we need to ease into this a bit and smooth out the rates a bit. We gave that some serious thought between the workshop and today's meeting, and we do have scenarios that fit that bill for your consideration tonight. Additionally, we started thinking that we could perhaps reduce and even delay the timing of money to be allocated to the future corporation yard to bring down rates. You'll hear more about that in the presentation as well. The bottom line is that absolutely nothing is set in stone today. We want to share information from you, from our professional experts, and we invite your questions, deliberation, and ultimately, your direction. So with those kind of big-picture comments, I will now turn it over to our excellent staff, starting with Marcus on the water and wastewater side.
Can I just say one thing on that? You unloaded a lot of stuff there, and a lot of those were key issues that, you know, I wanted to go back to. And also, I guess we can go back, but I was hoping that that wouldn't...I don't know how I feel about that. The other thing was, the water and...the title of these workshops, from what I'm hearing, it doesn't suggest to anyone that it's anything of importance at this point. It sounds...it just says "rate study." So I don't know if there's a way that we could, in the title, put "rate study, potential rate increase" in these titles, because it's not catching folks' attention that this is a potential rate increase, unless we tell them if they come out here. But tonight, we have one speaker. But when I see this, I don't see it as, hey, there's a potential rate increase.
Yeah, and, well, first of all, my introductory remarks are merely introductory remarks. I want to set the tone because these are kind of themes I'm hearing. Each of these of our staff members intends to revisit those, so it's not like I just say this and it's done. But I just...it is important to address those concerns. As far as advertising, you know, the workshop or tonight's meeting or going forward, we are trying to be as transparent as possible, talking about it to a lot of audiences. The Prop 218 mailer itself will be crystal clear as to, you know, what ratepayers might expect and how...what the process is for them to react to that. And then we'll do an open house in the middle of that, and then we'll return with a public hearing. So not to mention all the utility commission meetings that came before. So there's...seems like there's a lot of chances to weigh in.
Even in the utility commission meetings, I went back, I spoke with my utility commissioner, and number one, we can't go back to view those meetings. So...but I know that it wasn't dubbed or titled "rate increase, potential rate increase." The mailer that went out last year by accident, or maybe it was early this year, I can't recall. No, it was last year. Yeah, last year. That went out, said "rate increase," and everyone freaked out, right? So I'm just saying, I think it needs to be...
I think that was the actual Prop 218 mail. That was with the former city manager, but my recollection is it went out and it was literally the Prop 218 mailer. Is that...yeah.
That is correct.
Sorry, sorry.
That's what's so exciting about this. Everybody will freak out.
I'd rather give them more ramp-up time to be aware of the situation than just freak out because they got a flyer that says "rate increase." I'd rather all these say "rate increase" as well, "potential rate increase."
It's been in the city's newsletter. It's been on the city's Facebook page. You've posted it all over social media.
So I looked at all those. I actually looked at all those, and none of them say "rate increase."
Roger, let me finish what I'm saying, please. The city has done, in my opinion, a very good job at getting this information out there. The information has been out there, frankly, swirling around since that Prop 218 notice went out a year ago. It's been all over the place. Everybody gets a hard copy of the newsletter, and I don't see that...
Maybe the information is out there, but the title to get into the information...so impression and engagement are way too different things. Impression level, absolutely. The city's impression on this has been massive, but it's still not engaging because it doesn't suggest what the impact is. That's all I'm saying. So if there's a way that we can add that on there going forward, I think it would behoove the residents to understand.
Well, again, what you're deciding tonight is whether to launch the Prop 218 process, and the Prop 218 mailer would be extraordinarily clear as to, you know, it must be per Prop 218, as to what a ratepayer could expect and what their...what the correct process is for protesting that rate structure if they wish to. So that's what Prop 218 does, and that's what we abide by. And yeah, that's what that mailer will do. And hopefully, it won't freak everybody out, because that's what we try not to do. Go for it, Marcus.
All right. Thank you, Elaine, Mayor Howell, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental and Water Resources Director. I think if I've learned one thing tonight, aside from, you know, discussion on Hinkle Creek and rates, is I seem to, in some of my presentations, attract a large audience and then follow up, and they're gone for a following item. So I don't know if that's good or bad, but...
No, I think honestly, in your defense, Marcus, at the last council meeting that we had, I think most of the people that were in the audience were here for that item. And I think it's extremely significant that not a single person spoke during the public comment period, although I did, because we took a break between that item and the next item. I had three or four people that left the building that said, "Good presentation," and it made sense to me.
Oh, thank you.
And they were people that I didn't know, so...
Great. So just real quick, and just to answer the question, if I may, on the naming of information that we put out, to date, we haven't had, and even so far, you know, clear direction in terms of, okay, we will issue a Prop 218 notice, or we will do something that is a rate adjustment. And I think tonight's presentation and the staff report really gets down into, okay, there is a proposed rate adjustment, and we're seeking direction on that tonight. And I think then, from here, the follow-up documentation or labeling that we can put out, we now have something that officially gives us direction that says, yes, there will be a Prop 218 issuance that affects rates for water, wastewater, and solid waste, if that's the outcome tonight. So I think, from my perspective, we can address kind of the naming or the titles of any information we put out. But until tonight, we...all we could call it are studies or results or an analysis because that's all that we have to date. And so I do think that we can help get to, I think, what you were referring to previously, Councilmember Gaylord.
Thank you.
Just to give you a timeline, I'm not going to read all these, but this is the information and the times that either water, wastewater, or solid waste presented, discussed, information related to a rate study. Some of them were just introductions to rate studies, so what we put into it. Some of it covered revenues. Some of it covered expenses. And then probably in the beginning of 2018, on water and wastewater, and Councilmember Kazowski can vouch for this, but we then went into detail, as what you saw similar to the last meeting, was we then broke down, okay, here is what potential scenarios look like and what potential rate adjustments look like. And then we did issue the Prop 218 notice, came back, and then where we've landed as of 7/16 at that utility commission meeting was a recommendation from the utility commission to move the information to city council while, as Elaine mentioned, maintaining the current service level. So that's what we brought forward to the August meeting last month in the public workshop, and then a couple items in between there. In order to help promote the public workshop, we did include a line item on utility bills. So there's a note on the utility bill explaining what the public workshop was going to cover. There's the e-newsletter, the city webpage, social media, and ads in the Folsom Telegraph. And that was all centered to get to the public workshop that we had last meeting. And then when we move forward, as it was mentioned, once the Prop 218 notices, if we go there, are issued and mailed out, then we will have an open house that will specifically address the rate adjustments of whatever may come out after tonight's meeting.
I also think that it's kind of...it's only logical to presume that if a notice is going out in a utility bill, and that if there's an agenda item at the city council meeting, a couple of meetings in a row, and we're talking about utility rates, it's not going to be a tutorial simply on how they're determined. I think it...one must assume that if it's being discussed, that a change is being proposed.
You know what they say about assuming. You have to spell it out. You give that to residents. So I'm just saying.
Thanks for your comment.
And, you know, our Prop 218 notice, if and when it's issued, will identify exactly what a resident and non-residential customer should expect, because we're required to do so. August 27th, just...I won't go into detail, but this...what we covered on the water and wastewater side. Oh, and I forgot to mention that I will be discussing the water and wastewater portion. Marie McKeeth will be discussing the solid waste portion, so she will follow once I'm complete, and hopefully, we'll be able to address the questions that are related to solid waste, as I will not be able to. We discussed, obviously, how we developed the cost-based rates, looking at water and wastewater revenue requirements to meet the cost we're proposing, discussed the rate design for both water and wastewater. There was no action taken at that meeting for any current or future rates. It was a public workshop, so we did not have any action taken. And obviously, we were directed at that meeting to bring this item back to tonight's meeting. That's where we are this evening. Rate adjustments included, and these are not going to be the same for both, for my presentation and Marie's, but they are very similar. Current, future staffing levels, the MOU salary adjustments with Local 39, obviously, you saw a couple weeks ago, working with the other MOUs, just an overall increase in utility costs, chemical costs, equipment costs, material costs, anything that has to do with replacing or fixing anything that we do on a day-to-day basis is included in this. Obviously, the PERS adjustment on the city-side vehicle replacement, so we do have a vehicle replacement fund, so that replaces the aging fleet. We don't have maybe as many high-priced items as a solid waste garbage truck, but as you saw from the last meeting, we...every now and again, we will have a camera van that is a significant price, or a Vector truck. And then a water meter and meter reading replacement fund. So we know that at some point in time, when meters were required to be installed on residential units built after 1991, that those meters will ultimately have to be replaced. And so what we are doing is, when we get to that point, we want to have a fund set aside so we can continue our pay-as-we-go policy as opposed to trying to issue new debt for a mass purchase and installation of water meters and the fixed network equipment that's associated with it. Debt service, as Stacy mentioned earlier, we do have, on the water side, not on the wastewater side, but on the water side, we do have a required debt service payment that we need to make, which is about $2 million. If all goes well in a couple weeks, we may be a little less than $2 million, you know, maybe achieve about $100,000 savings with the new bond issuance. So there is still about a $2 million cost on debt service that we'll have to pay. And then, as we talked about last meeting, capital reinvestment. And for us, it's a little different, not vehicles so much, but actual pipes in the ground, pumps, tanks, et cetera. So our infrastructure on both the water and wastewater side. So escalation factors, these are the escalation factors that were used. I won't read through them all, but you can see they vary, and some, they're relatively close, and others, like for the San Juan purchases, those are actually adjusted to rates and changes that were adopted by San Juan Water District. So we have that information in here as well. We have some projected growth requirements, but that's really more on the revenue side when we look at future revenues. Capital projects, I know this was a discussion at the last meeting, but the capital projects that we looked at in this rate study on the water side, all of these projects listed in this table are for projects north of Highway 50. And I have another slide that I will talk a little bit more about the plan area, but these projects in here are all north of Highway 50.
Councilmember Gaylord, do you have a question?
So if...I know the projects are north of Highway 50, but do you...
Can you turn your mic on? I don't think it's on.
Sir. Thank you. Projects north of Highway 50, physically in north of Highway 50, are they being built or fixed or repaired to support factors going in south of 50?
No.
Not at all?
No.
Okay.
No, and if they are, those funds are being set aside by fees collected for anybody that...
The planning.
...purchases of property in the plan area, house or non-residential. So there's a special set-aside fee for potential upgrades that we may need on the north side of Highway 50, but those aren't currently planned. These are projects that are 10, 12 years down the road.
And I think you explained in the last meeting that that surcharge for water rates south of the freeway are $9 and change a month higher than what people north of the freeway are paying.
In most parts, outside of the Empire Ranch, Broadstone Parkway, the east area, they're about $4, so about $5 higher than that area, and $9.20 higher than anybody else outside of that area.
So, Marcus, because the developers are paying to put in all the initial infrastructure south of 50, and your capital projects at this point are all north of 50, is it accurate to say that actually a portion...south of 50 residents are actually helping to pay for north of 50 infrastructure replacement with these projects?
There probably is a portion of that, and then I do know that finance is also setting aside from the rates collected today of another, I don't want to call it a savings account, but another funding mechanism that would then also help south of 50 projects, but it is only south of 50 fees and rates, I shouldn't say fees, sorry, rates that are covering those south of 50 projects. Is that correct, Stacy?
The last question I had was with regards to Folsom Heights, when and if that project actually comes and goes online, that's being provided by EID, right?
The water, wastewater, and recycled water service is...will be provided by El Dorado Irrigation District. That is correct.
Thank you.
So this is just a list of proposed projects that we looked at in the rate study on the water side. This is a table and a list for those projects on the wastewater side. What we will find is that, you know, the...this line item here after tonight, we may be able to then identify some additional projects, you know, in just typical routine replacement-type projects in areas that we know of within the city. So we would be able to reallocate those funds to address other projects on the wastewater side. Folsom Plan Area, infrastructure, the backbone infrastructure, and then the infrastructure that's built in the subdivision itself are funded and paid for by either the landowner or the developers south of Highway 50. The rates do not include capital reinvestment in the plan area that north of Highway 50 will pay. And as I mentioned, the rates south of Highway 50, not that they have a different rate, but just a portion of what they pay will be set aside for Folsom Plan Area or south of Highway 50 projects at some point in the future. So again, trying to build up that fund for a pay-as-you-go type or types of projects and not having to issue any debt. But as I mentioned last time, that new infrastructure should not have to see anything done significantly, you know, in 10 to 15 years. Now, there may be minor pumps and electrical work that has to be done, but any significant project similar to the ones that we see in these tables should not have to occur within 10 to 15 years.
And I think it's important for people to understand that if you look at, excuse me, the water and wastewater piping north of the freeway, we've got piping in the historic district that's probably pushing 70 or 75 years old.
Yes, that is correct. The water supply is paid...the water supply for the plan area is paid...will be paid through the surcharge once that's adopted as well, so that is covered. The revenues, as I mentioned...
Marcus, is that basically some of that money going toward paying for the repair work on Willow Hill Pipeline?
Not the FPA surcharge. There's a couple of CFDs that have included, and I don't know the numbers, but there's a couple of CFDs that have come to city council. It might be CFD 17, and I don't know if CFD 18...
Which is all south of the freeway.
But, yep, south of Highway 50, and included in that, embedded in those CFDs are costs for the Willow Hill Pipeline. I believe it's CFD 17, but is it 18? Okay, CFD 18, my apologies.
Okay, and so that's...what was the total on that project cost?
I think the total was about 7.6, but I believe there was 5.7 or so in the CFD because 1.9-ish was a grant from the state.
Okay. So basically, that $7 million cost is really, at the end of the day, not being paid for by the people north of the freeway.
Correct. And then there's another, maybe it's CFD 17, that has the 2.8 million roughly, or 1.8 million. There's $180,000 a year from one of the CFDs that comes back for prior expenditures on projects.
Like get the water plant and...
So, no, this was more part of the system optimization review program, some of the design for Willow Hill...
Okay.
...at the initial stages before... -at the initial stages before CFD 18, 17. Thank you, Jim.
So this is all, all of that was before my time? I'm curious, so the Willow, so the kind of trade, if you will, was water fixed from the Willow Glen Pipeline will be supplied to, I think it's like 5,500 acres or square acre feet or whatever, to south of 50 and return to fix the pipe, correct?
Yes, that is one of the, that is one fix, that is correct.
What was, what was the initial, and I actually don't even know if it's a relevant question right now, but what was the initial cost for them, for the developers south of 50 to provide water themselves versus getting it from Folsom? What was that infrastructure cost?
If it was coming from, say, like the Sacramento River?
Wherever they initially thought they'd get it from.
I think with the water and the infrastructure, it was north of 200 million by the time you, and I can get that information, that also was-
Well, you can get that information, but at the end of the day, it's irrelevant.
Well, no, it's not, because, so 200 million, and then, so from the Willow Creek Pipeline or what they're repairing for that trade, it's about 9 million, right?
Correct.
So, okay.
The Willow Hill Pipeline was leaking a significant amount of water, and it had been for a long time when the city did not have the money to fix it. The fact that the city ultimately found a way to fix that pipeline and stop that leakage allowed that total volume of water, that 5,500, 5,600 acre feet, to then qualify as new water.
I'm just curious why there's such a big delta from 200 million to 9 million?
But-
Because if you're fixing a pipeline that's in Folsom as opposed to building a pipeline from the Sacramento River, that's a big cost difference.
Well, no, 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 what I'm saying is-
And, and it's important for you to know that the saving that the city achieved with the 5,600 acre feet could not have been used within the existing city limits.
I know that. What's the value of an acre feet of water?
So are you, so I apologize, Councilmember Gaylord, are you wondering or asking what the cost is of the actual, just the droplet of water from the Sacramento River, not the conveyance that it takes to get here?
No, I think I'm going, I'm chasing down a rabbit hole. I'm trying to understand the negotiation between providing water for the sphere of influence at the time and what the, the value was to the existing residents north of 50 with the aging infrastructure. So my, the delta, I'm saying 200 million minus nine is basically a savings, if you will, that went to that development, which is all fine, because in the future, we're all one Folsom. But I'm just, I'm curious why there wasn't more of an ask to start repairing a lot of these other pipelines for, for that at the time, you know? So like I said, it's probably not even relevant to this, but it's in my mind right now. And then to Mayor Howell's point she brings up, you know, you only have three options to use that water, right? You reserve it, you sell it, or you apply it to another method in the city that's not current rate pays, right? What's the value of that water that we could have sold it instead of giving it out?
No, we couldn't have reserved it. We would have, no, we would have lost the water, right?
So-
Okay, yeah, you would have lost it, you could sell it, or you apply it somewhere else.
To, to transfer or sell the water, if you wanted to look at a range, you could probably look at a range between $150 an acre foot in maybe a normal year where there's transfer capacity through the system, up to $700 or $800 an acre foot in those extremely dry years.
Which we had, so yeah, it's not, okay.
Yeah, which, yep, there were those times. And so if, if you need, or if you'd like me to get more information on the other costs to bring water, the cost of water, I can probably dig that up, but also, it was, my predecessor at the time would have a better understanding of that, but I can definitely find that information.
I'm actually good, I'm just asking questions about it because there's a big difference between it on money-wise, but that's fine.
And then just, just add on to the, that there is also about another $13 million that the landowner, or not the landowners, but, you know, as customers come on board that are paying back for improvements that were paid by those north of 50 for prior treatment plant expansion products, projects that were covered in the debt service, a prior pipeline project basically from Folsom Dam to the city's water treatment plant. And what we will be able to do with that is take that money and reinvest it in redundancy and reliability projects at the water treatment plant without having to go and ask for a new bond issuance of 10 million or 8 million, whatever that future project cost will be. And so, again, we are looking to try to save that 13 million roughly, and as, and it's not all 13 million upfront, it comes in as connections and permits are paid, but we're also then trying to put that aside for projects north of Highway 50.
And Marcus, remind me, that redundant pipeline, that other pipeline that went across Matoma Street into, basically toward my house, was 10, 12 years ago?
The redundant pipeline? I'm trying to think of what project that is.
The pipeline coming from the dam that went to the water treatment plant?
Yes, prob, I want to say 98, 99.
Were you even here?
98, 99.
It was when they had to do all the dynamite work.
I was, if it's the main pipeline from the dam, the raw water pipeline, that would have been 99.
It crossed Randall.
That would have been 1999 roughly.
20 years ago.
Yep, so just a little while before I got here, but yes.
So that's, that's stretching way back for that cost recovery, is my point.
Yes. So this is information that was presented at the last meeting. I won't really go into all the details unless you want me to, but this is what was identified by a rate consultant, and just identifies what the, you know, the proposed residential bills would look like. And again, between January 1st and July 1st, there isn't an actual new adjustment. This is just giving you, and anybody that would want to look at, what would an average residential bill look at, look like, you know, if you were only looking at six months' worth of a rate, because we don't have, you know, by the time this would be implemented, we don't have the first six months of this fiscal year. So this isn't, this isn't a new adjustment in July. This is just what an average residential bill would look like if you had a full 12 months of that rate, or the proposed rate that we have. So they're not two different adjustments, it's just your bill will actually, will look different in January than it will in July, but it's not a new adjustment that goes into place. This is, again, just a breakdown of what the fixed charge versus commodity charges, the non-residential rates, you can see what the monthly fixed charges are present, so nothing in here has changed since the last meeting. Water rate comparison, again, just wanted to provide, you know, anybody that may be watching or listening, just looking at what and how the city compares, not only currently, but after the proposed rate adjustments on water. The wastewater, again, this is all the same information that was presented at the last meeting. This is what the structure looks like in terms of the monthly fixed charge, and that's all we have on the wastewater side for the residential. And then on the non-residential rates, this is what the current breakdown is depending on the type of business that you have. Again, here's the wastewater rate survey. This one's a little different than the water because we do have, and this does include the regional sand charge of $37 a month. So many of our agencies that are contributing, agencies do have relatively similar rates, and then others that may be slightly lower, City Davis, City of Roseville, those that have recycled water systems and recycle, and treatment plants that have recycled water, they, they are able to then shift some of the cost into recycled water. So that's why, you know, the direct, it's a little difficult to compare direct to direct because they are not just a collection system only. And so I did try to identify those that maybe say SASD and SRCSD, or SC, that those are comparable really to the city's-
I'm sorry, Marcus, did you say that does or doesn't, that what's shown on that slide right now, it does or does not include the SRCSD charge?
This does include.
Okay.
Yep.
And I, I just think that's important to clarify because there are rumors out there that we're doing this to pay for the Echo Water Project and-
That is correct.
That is absolutely, positively not true.
South of 50 surcharge, so this goes back to the cost of that water supply for the plan area. Again, nothing's changed from the last meeting to this meeting. Non-residential, this is just like we have in the east area, that we have a residential and a non-residential, one's on a per-unit basis, the other's on a volumetric basis.
Can I just ask one question on this? And I'm just trying to understand it also, like, right now, we have 100 and, how many houses out there right now online?
Of 200?
200.
We have about 250 right now, yeah.
50?
Thank you.
So it's obvious it's going to take a lot for this to build up, and is it, is it per, basically per connection, that's when you start, we start incurring cost on the water, or?
Yep, so once we have this surcharge in place, so right now, the landowners are paying the, the bill, so to say, for that water. And then when we have the surcharge in place, we would convert that surcharge over, then that landowner or developer no longer has that $9.20 for that unit, and then that goes onto the bill of the homeowner. So this is my requested action, and I imagine you'll get the, the stuff from Marie, but I do not have anything further on the water and wastewater discussion, unless there are questions and/or comments.
I have a question about that $2 million debt service. So that's basically our annual payment toward money that we've already borrowed for some capital project. And at what point does that get paid off? What project was it, and when does it get paid off?
I can tell you the project.
2027, is that what I'm hearing?
I don't have the exact, we, that was the one that we had just done the refinancing in, so I think that was another 13 years, about was we had that.
And then when we refi, we're not going to add any length to the term?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
So there was one, I believe, that's in 2028, and then the other, I think, is 2033, I believe, between the, between the two.
Okay.
And what were the projects, Marcus?
So they were treatment plant expansion projects, and mostly, I can't recall if-
Was it actual expansion or upgrades?
Both.
Okay.
I mean, because it went from 25 to 40, and then 40 to 50, so it was expansion and upgrades, you know, for various treatment requirements. The only thing I'm not sure of is if the raw water pipeline from the dam through the prison to the reservoir, or to the city's treatment plant is included in that, but I believe portions of it was, I just don't know if all of it was.
But, but besides that, those projects where we borrowed and we're paying that debt service, the policy of the city has been to pay-as-you-go for capital improvements. I mean, I'm just thinking about somebody who's just, you know, was sitting in the audience for the Hinkle Creek presentation, and they happened to catch, you know, the fourth quarter from 2018, 19, and they're like, well, you got $16 million in reserves, right, which, that's the general fund, and that's different. And then they look at the, the millions of dollars that we had in those capital accounts, but, I mean, we have backlogs of, of infrastructure projects that we could do, right? I mean-
Well, and then, as Stacy mentioned, some of that's timing. So we have actually approved and encumbered projects in fiscal year 18, 19, but when we actually expend the dollars, it won't be until 19 and 20. So like, we had a project that came for a tank improvement project, and we appropriated close to 800, I think $800,000 above what the original cost was. So that 3-point-something million, I don't believe is reflected in the numbers in terms of actual expenditures, but they will hit, you know, so when you get a report maybe in the second quarter of this fiscal year, maybe that's when you see those hits, or the third quarter of this fiscal year.
Yeah, my point is just that it could paint a different picture if you, if you were not here for the whole meeting and the whole discussion, so.
Any other questions? Is Marcus itching to turn it over to Marie?
Not itching, but if there's nothing else for me, I would be glad to turn it over to-
He spent quite enough time at that podium tonight.
Yeah.
It's mature. I'm getting old. Thank you. Oh. Yeah, there's mine. Well, Marie's pulling that up, I have a question for somebody. So if we, if the council decides today to kind of, you know, we decide on some sort of rate increase, and that, those numbers go out in the letter to the residents, right? Okay. And I wonder if we get all this kind of feedback, does the council have the ability to then deviate what was in the letter? Can you only go down, but you couldn't go up? Or, or once you send those out, it's either yes, we're doing it, or no, or not, you can't make any changes?
So once, once we put it out, we, the council has the ability to reduce, but not increase? Does that answer your question? Okay.
And I think it's also important for us to understand that regardless of what ends up going out, assuming a Prop 218 notice goes out, say we raise everything by 5%, I'm just picking numbers out of the sky. If a year from now, or a year and a half from now, we thought we had too much money sitting around in that enterprise fund, we can reduce the rates whenever we want without all the Prop 218 notification requirements, because that effectively takes you nearly a year to do it.
Yeah, that's a very good point, Mary, Mayor Howell, and I, and I should have mentioned that earlier, that, you know, we can, we can ratchet back from this, you know, we can, we can do this for two or three years and then be like, you know, we're accumulating some money, and we're not quite getting to some of the things we expected to get to, where they're not costing as much as they wanted, and then we just, you know, can to reduce without any kind of-
Right, and I think for the pessimists out there that might be watching this or wanting to post about this tomorrow, that probably doesn't happen in most jurisdictions, but we have in fact done that. When we raised the solid waste rates in 2003, we were accumulating money faster than we thought we needed to, and there was a great market for recyclables at the time, so we had a lot more revenue coming in than we had anticipated, because the market was, for recycling back then was super good. That was why we reduced the rates in 2004.
And even following that reduction, there were rate increases approved that were never implemented.
Right, there had been, there had been recommendations from the Utility Advisory Commission, and I think, I think perhaps at my insistence, because at the time that we did that rate increase in 2003, I believe we had not looked at the rates in the previous seven years. Pretty sure it was seven years, because it was before I had been on the council.
And I think 2003 is as far back as I found.
Right, and, no, but I remember making the comment, going back, that we probably needed to be looking at these things annually, at least doing a cost of living increase, because the same exact thing happened in 2003 when we were looking, which, however many rates we were looking at at that time, everyone was screaming like, oh my God, we're all going to lose our house if we have to pay another $3 for the solid waste bill.
Yeah, so that, you know, it's a very valid point. If we find that we have overshot the mark, or if we find that, you know, the economy's drastically shifting, or we're just not really feeling like, you know, these are the appropriate rates, we can definitely go downward, but we cannot go upwards per Prop 218.
Without going through this process.
Right.
Okay. Well, thank you, good evening.
Can I ask a question on that real fast? Sorry.
Yes.
Does that mean with, with regards to the Senate bill impact in next year with the RFP that you have out, I think, whenever that comes back, does that mean the Prop 218 process has to happen again?
Are you talking about the organic?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's about the organics recycling, and yes, we'd have to, we would have to come before you, you know, I can, you know, pretty much 100% guarantee you that that's going to cost us more money, and it's going to require a rate increase, and yes, we'd have to do another Prop 218 process, we can't just raise it. And, and we can't today kind of anticipating that there might be costs built in extra because Prop 218 doesn't allow that. We have to know the costs and act accordingly.
And, and we don't know the cost right now, and we don't know if the Senate's going to do what they said they were going to do, we don't know what that's going to affect regionally. There's a million issues that we can't put our finger on yet, and we won't be able to do it until they actually decide to move forward and we figure out how that waste is going to get collected, where it's going to go, and how much that's going to cost.
All questions at this point. Sure.
Thank you.
So I'll start with just a really brief recap of the rate study itself. So it was a comprehensive analysis based on our current services and current service levels, which, as Elaine pointed out, we do residential collection of trash recycling and green waste. We do offer a bundled rate with hazardous waste collection as well as bulky waste collection, and then a second green waste and recycle for no additional charge. We also offer seven days a week commercial service, which is not typical. The rate study did look at north of 50 only. The south of 50 charges are covered through development fees for any kind of capital expense, which for solid waste is basically trucks. And then, of course, we looked at whether or not each revenue stream was consistent with the cost of service, and that would be to make sure that residential isn't subsidizing commercial and vice versa. commercial and vice versa, of course, because each line of business needs to sustain itself. And then a rate model was developed where we could work through different scenarios, and the consultant, R three consulting group, provided us with six different scenarios. So there are several different cost drivers that impact the recommendation before you today. Deferred increases, recycling import restrictions in China, and unfunded state mandates have all impacted the recommendation before you. And I'll touch upon each of the major impacts as we go along. So first of all, as we've been discussing, Folsom has not kept up with the Consumer Price Index. This graph is based on a Consumer Price Index that is specific to water, sewer, and trash rates. In the recommendation that you'll see today, we don't reach the two thousand and nineteen CPI-adjusted rate until our fifth year. That is when we finally pass it. So we're still not proposing to actually jump right up to where the CPI is today. And then the study used project, projected escalation factors to determine future costs during the rate adjustment period. All of these categories have increased over the past fifteen years without corresponding increases to our rates. For example, in fiscal year five, our collections division spent two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars on fuel. In fiscal year nineteen, it was over double that at six hundred and two thousand. Another example is that we purchased a residential collection vehicle in two thousand and five for two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Today, that vehicle is costing us three hundred and sixty thousand.
Marie, why don't you just throw in there what miles per hour trucks get?
Oh, that's a fun number.
Miles per gallon?
Miles per hour, we might not want to touch. So miles per gallon.
Miles per hour, I, I guess from my neighborhood, it's about five.
Right, I'm going to say the over/under is seven.
Marie has said
I'm taking the under.
Three to me in the past is, is pretty typical.
Yeah, and I just flipped over to, I actually have those numbers. So the residential collection vehicles are averaging two point six five. Our commercial vehicles are just over three, and our roll-off get the best mileage at just over four miles per gallon.
All right.
I almost said the tri-.
We're trying to do it with Priuses, but it hasn't worked very well.
They don't hold that much.
Do they make clean air garbage trucks?
Make what?
Like zero emission garbage trucks?
Yes, they're still very new.
Have we, oh, sorry.
Yeah, we have, we did talk to the manufacturer of those, and they're still kind of being tested, and we didn't think that they were viable at this point.
And ballpark, what's the cost on them?
You know, I don't know that answer.
A lot.
About forty thousand more per truck.
That's what, we had that conversation with the Air Quality Board, and we wanted to, I think Dave had talked a little bit about it, but there was some stuff he said with regards to the new corp yard, but does that
And building infrastructure for it.
Is that what's needed prior to having those talks to actually maybe get grants to have those provided to the city?
I think we'd need to look into that further.
Can we? That'd be awesome.
So another driving factor of the rate increase is the unfunded state mandates. And you can see we've got several of them. These are all related to recycling, and as mentioned, SB thirteen eighty-three really is not captured in this rate study. It, the costs are unknown, and so we'll have to come back when we know those costs a little more clearly. The piece that is captured in this rate study is that we are asking for staff, so I'll cover that when I get to that slide. But just a little history on these unfunded mandates and the city and being able to respond to these with staff. Up until fiscal year fourteen, when we first started creating programs to respond, respond to these mandates, the recycling division had three full-time staff. Today, we have point five dedicated staff member, full-time staff members in recycling. So over the years, that number has dwindled away, and so we're looking to get the staff back that we need for these mandates. And then the China National Sword, which you hear over and over again, in two thousand and eighteen, China began enforcing strict limitations on the type of material they accept and contamination levels. As the number one export market for recyclables, this resulted in unprecedented crash in the value of our material. So prior to the impacts of the China National Sword, we were averaging about four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year in revenue just for our residential material. And this year, we are projected to spend six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars to recycle our residential material. So it's a swing of well over a million dollars. So in response to some of these cost drivers, we have asked for some new expenses within this rate increase. And first is the corporation yard design costs. The initial rate study had actually asked for five hundred thousand dollars per year for the first five years. We met, we took another look at that and decided that it was, it was prudent at this point to delay any savings for that corp yard since it is down the road quite, quite a bit. So beginning in fiscal year twenty-two, we started saving for that, but lowered it to two hundred and fifty thousand per year. So that gave us a little bit of cost savings in this, in the proposal that you'll see today. And then the street sweeper and the street sweeper operator, those are costs that we can recover through solid waste rates, because they are collection of solid waste within the city. Right now, those are within the general fund, so this would more appropriately account for them in the solid waste fees. We also requested to reclassify a senior maintenance worker in our hazardous materials division to better align with the work level he was doing. This one, we've actually already committed to, it was in the MOU. And then the two senior environmental specialists, one of them, of course, would be more dedicated to the unfunded mandates that we are already dealing with, and then another one to support the expansion of the organics recycling. And then a management analyst would support all three divisions. We need that in the solid waste department for the collections, recycling, and hazardous materials. We can use some analytical support as determined by our operation, operational analysis that was done prior to this study. And then one driver per year to cover growth as well as organics. With the, with the implementation of AB eighteen twenty-six, which requires businesses to recycle organics, we've made some of our residential services available to help businesses comply with that, and so having another resource to help support that program would be helpful. And then in response to questions from our presentation two weeks ago, I'd like to provide more information about the services that are bundled into our residential rates. The bulky waste program is used by thirty-two percent of households every year. However, over a five-year period, sixty-eight percent of households use the program at least one time. A small percentage of residents use the program more than once, seven percent two times per year, and just two percent use it three times per year. We're currently providing around ninety-seven hundred stops per year. This is an increase from when we started this program, the appointment-based program in two thousand and six, when we picked up just forty-six hundred stops. And whether you're directly using this service or your neighbors are, we all benefit from the cleaner community that Folsom residents value. Whether it is just the convenience of not having to go to the landfill, or assistance to those who do not have the resources to, we regularly receive calls of gratitude from residents for this service and the staff who provide it. So in the manner that this service has been calculated within this rate study, there's been a lot of costs that have been allocated to every single line of business, and so there are fixed costs within, within this number that you should be aware of. So right now, it's accounting for about three dollars per month of the, the calculated rate. If we were to change this and charge per pickup or just change the program in some way, we would not achieve three dollars worth of savings. As Elaine mentioned in her opening statements, it would be significantly less, because a lot of these costs that are allocated to this program in this model would not go away, and so we would still have to recover those through the rates. And then, of course, the same thing is true for the hazardous waste pickups, which account for roughly four dollars a month of the cost. Those, again, would not go away. The hazardous waste program includes about four thousand stops per year, and fourteen percent of households use this annually, so over a period of time, it would be more than that. The same staff equipment and funding that provide the curbside collection also supports retail drop-off locations for batteries, fluorescent lights, and sharps. They clean up abandoned waste and spills from collection vehicles, and the funding from rates also covers the cost of making county facilities available to Folsom residents for those who would like to drop off their material at one of these locations. The city is obligated to have a plan for the collection disposal and processing of hazardous waste. Folsom's program is highly effective at providing convenient alternatives to illegal disposal. Hazardous materials in the waste stream increases the risk of fires, accidental needle sticks, environmental release, and human exposure. Just one of these incidents has the potential to offset any cost savings that would be achieved by changing our current service levels. And then the final item that's bundled into our rates that I wanted to talk about is our second recycling and green waste can options, and I don't have specific numbers for the cost of these. What I will tell you is that we provide this service because we're trying to encourage participation in our recycling programs and keep that material out of the garbage. This is a much more cost-effective way for us to handle it and for the residents as well, because if they regularly have extra recyclables or regularly have extra green waste, it's more cost-effective for us to actually dump an extra can while we're there than to have them refill it and have to charge them and use resources to come back. So this has been an effective way to provide extra service for our residents.
Can I ask two questions on that?
Yeah.
Has there ever been a survey or an outreach to the community to find out what exactly, what services, or if these services are what they, what they envision, of what should be packaged in it, you know what I mean? Like, what, what do they like, what, what don't they like? Has that ever happened?
I believe that was done during Everts' tenure, and possibly starting, going back as far as Martha, that there were surveys that were done with the community, what do you like, what do you dislike? That, so yes, those have happened.
They have happened, it's been a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
I don't remember the specific questions on the survey, but I know we, we got
Yeah, it hasn't been forever, because I think I did one seven or eight years ago, maybe. I seem to remember that happening.
Yeah, it was somewhere in, I mean, it's somewhere in the time I've been with the city, and I've been here fifteen years, so it's, I don't know, I can't pinpoint it, but
It's happened a couple of times, because we had comparative data from one to another.
Yeah, we, we have asked, you know, and, and we've surveyed, and, and then beyond that, just the degree of usage gives us some indication as to what people gravitate toward, and what people like. I mean, just the usage numbers help somewhat.
Yeah, because it seems
But I understand the question, yeah.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I, I don't recall getting it, so maybe it went out, I don't know, I don't know, but it seems like the participation rate is low, base, comparative to, you know, I, I don't know if it's maybe a marketing thing of what's available to, to use, and maybe that would increase the participation or something, but it just seems like these rate, like the thirty-two, fourteen, and twenty-seven is fairly low for the services provided, right?
Thirty-two is within a given year, though, and we don't expect everyone to use the service within a given year. If they did, we couldn't provide the service to everyone.
But you could charge for it, right?
We don't even have the resources to provide it to twenty-two thousand households in the year. Right now, we're providing it five days a week, and we do about ninety-seven hundred a year. So if every, the service isn't meant to be used by everyone every year. If it was, it wouldn't work.
Yeah, I mean, I
It wouldn't sustain itself.
I can't imagine it being a hundred percent, but I'm, what I'm saying is if more people used it and it wasn't bundled in, oh, those were the numbers I was trying to see, was like, what are, what are the, what's the alternative to burdening taxpayers with having a flat rate, right, and increasing everyone altogether for twenty-seven percent of people to use something others don't? That's the, the, the rub that I kind of have with, with the rate increase in general.
I, I think you need to look at the last bullet item, though. You can, you can take it out, but, or you can charge people more for it, but it doesn't eliminate any positions, and it doesn't eliminate any equipment. So those people are working, we're paying them, so.
Well, but what I'm saying is if you would increase participation on something that we do charge for, that would pay for that program, right? That, I don't know if it would, what I'm saying is, would it?
Yeah, that's what, maybe our consultant can, can comment on that a little better, but we just, it, it, we could study this more, I mean, for sure. I mean, it would be, it would just require, you know, more, more dollars in time to, to look at it more closely. We just can't predict if we start charging for a service. We cannot obviously assume that we would maintain the same level of service. Obviously, a bunch of people would drop off, because they would be like, I don't want to pay an extra premium for this. And so we can't, we don't know how much that's going to reduce, and then beyond that, we can't account for human behavior, which is a little frustrating. We don't know if you're going to be Roger Gaylord, good citizen, that if I told you you had to pay for your hazmat, you're going to go do the right thing with your hazmat, even, you know, if you have to pay for it, or if you're just going to be like, yeah, maybe they won't notice, I'll just throw it in my, you know, garbage cart, and then we're having to commit resources to fires and spills and that kind of thing. Or same thing with bulky waste pickup.
We notice when smoke starts coming out.
Yeah, and so, you know, and that's real. And, and on the bulky waste side, you might do the totally right thing and pay for it, or go out and call one eight-hundred Got Junk and pick that stuff up, or somebody else might just go dump it out on White Rock Road, and then we're sending crews out to pick it up, and that's resources. So that's what we're struggling with, there's just so many variables of what could, could happen. Yeah, so.
And even though that, a lot of communities do it a little bit differently, doing a bundled rate is typical. It's typical to have your garbage service include some other convenient services for getting rid of other materials that aren't as easy to get rid of. So this is how we compare, and like Marcus had said, you saw this graph last time. The average, not sure where the line is, the average is the thirty-three point one four. I think there's an error on there, the twenty-three point five-nine shouldn't be there. That's the old average. I actually went through and updated a few of these that had not been updated from when it was first created, and a few of them, I didn't go through every single one, but a few of them had already done rate increases since this chart was created. So right now, we're down toward the very bottom. If we move forward with the rates recommended today, then we're still well below the average. So the rate adjustments that R three consulting provided to us were six different scenarios that had a combination of target dates for the full cost of service being recovered and a desirable fund balance. So these were the first-year increases for the different scenarios, and in looking through those, we decided that none of them were really a great fit for what we were looking for, and so we did kind of a hybrid and proposed a separate one. So the hybrid rate, we started with four and six as a foundation, and then we adjusted from there. One of the adjustments or goals was to meet the desire of the Utility Commission for a moderate but steady increase as an alternative to high increases, and then lowering from there. So scenario six was actually the most consistent as far as increases, but it is a pretty low fund balance and a pretty late cost of service. So we, I'll actually go into a little more detail on that on the next one. So we used that one as the basis, though, for the residential, and then the commercial we used as the basis for, or the scenario four was the basis for the commercial. So some of the other changes we made to reduce the expenses right out of the gate were the delayed and reduced annual funding, which I spoke about for the new corporation yard. The initial rate study included a recommendation to expand our existing fleet, and we decided that if we were able to just get on schedule with replacing our existing fleet, that we may be able to work with what we've got and not increase our spare ratios or anything of that nature at this time. And the vehicle And the vehicle replacement schedule that was in the rate study was initially proposed with the trucks that were all due for replacement this fiscal year. But because we didn't have an increase already and we didn't get the budget for that, there were four vehicles that we're not replacing that are due. So, I pushed those to next year, which created some initial year savings. And then, the scenario, what it looks like when we're done is the residential, instead of having the scenario six that's just 15% each year and then drops off, we sustain the 15% across the board. The adjustment that was within the staff report is different from this, and this is the one that we're recommending today with those additional changes that I described. Initially, we had scenario four, which was 20% for three years, and then, 15, and then, 3%. Doing the 15% for all five years results in the same rate at the end of the fifth year. But rather than having higher increases in the beginning, it's a more stable increase. So, if we had gone with scenario four, instead of a $3.50 increase, we would be looking at a $4.50 increase, followed by $5.50, and then, $6.50, and then, $6. And it would only be that fifth year where it would have actually been a smaller increase for the customer to have gone with that scenario. They would have had a smaller increase in the fifth year. The commercial rates, I can't display in the same way as far as the monthly increase because there are just so many different commercial rates that the dollar amounts of the monthly increases are quite a bit different from each other. So, for those, we will have to look at the actual rate sheets. For roll-off, the initial increase would include some right sizing. Our previous rates included the cost of disposal. And also, there was just quite a variation between different rates for different sized bins and different materials. And since our cost really is the same, the majority of the costs for doing a roll-off is just the delivery, the removal, and the trip to the dump. The disposal is being proposed as just a pass-through rather than being included in the rates. So, with that, for fiscal year '21 through '24, I could actually show the increase per year as a dollar amount. And then, I'm going to pause for a moment, and our finance director, Stacy Tumani, is going to discuss our five-year forecast.
I just wanted to give you a quick look at the five-year forecast with both without a rate adjustment and then, with the proposed rate adjustment, just so that you have the whole picture of the finances in this fund. So, what you're looking at right here is our beginning working capital on the top line for fiscal year '20 through '24. And then, revenue is just going up about 1.5% each year. So, minimal increases, no rate adjustments. Operating expenses with just your typical, nothing new in there at all. And then, capital outlay at a really minimal amount, less than what is proposed and really needed. So, what this is showing is that our ending working capital by year fiscal year '22 goes negative, and it goes down really quickly after that if we do nothing. And what I also wanted to show down in the last line is our working capital requirements. And this is determined by best practices. And I mentioned that in the quarterly report, that we want to have 90 days of operating expenses plus the amount that we need for capital reinvestment in the next year available at any given time. And under no circumstances do we want it to be less than 45 days, which is slightly more than half of that. So, we need about $4 million, going up to about $4.8 million by year five in order to have this buffer with the current picture that we have now. And we'd be like a $10 million difference in year '24 between the balance that we have and where we should be with the level of expenses.
So, Stacy, just back on that slide. Could you just, just for the benefit of our, any residents who are watching or interested, so, what do we do when we get to the red? What happens?
So, when we get to the red, we either have to eliminate services or we have to use the general fund to cover that.
Can I ask, so FY '21, one of my, one of my biggest things right now is I don't like to go to the cookie jar twice. I don't like asking for something and then turning around and asking again. So, this Senate bill really has me bothered. For me, I only speak for myself. I want to see this, I mean, there's no doubt in my mind we can make the case that, you know, cost increase and, you know, everything's erratic and it's a dynamic. We can't control it. But right then, in this, in this forecast model, you're $2 million right there. So, you're below where you want to be, obviously, by half, but you're still not in the red yet. So, in your, in your assessment, waiting a year before, till we can find out what the exposure is to this, to this bill and what we need to do to ramp up and what it's going to cost, would that, what would that put us if we waited one year?
I might have Marie address some of that, but what I can say is that we're at levels of capital outlay that we don't want to be at also. So, I just left it at a really minimal, like, 3% increase just because of the cost of vehicles, but that's way less than our replacement schedule. I'm kind of getting into her stuff, so she can go on a little bit more about that.
Sorry.
And I'm sure Marie, I mean, I'm not sure we would know in a year even. I think that's part of the timeline struggle, too.
Yeah, we really don't know for sure. I mean, maybe we would know in a year, maybe not. But we don't know today. So, I mentioned earlier in my presentation that I delayed the, well, I didn't delay them. They were approved by the budget, the purchase of four additional solid waste collection vehicles. $1.1 million will not purchase four solid waste collection vehicles. I think there were a couple other vehicles that were actually scheduled to be purchased next year. So, those are already there, plus the four. So, the capital outlay is really insufficient for what we need. This, I believe, if I'm, I don't want to misspeak, I think that Stacy was basing this on some historical numbers of what we've been spending, but we haven't been keeping up with our replacement schedule. And we have been having failures. We have had many days where every single spare truck is on the road for a certain line of business. And one day, even recently, where we did not have enough trucks, and we were using overtime and splitting routes and doing things to, to get the work done. So, to say that that capital outlay is not going to have consequences, I can't say that.
What should that number be?
You know what? I don't have that.
I have it on the next slide.
You do have it on the next slide. That's right.
I'm guessing at some point, they're going to say, this is what it looks like if we support the proposed increase.
Bingo.
I was hoping it was on the next slide.
That's the next slide.
Yes, it's on the next slide. And Councilmember Gaylord, just also with that fiscal year '21. So, we're in '20 right now, eating in, you know, about $2 million a year into the fund balance. So, that's just getting a little scary because if it takes another longer process to go through the, all of the requirements, now, we're in fiscal year '22 and negative, so... So, this is with the proposed rate adjustment that Marie just mentioned. So, this, I just bumped it up fiscal year '21 through '25 because I needed to go out to '25 to show you down in the bolded black section there is that's where we finally meet our working capital requirements, even with the new rate. So, this does include the new rates in revenue, and it does include the increases in expenditures. And then, here is the recommended capital outlay that would keep up with the requirements. So, beneath it, you can see the working capital requirements based on the percentage of expenditures. We're way below it until we get to fiscal year '25. And this chart that I have next just kind of shows you. Orange is our requirement. Blue is where we're at. And right in the middle at '25 is where we break even, and then, we're finally looking a little better. Towards the end, fiscal year '29, it looks funny because we have a big capital investment in '28. So, you kind of spend, and then, you start saving up again. That's just the way the schedule works. And I'll turn it back to Marie unless you have some more questions on this.
And I'm just going to reiterate again, the vast majority of this problem is the dramatic decrease or dramatic increase in the combination of lack of revenue from recyclables and now that it's costing us significantly more money to get rid of it.
Yes.
And we're still mandated to get rid of it. You know, that's, that's the struggle.
And we've got, you know, a bunch of broken or trucks that need repair.
We do. And so, that, the next slides are simply the rates themselves under this proposal. So, as I mentioned, this is a variation from what you initially saw in the staff report. And you can see how the residential rates are adjusted. I won't go through each of them, but I'll leave it on the screen for a moment in case anybody is viewing it from home or if there's any questions.
The only thing I, that I want to add, and again, some of this has to do with emails that I've gotten and other things that I've seen. I think people are claiming, well, I don't fill up my trash can every week. I, too, don't fill up my trash can every week. But I don't think what people understand is that the, the cost includes driving the truck to your driveway, picking up the trash can, dumping it, whether it's got one bag of trash or, you know, one fast food wrapper, whatever it is. And then, the total that the city is paying to dispose of that, whether it's, whether it's trash, recyclable, or green waste, is based on the total volume or the total weight that's paid in the tipping fee. So, that doesn't really change just because you didn't fill up your trash can.
No, and a trash can that's only a little bit full can be heavy, and a trash can that's full can be really light. So, we pay by weight. And you're right. It's the cost of us showing up in that truck that gets 2.64 miles to the gallon and the cost of the driver and the cost of the trip to the landfill, the cost of the truck itself. It's all of those things that have a significant cost. I did take a look at the cost, like, if, so, the U.S. EPA publishes volume-to-weight conversions. And the high end of the estimate for residential solid waste is about 300, 300 pounds per yard. So, if you equate that to one of our standard-sized garbage cans, assuming that somebody uses the full capacity of the can and that their garbage is of average weight, the disposal for that material, which I, I think that would be, a high assumption, would be $1.66. So, the disposal is a very small portion of the cost.
Can you talk to the bottom section? Can replacement, $65?
Yes, and actually, I, in response to another council member's comment, I was going to edit this, and I forgot to add a little note on there. In parentheses, picture it saying, "other than normal wear and tear."
Like, if you caused it in some crazy situation at your house, like, we're not, we're not going to pay for that can for you, so...
And you can have your garbage can cleaned?
You can.
Good to know.
I will be honest about something. We don't actually take your can and clean it and bring back the same can. We bring you a clean can and exchange it for yours.
Well, it's good to know. Thank you.
The serial numbers aren't tracked by us.
I'm just kidding.
But we have used them for, for warranties, for warranty replacements.
I swear I was just kidding, I promise.
We won't know if you take your neighbors. These are the commercial rates. So, the big difference between these rates and what you saw two weeks ago, the rate that you see is for one-time-per-week pickup. The rates that you saw two weeks ago included two times per week, three times per week, four times per week. And they weren't a factor of each other. So, by doing it this way, it simplifies the rates, and the cost of a pickup is the cost of a pickup. So, if you had a three-yard bin and you wanted it dumped two times a week, we would just multiply this rate by two. That's actually consistent with our current rate structure. And so, I revised the consultant recommendation to match that objective. So, any questions on this slide? These are additional charges for extra services that we provide. Any questions on this one? The roll-off rates are pretty unique. I mentioned a little bit about this earlier, but I thought getting to this slide is the best place to talk about it. So, if we look at the 20-yard trash, for example, that rate of $274 includes a tipping, it includes disposal for 2.5 tons. At the time these rates were created, we paid $25 a ton to get rid of trash. Now, we pay $30 a ton to get rid of trash, but the rate factored into the, the tipping fee factored into the rates is still $25. So, to adjust that, we changed the, the whole structure of this so that disposal is simply a pass-through. So that as the facilities raise rates or their fees for tipping, which is completely out of our control, we are not absorbing it. The customer will pay exactly what we pay. So, all we are charging for then is the actual cost of providing the bin and a driver and a truck to bring the bin to pick it up and to take it to the landfill and dump it. And so, that is the reason that every rate for every different size and material are all the same in this proposal.
How was the math worked out for all these increases? Was there like a...
For this one, we actually took the overall cost of the roll-off service. So, like the others, it's an allocation. So, an allocation of staff, an allocation of the building, the utilities, the fuel, which is pretty exact because we can just look at the roll-off trucks. And that number was divided by the number of services we provided on average the last couple of years that were actual revenue-generating services. So, this one's actually a pretty simple calculation. And then, on this one, I also staggered the, the increase. This is a reduction from what you saw initially just because with the roll-off rates, we were initially proposing to recover full cost of service in the first year. And when I took a close look at the impact on some of our customers, it was just such a dramatic increase that I wanted to stagger it out over time. So, like the residential, the ending number is still where we wanted to get to, but we get there a little more slowly than, than the initial proposal. And then, here's the last of the rates, followed by additional charges. Any questions about these? And I think that, oh, no, I think we have one more. Special events, we provide services to special events. This is required so that we don't have litter problems at these events. Also, large events are required by yet another unfunded mandate that's not listed on our list to work with local jurisdictions to make sure that recycling is provided and then, report back to us on the recycling activities that they do. And so, it's our responsibility to, to monitor that and make sure that that's getting done. This goes above and beyond that since we also provide the garbage service as well for these events. And I believe that's the last one. So, what we're looking for from you today is a decision on whether or not we can initiate the Prop 218 notice. And as mentioned, staff thought that it would be a good idea with these rates to hold an open house. This is not required by Prop 218, but we wanted to give the community another chance to come and ask questions and have their concerns heard. And so, we have that tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, November 6. And then, the final direction on that would be to set a date for the public hearing. So...
We have no other questions of staff. I do have a request from the public to speak. Andrew Valderras?
Andrew, because you stayed to the end of this meeting, we're going to give you three bulky waste pickups a year for free.
Thank you for coming.
So, you wanted to speak... So you wanted to speak to Channel 10, but not us?
No, I talked to you.
I, I know, but, you know, you, again, we have spent, how many, we've spent, what, like five hours on this so far? And nobody wants to talk about it.
Five hours tonight?
No, total.
Oh, total. I was in nine meetings at the Utility Commission on this.
Okay, so to all of the people that are complaining online, I don't know, I don't know what to tell you.
I'll ask two questions of Marie. First of all, I am a proud two-percenter. I have my third bulky waste scheduled for later this month. So, you know, I, I understand Councilmember Gaylord's comment about, you know, you don't, you don't want to keep going back to the well and, and raising rates and raising rates. But as far as like organic, you know, green waste recycling, is there even a facility in the Sacramento region to accommodate those things at the moment?
Isn't there a bio facility at, at the regional wastewater plant that's operated by SMUD?
Approach this microphone. I didn't understand that there was actually a facility yet that could do this.
There are facilities, there's not capacity in the region to do this. Mark Rappaport is our recycling slash hazardous materials supervisor, and he's been participating actively in the RFP process to find capacity for our material once SB 1383 does take effect. And so he may be able to speak a little better than I can about what capacity is out there and.
The only one I know of, I think, is, is out at the Regional Sanitation District Plant. And that's operated by, well, generates power that goes to SMUD.
I'm not aware of any facilities of that nature.
Well, basically, what's happening is Regional SAN is using some of its own waste to power that facility. So, and then it's basically, it reduces their overall electric cost to operate the plant.
Well, we're talking about organics. I think the question was regarding organics. So that, that, for us right now, that, that includes green waste. We're, we're not putting food waste in with the green waste yet. That's not going to happen for a couple of years. We're in the process of trying to find a facility that will accommodate that. But currently, there's no local facilities that are available for us. We're taking our green waste now to Kiefer landfill, and it's being used for alternative daily cover. And that, and we get diversion credit for that. That's, that's where we're taking our green waste. The, there's a, it's a transport situation. There are facilities in the region, but they're not cost-effective for us to transport because we don't have transfer capacity or capabilities. Everything we pick up is in a garbage truck, and the garbage truck drives to a transfer station. And then it's, it's transferred, or in our case, we could take it to Kiefer, and it's, it's disposed of, and it's managed there.
We had a discussion several years ago with Warren Smith, presentation here at the council meeting with a company that he was involved in that was going to do organics, remember? There was talk about building the facility at Folsom Prison, and it was a discuss, there was a, a long discussion about methane, and nobody that was talking about it knew anything at all about the science and that it was going to explode, and so they ran with their hands up in the air.
Basically, operationally, you know, it, it would change the way we do business. We need to figure out where it's going to go. We're in the middle of that process, and we know it's going to cost money, but we don't know how much.
Right, that, and that's basically my point. I understand Councilmember Gaylord's sentiment that you don't want to keep, you know, going back and, and asking for more and asking for more, but there isn't even a place to take those food scraps that we're eventually going to have to recycle, right? And so.
Not that it's cost-effective for us at this point.
Okay, so you have included some personnel in this to comply with SB 1383, but in terms of facility costs or tipping fees or whatever, we don't even know where that is, what that was, what that is going to be, so there is no way to plan for that.
There's no way to plan for it at this point, and that would be some of what that individual would be tasked with, is actually planning that program, and then planning the implementation of it and the education of all the residents, and, you know, how is the food going to be collected? Is it going to be bagged in the green waste? Is it not going to be bagged? And all these questions that we just don't have answers to yet.
Okay, and then just one final question. So we had talked about, you know, some of the, kind of the perks that maybe we provide included in the rate that maybe other jurisdictions charge kind of à la carte for. For example, having a second green waste and a second blue waste recycling can. Does having, does giving residents those extra cans, including it in their rate, it actually helps us meet the mandate to divert so much waste from the landfill, doesn't it?
Absolutely. Yeah, if we're providing the capacity in the cans, then that's less that would have to go into the garbage if they've already filled up their first can.
Right, okay, thank you.
Right, and if, for example, we took away the opportunity to have like a second recycling can, you know, they might very well just shave off the top and put it in their regular cart, and so then we've lost an opportunity.
Any other questions of staff?
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion, obviously with the preface that nobody wants to raise rates, including our own. We all live in this city, so, but I will move to start the 218 process. Is that sufficient, Prop 218 process?
Second.
That will be resolution number 10-0337, madam?
There you go.
Yes. Oh, this one right here?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, it's not, I'll move to adopt resolution number 10337, which starts the Prop 218 process. Is that fine? Okay.
Second.
With the rates proposed, assuming with the rates proposed by staff for water, wastewater, and solid waste. Any other further questions or comments? We have a motion, we have a second. Can you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
No.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. We will move now to resolution number 10336, authorizing the adoption of a MOU. Sorry, I'm wrong one. Resolution 10335, authorizing City Manager to execute construction agreement with La Maso Utility Services for the Willow Creek Estates Storm Drain Lining Project and Appropriational Funds.
Point of order, can we call for public comment and then go directly to, without a presentation from the staff? Because we've all talked about this one. Is that possible?
We don't have any requests to speak, is that what you're asking?
Can, can we go directly to discussion?
I mean, we can just call the item, and you guys can have at it if you don't want a presentation. That's totally fine.
I would like to make a motion that we approve.
This is basically because we already, because Dave already made a presentation about it.
Yeah, exactly.
On the last council meeting.
I, I make a motion that we approve resolution number 10335 without presentation.
Second. We have a motion on the second. No requests to speak. Call a roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Does that mean you just sat here the whole time for nothing?
It's not your birthday today.
You had your birthday last time.
I'd just like to know if, if you'd like to start using that approach for all council items? Because that would free up my second and fourth Tuesdays nights really quickly.
Speeding on to the City Manager's report.
Okay, I'll be speedy. So tomorrow is September 11, and the Folsom Fire and Police Department.
And if you don't get out of here soon, we're all going to be late.
Will host a 9/11 remembrance ceremony to honor all those who lost their lives and commemorate the ultimate sacrifices made by the responders. The event will begin promptly at 9:30 a.m. tomorrow at Folsom Liddy, Folsom City Lions Park. The Oak Trail, Oak Parkway Trail Ender Crossing will be open for the public this, this September. A grand opening event is planned for Thursday, September 19 at 9 a.m., and the event is open to the community. And finally, Community Service Day is September 21, and we're really not so much looking for volunteers anymore because we've had a huge outpouring of support. But as you saw in the videos, we need you to put out those bags and those particular items they're looking for, like used bikes and, and used eyeglasses and Legos and yarn and fabric, and, and bring those to Lakeside Church on the morning of September 21. And this Thursday, the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District is holding a community meeting at 6:30 in the community center. Their board will be considering a proposal that could weigh on us on the magnitude of 80,000 to 120,000 annually, which is a big hit for us. And so we asked for a community meeting, and that is happening, so people can learn more about it. That's all I have.
So on that topic, they're going to have some of those battery-operated garbage trucks? I think one truck and a bus there, too. I don't know if you guys want to check it out?
Mike?
One quick thing, we had our SECOC Policy and Innovation Committee meeting, and they let us know that the Youth Leadership Academy that SECOC ran last year is going to continue for this coming year. And for all those high school students that are out there watching this meeting still, applications are open right now, and we should have some Folsom kids participate in it.
So that was Abby Fenton, who was on the.
That's right.
Okay, so generally, rising seniors probably is my guess, or?
They will take applications from any high school student.
Any high school student.
Yeah, so it's open to all.
Roger?
I have nothing. Good night.
Ernie?
Well, I'm going to have three hospital appointments tomorrow, so I'm going to miss the 9/11, which I really miss. I haven't missed it since we had it. But, you know, you do what you have to do, so City Manager, give my regrets.
Of course. No report.
Drive carefully, and good night. We are adjourned at 11:52.